Good evening, Santa Monica, and welcome to the May 25th, 2021 meeting of the Santa Monica City Council. Before we call roll, I'd like to ask everybody to observe a moment of silence in memory of the murder of George Floyd. And now will the clerk call the roll, please? Councilmember Para?
Here.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember McKeon?
Here.
Councilmember Brock?
Here.
Councilmember De La Torre? He was here, but... Mayor Pro Tim McCowen?
Here.
And Mayor Hemmerich? Here. And before we start our special agenda items, let me just once again announce our public comment number, which has changed. Our current public comment number, if you wish to call and comment on the matters we're discussing tonight, is 310-312-8173. Again, And now, Madam Clerk, if we can proceed to our special agenda item. Our first item is accommodation for Chief Bill Walker. And we have one, we have one video caller on this item. Um, great. Well, um, so shall I do the commendation before? Shall we hear our speakers first? Please do the commendation. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Whereas Chief Bill Walker is a Southern California native, after graduating from the University of Southern California in 1990, he began working for medevac, ambulances, and EMT, and then became paramedic. He accepted the fire chief position for the Santa Monica Fire Department in 2016. And whereas Chief Bill Walker has served as a president of the Los Angeles Area Fire Chiefs Association and the Foothill Fire Chiefs Association, and has a long history as an active leader within Los Angeles and Orange County Fire Service. He led our Class 1 Fire Department of 136 sworn and civilian employees, manages five fire stations, a fire prevention division that is responsible for preventing loss of life and property, and a satellite regional training center that runs a state fire training accredited local academy. And whereas Chief Bill Walker has led the department through a period of transformation in new technology, four new fire engines, a new ladder truck, the new fire station number one, and Fire Station 7 at the beach. Under his leadership, SMFD leaned into its key role as first responders to support the city's commitment to addressing homelessness through a community response unit and a new technology platform that allows first responders to share information with social workers and homeless service agencies to improve outcomes for people experiencing homelessness. SMFD also partnered with UCLA on a mobile stroke unit to offer lifesaving aid to people in cardiac crisis. SMFD is now in the process of administering COVID-19 vaccines to homebound seniors, another example of the department's dedication and service to Santa Monica. And whereas Chief Bill Walker sadly announced he will be departing his post of five years with the Santa Monica Fire Department to head up the City of Bedford Fire Department in Texas and reunite with family. Now therefore, I sue him over to Mayor of the City of Santa Monica on behalf of the members of the City Council to hereby take great pleasure in commending Fire Chief Bill Walker for his dedication and loyalty to the citizens of Santa Monica and extend him the very best wishes in all of his future endeavors. Thank you. And I see you. Hello, Chief.
Hey, thank you very much. Hey, good evening, Mayor and members of the council, and thank you so much for those kind words. Truly has been my honor to be the Fire Chief and represent the men and women of the Santa Monica Fire Department and represent the City of Santa Monica. You know, when I, when I took the job five years ago, I knew it was a heck of a challenge, and that was what was part of the attractiveness of it. You know, Santa Monica wants to do more and be more than most places, and it's been just an incredible adventure. It's been stressful at times. We've gone through so much, but I want to say one thing. We had a very small, brief ceremony today at the fire station and had the opportunity to say thank you to a lot of my staff, and it was a little emotional for me, and I forgot to say thank you to the city manager. I want to tell you right now, you know, Lane Dilg has come in and done an amazing job, and has earned so much respect for me, and I appreciate the support. I mean, my entire time here, the council has supported us, and the city managers have supported us, and this last year with, you know, COVID and everything that's gone on, the worst wildfire season in the history of California. To have the strength and credibility out of the city manager's office that she brought was, was a huge lift and a boost to me and all the men and women of the Fire Department. So it's been, it's been a great ride. I tell you this as I leave, your fire department is in great shape. We do quite a bit to ensure that the, the men and women have all the tools, equipment, gear, stations, equipment that they need to be providing fire service at the highest level. And, and I feel so, so good about that, and I'm excited for what the future holds for this department. As I look at so many people I've hired over this last few years, you have an outstanding group of young leaders, and I would say the existing leaders are awesome, but the next group coming up is just as good. So really proud of the achievements and I appreciate the support you've all shown me, and thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief. And we do have at least one caller, is that right?
There is a video caller, but he hasn't logged in yet. So I would advise that we just move forward.
Um, thank you. So Chief, I personally want to thank you. We came on pretty close to the same time, maybe, you know, a few months apart, but you've been such a steady and calming leader of this department, and I really appreciate everything you've done for us. And I still think I'd rather be in California than Texas, so if you ever change your mind. Does anyone else have anything they want to say to the chief before we get our caller? Being no one.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your service. Appreciate you, Bill.
Um, oh, yes, City Manager Dilg.
I, I had a chance to speak earlier, so I will be very brief, but I do want to say, Chief Walker is someone who has shown up for this city every single day in the darkest days of the pandemic, in the days when we needed ICS expertise. Desperately, this fire department has stepped up every single step of the way. The strength of the department is a tribute to Bill, to his integrity, to his honesty, and to his compassion. And like Bill, I have great faith going forward in the team and the department that he has built. So I am just exceedingly grateful to him as resident, as your own city manager. Thanks, Bill.
Thanks so much, Chief. And, and I think if, if the caller does appear, I think we'll want to hear their remarks at the end of our two items, but in, in view of the fact that the caller is not on yet, I guess we should proceed to the next item, Madam Clerk. Okay. Next is a city manager report update on city's equity efforts, and we are supposed to have one video caller for this one as well.
Thank you. And Mayor, I can introduce this briefly, simply to say that you will hear from a team of city staff who have been working very hard over the last year to look at equity and inclusion across every single department of this city. I'm very grateful to them for their work to date and to Delana Benakama and Lisa Parson for their leadership here. With that, let me turn to Delana.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. As Lane mentioned, I'm Delana Benakama, and I'm Equity and Communications Coordinator for the city. Today, colleague Lisa Parson and I are here with Equity and Inclusion Officers to provide you with an update on our citywide equity work. In June and July of 2020, we held a series of staff social justice forums with a focus on changes the city could make to eradicate inequities and support historically marginalized groups, including Black, Indigenous, and people of color. Several major themes came out of the feedback that staff provided to us, though we developed six citywide goals and appointed our first cohort of Equity and Inclusion Officers to focus on those goals, which are a mentoring program, hiring process, implicit bias and cultural competency training, performance evaluations, a racial equity toolkit, and a racial equity plan. I want to take a moment for you to see the names of Equity and Inclusion Officers who Lisa and I are working with. Existing staff from each department were appointed to this role, as well as two staff members who lead our affinity groups that are supporting the city's equity work. As you know, the city's values are equity and inclusion, and this work directly aligns with those values. This group of staff has done an exceptional job making progress toward these goals. Hours and hours have been spent researching best practices, policies implemented by other agencies in both the public and the private sector, and more. And I would permit, if I didn't mention, as Mayor Hemmerich mentioned earlier, that today is the one-year anniversary of the murder of George Floyd. His heinous murder galvanized many people and organizations into action, including us here in Santa Monica. As we remember this precious life that was stolen from us, I'd like to take the time to reaffirm our commitment to achieve racial equity and advance opportunities for all. Now I'll turn it over to my colleague, Lisa.
Thanks, Delana. Yes, as Delana mentioned, this has been a very momentous year for equity across the country, and here in Santa Monica, it's been no different. We have been both grappling with a lot of traumatic and tragic incidents that have happened in our community and across the country over the last year, in the AAPI community, among our Hispanic and Latino colleagues, and also now with the conflicts in Israel and Palestine, of which we obviously have staff of both backgrounds here. And so for us, being able to be in this, in this spot and be able to help make sure that the little eight square miles that we're in continues to make as much progress as we can towards equity for all, has been just reinforced over the last year, and we appreciate being able to do the work. You can go to the next slide. So as the, many of the council members were already here when we did this, just I like to revisit the racial equity statement that the city adopted in fall of 2020. That was in September. Just to note that there's a broad range of issues and a broad range of considerations that we have been charged with looking at. A lot of these things will be focused outwards, and the presentation that you're here tonight is really going to be focused more internally, because we do take it seriously that we can't go out to the community and ask others in our community to change if we're not also looking inward at ourselves as an organization, making sure that we're taking the steps to make changes to improve conditions for our employees, outcomes for our staff, and to make sure that we are doing what we can do as an organization to be as inclusive and equitable as we can. Delana and I have had a wonderful experience being able to lead this group of Equity and Inclusion Officers. Their terms are not close to finishing, this is just a check-in point, but I would love to turn it over to them now so that you can hear about the work that they've been doing.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Christopher Edwards. I work in the library as a library servant, library service officer. While serving as an Equity and Inclusion Officer, I've had the pleasure to work with many of my fellow EIOs on creating the Semo Mentoring Initiative. The Semo Mentoring Initiative has a tentative implementation date of August 2021, and the requirements for mentors to participate are as follows. Number one, they have to be employed with the city for one year. Number two, they have to have the approval of their supervisory staff. And number three, they have to have, they have to complete mandatory training. This could include, but is not limited to, implicit bias training, cultural competency training, and diversity and inclusion training. Being a mentee is open to all staff, including new hires. Applicants will apply via SharePoint, and the mentor and mentee pairing will be conducted by the EIOs. Some of the benefits of this program is that it provides learning opportunities for the staff to grow professionally and personally. It allows us to foster a workplace where diversity and race, culture, ideas, and skills thrive. Participants get the amazing opportunity to embrace their growth mindset, and participants are also presented with an opportunity to capitalize on the strengths of individuals they are paired with. Goals, timelines, and objectives will be determined by the mentor and mentee pairing. And the success of the program will be measured through optional confidential surveys. This is the conclusion to my part of the presentation, and I hope you have a better understanding of how the program runs and its goals. I'm going to hand it off to the next presenter.
Hello, everyone. My name is David Gardenier, and I am a proud member of the Hiring and Recruitment Process Working Group. Our team has been hard at work looking at the city's recruitment processes and developing recommendations on how to promote equity and inclusion within the city's hiring. So far, this has entailed completing an assessment of the best practices that other jurisdictions and companies are currently using to attract high-quality and diverse talent. It's meant identifying barriers within the hiring process where candidates from marginalized backgrounds might unnecessarily be barred from advancing in the process, and it's meant developing a list of recommendation, recommended questions and practices for use in interviewing and hiring candidates. Some of these questions are already being utilized in our search for the new city manager and in other high-level positions within the organization. We also want to make sure that all staff involved in hiring are able to participate in making our city workforce more diverse and equitable, regardless of their skills or comfort level in diversity, equity, and inclusion work. To accomplish this, we have begun working on a training for all members of hiring panels, which will coach them on biases to avoid, as well as how to identify the skills and perspectives we need in our organization to make sure that we can properly serve all the members of our public through an equity lens. Quickly, on a personal note, I'll just say that working with this team has been incredible, and it's, these meetings are often the highlight of my week, and I am so grateful to be an EIO, and I'll pass it off to the next presenter.
Hello, my name is Kathy Taylor, and I'm going to be going over the Implicit Bias and Cultural Competency Training Team and what we've been doing so far. So the goal of the Implicit Bias and Cultural Competency Training Team is to provide a four-hour implicit bias training on a two-year cycle. You're engaging in curriculum, creating an engaging curriculum for all staff that can be completed over a two-year period to advance awareness and understanding of equity and inclusion. Each two years, the training will renew. All staff will receive four-hour unit on implicit bias and specifically how it relates to us in local government, reinforcing organizational value of fostering a workplace culture that demonstrates a sense of belonging with continuous education. Training will consist on various topics to build fluency for all our staff so that we can all start on the same level. The remaining training will be more microverse trainings on a series of topics such as microaggressions and cultural competency topics similar in nature and in various lengths of time. We did a deep dive of different trainings, and we understand that not all training resonates with everyone, so we're looking into alternative ways aside from typical webinars to dive into topics such as podcasts and other forms of training that is an overwhelming for staff. Ultimately, we would like staff to make a commitment to reducing implicit bias and cultural, in transforming the workplace to public servants that embody cultural competency and an understanding to confront implicit bias in the workplace and create a space for more regular conversation surrounding these topics. Thank you so much for your time, and now I'll hand it over to Makima.
Hi, everyone. I will be presenting to you about our work in performance evaluations tonight. Basically, we understand that it's important to provide people with training. It's important to set common language. It's important to make sure that people are given the information they need to succeed and to be supportive of people from different backgrounds and different cultures. Also know that if it's not made personal to the people in their day-to-day lives, and it's not a part of how they look at their role, then we may not see as much progress as we'd like to see in those areas. Recognizing that it's important to measure what matters, we are looking into how we might include equity considerations in performance evaluations. There are cities that are a lot farther down the equity path than Santa Monica is in these areas, and so we've been doing sort of a horizon scan nationwide of all the cities that have different metrics and ways that they might capture equity considerations as part of the annual performance evaluation process. Right now, we have refined our lists from hundreds to dozens, and we are currently shopping those around with people in the Equity and Inclusion Officer team to see how they feel about having these metrics applied to themselves. Also, we're crosswalking these metrics that we've identified with the training team to make sure that anything anyone is being evaluated on, they're being set up for success, and they are receiving training in those areas before they would possibly be evaluated. We understand that looking at things like equity and tying it to job performance can be stressful and seem like it could be, you know, a setup for people who aren't as familiar with certain issues, and we certainly don't intend this to be anything that's punitive or in any way setting people up to fail. So we are spending quite a bit of time refining these metrics and making sure that there's available training, and are seeing that we may do a first step of having this be part of people's personal goals and their evaluations so that there's more time for people to receive training and have a firm foundation before they can go on and have this be the next phase. With that, I'll turn it over to our final presenter.
Good evening, everyone. Bridget Cade, Administrative Services Officer for the Big Blue Bus. As a result of the social justice forums from last summer, a recurring theme was raised, the need for an equity toolkit that helped us respond to racist encounters and microaggressions within the community and our organization, and to have a better and consistent understanding of equity and equity terminology. In the process of our research and analysis, we've taken the opportunity to look at other toolkits created by other agencies, here, cities of Portland, Seattle, and Tempe, to name a few, to see their approaches. The toolkit will be an important component of our work because it would help us integrate racial equity considerations into all of our decision-making, for example, policies, practices, programs, and budgets. First and foremost, it can assist us in advancing the city's adopted racial equity statement. The Equity Toolkit Work Group has diligently been in the process of finalizing in anticipation of releasing the definitions and glossary. Much attention, detail, and time has been committed to this phase to ensure that the work that comes out of this group is defined and incorporated into the toolkit. These approximate 50 initial definitions will ensure that we have a common understanding of a word or subject, allowing us to all be on the same page when discussing or responding to an issue or concern. In addition, we are in the process of developing and releasing a list of racial equity-related questions. A sampling of those questions that will embed equity into our work are the following: What is the racial equity impact of this particular decision? Who will benefit or be burdened by the particular decision? Are there strategies to mitigate the unintended consequences? Training will follow regarding the actual use of the Equity Toolkit to ensure that social justice and racial equity is everyone's responsibility and incorporated into our daily work. Thank you. Now I'll hand it over to our next presenter.
Good evening, councilmembers. I am Makima Newsom, the Assistant City Clerk and EIO for the City Clerk's Office. I will be presenting on behalf of the Equity Plan Working Group. Our focus has been on developing a five-year plan that will align the city with best practices in equity and inclusion, make sure we live up to the goals stated in our racial equity statement. We started with our discovery period that included a horizon scan of several other cities to see what they are doing. We then completed an organizational assessment comparing ourselves to other cities to determine where we are on our equity journey. Our Equity Plan will focus on three areas in order to identify and rectify the policies, practices, and behaviors that perpetuate racism, discrimination, and other negative racial-based outcomes. These three areas are people, including hiring, recruitment, and retention, competencies, community access, and partnerships; culture, including an organizational commitment to equity, leadership, and management, and an ability to drive towards equitable outcomes; and structure, including budgeting, communications, data collection, and evaluation. We have an understanding as to what each of the EIO working groups' year-end deliverables will be to create an all-encompassing plan that develops citywide goals for equity and inclusion. Once the work of all the groups is finished, we will begin drafting our plan, circulating to all department heads for feedback, and then finalize the plan to present to City Council. That concludes our presentation, and I will now turn everything back over to Delana and Lisa.
Thank you to all the EIOs. As you all can see, we have been very busy trying to produce really high-quality work product for our fellow colleagues in the city and making sure that everything we develop is the right fit for our city particularly, and that we are setting people up for success with the work. So thank you very much for having us.
Mary Yon Mute? No, but it looks like Councilmember De La Torre had raised his hand. Still can't hear you, Mayor.
Do your music.
De La Torre, did you have a question?
Oh, yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, no, just a quick comment and a question. I just want to thank staff for this work. I think this is amazing work. Very excited to hear the questions that are being put forward. I think we're on the right track and I just, I wanted to, in terms of policy, I wanted to ask if, in the research of other cities, is there anything related to like a diversity in hiring report, like in terms of assessing sort of where our weaknesses are in the organization? Like, do we have certain departments where we lack diversity? And is there any plan to have that report? Maybe we can do that on an annual basis so that the City Council is aware of those deficiencies. Have we found any policies or anything that would allow us to hold ourselves accountable to having diversity in hiring?
Thank you for that question. We haven't gotten that for yet in our research for the hiring practices. Right now, we're focused on the diversity, equity, and inclusion questions for recruitment and the training right now. That part was not necessarily part of our original scope, so that part we really haven't gotten to as far as our research is concerned.
Okay, great. So, I would love to add that as a recommendation, you know, in terms of looking at that, I think it'd be very important. And then the other thing in terms of like public art, for example, has there been any look, anything in your research that might inform us on how we might, as a city government, look into how we roll out public art displays so that we can be inclusive in the public art that we display in our city?
I could speak to the question around the art. I do have colleagues in other cities who work in equity and the arts and so I know there are a lot of approaches out there. In the Equity Plan that we're developing, part of that structures team is around procurement and all the ways that we allocate funds and so I think there is something that could be embedded in that, not specifically just for art, but for all the ways that we spend money in the city, so that we are just kind of tracking that and making, setting our own benchmarks for how we can be more inclusive in those areas of spending.
That's great. I was going to recommend, there's a, in Texas, there's a policy called the HUB program in the state, the Historically Underutilized Business Program, and they were very successful in expanding procurement opportunities, contracting opportunities for minority and women-owned businesses. And anyway, just wanted to give that as something to look into as we move forward because I think that's also a very important area in terms of diversity and inclusion is procurement. So, thank you very much. Just really excited about this work. Want to thank you all for this work. Very exciting. Thank you.
So, can you hear me now? Yeah, so, you can also hear my dog barking. I'm sorry about that, right? And I do apologize. Thank you all. Are there any other questions for this team? Seeing none, Delaina and Lisa, you guys have really stepped up to the plate in the last year. I've watched, I think we've all watched it. It's been amazing what you've done and I really want to thank you both for all of the work because I know that it was more work than anybody ever anticipated, but I think you're going to make such a difference in our city that you will be proud at the end. So, thank you very much and thanks to all of the officers of the, who presented tonight and others in the city who are working on this initiative. So, thanks very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protim McCallen, sorry, I see your hair.
I was just going to say one last thing on that note, Sue. I think it's so clear that this is truly a labor of love for everyone that's involved and what I've so enjoyed about seeing this presentation and seeing you all present it other times throughout this past year has been just how dedicated everyone is that's involved in this process and how much they want to see, you know, us progress forward and really succeed at this. So, it has been a real joy observing you from a distance and thanks for what you're doing for the city.
So, we can clap again, right? And yes, great job and thank you all and now I think we're moving on to our regular agenda and it looks like we are moving to our consent calendar.
Yes, we have the consent calendar. All items will be considered and approved in one motion unless removed by a council.
Excuse me, this is Araceli. I was the speaker for that item. Oh, I'm so sorry and I didn't know that you were on the line and forgive us. Do we have other speakers other than Araceli? That would be no. Please, we would love to hear you.
So, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Araceli Esparza and I am the EIO for the Finance Department. Before we begin, I would like to take a moment, not only for George Floyd, Adam Toledo, Richard Brooks, Taylor, and the victims of the Atlanta shooting, the countless lives that we've lost as a result of the racial injustice and prejudice. A year has passed, progress has been made, but days like this remind us that we have a long path ahead of us. I want to start off by applauding my EIO cohort for the remarkable and accomplished work over the last seven months. As everyone saw, it is progress. We're stepping up to do the equity work and it's consuming, difficult, and emotionally draining. The continued passion that each of you brings is admirable and inspiring. We are not afraid of hard work. Our culture is an upbringing for people. We have laid the foundation for progress. Of course, we're not doing this in a vacuum. Events are happening in real time in the world around us and that only amplifies the need for us to continue. I want to start by thanking council for allocating 15% of our time to this work and addressing the equity on behalf of the city. It is undeniable that we have tried our best to do just that, but the reality is, it's not sustainable. Our current work did not decrease by 15% to make room for this increase. As you're aware, the reduction of staff changed the landscape of the services that we provide our public. For that, you may not be aware, is how that impacted the works of us employees that remained. In reality, some staff have experienced up to an 80% increase in their work to supplement the work performed for those colleagues that were laid off. The work did not go away, as the city said. We're investing our time in work that has mainly initiatives for human resources who should have performed or at the very least been invested in supporting. We propose that if you add up all the EIO's time it's spent, it easily equates to the work of two FTEs. As you saw in the presentation, timelines have either been extended or removed altogether. It will be another year before we see an Equity Plan or Toolkit.
Thank you, Araceli. Your time is now up.
Let you know that I will be emailing this to all of the council members. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Esparza, and we look forward to getting your email. Phil, do you have a question?
I'm just getting messages saying that the public comment line is not working. As a member of the public, I have no idea who it is, wants to speak on this item, and is somehow not being let in. Thank you.
Can you announce the new number again because that's probably what's refused.
Yeah, so let me announce because we do have a new number and let me announce it. So, if you want to comment on items on our agenda, the new number for public comment Let me repeat that again. And for those for whom I'm speaking too quickly, it actually appears on the first page of the agenda, and this is the number that is on the first page of the agenda. So, if you dial the number on the first page of the agenda at the very top, you will be speaking to us, we hope. And I do see that we have people in our attendee queue, but Madam Clerk, is there a problem with the call-in line or is this?
No, there is, there is no problem. We've actually tested the line. There's no problem with the line. I suspect people were probably using the old number. And the ones that you see in the attendees, those are people, they're all calling on the budget item.
Right, I understand.
Those are the video speakers.
Oh, so those are video speakers and, well, let me repeat the number one more time and I'll repeat it periodically throughout the meeting. It's 310-312-8173 for public comment. Thank you all. And I, so we had someone else on that item who I guess, has that person called?
They were a video speaker and they have not logged into the meeting.
So, if you are a video speaker and if you want to be, to appear in the meeting so that we can see you and hear you, you will need to log in and then you will be asked, I believe, to raise your hand and the clerk will elevate you as a presenter so that you can present to us. So, again, you'll need to log into the meeting. It won't work if you're simply calling that phone number, which I will repeat again, 310-312-8173. Thank you all and I think we need to move to our consent calendar. We have a long night ahead.
Okay, let me go ahead. So, the consent calendar, all items will be considered and approved in one motion unless removed by a council member for discussion. I want to note that staff will read out modifications to item 3D. So, I'm now going to turn it over to interim City Attorney George Dona.
Yes, so before you do the consent calendar, there's a correction on one item that was a late correction. On item 3D, we would change the name and the title and recitals of the resolution from Century Housing to its affiliate, Century Affordable Development, Inc. That's the affiliate that is actually the applicant on the grant in that case as opposed to Century Housing. With that, the sent item is exactly the same. It's just a substitution of name that we would make on the resolution. And so, if you approve item 3D, it would be subject to that correction.
Thank you, Mr. Cardona. Do we have chits on the consent calendar?
Have one. We do have a call. We have, we do have a caller.
So, why don't we hear, well, I guess, does any council member wish to pull any items? So, let's start with this. May we hear our chits first, our caller first? Thank you.
Esther?
Welcome Denise Baran. You're in the meeting. Your time starts now.
Okay, I was calling for the last item. I was the person that couldn't get through to the last item. I hope you realize when the subject of equity and justice comes before the City Council, I feel the need to share the part of my presentation from the last City Council meeting, item 13F, to deface the 1930 Stanton Donald Wright mural at the entrance of City Hall. So, let's take a minute to look at the number of people killed by the police by race, which is what the movement for equity and justice seems to be based on. Whether it be statistics from Washington Post database, Freedom Talk Media, or public discourse, they all show the same thing, that white, that the white demographic has the highest share of killings by the police, which would bring us back to your mob rule mentality that is based on giving the public misinformation. And to expand on this a little further, when do the police normally have to use excessive force? When the people are resisting arrest? Do you think your actions show you support, your support for people resisting arrest? So, with this information, one would have to wonder why you're misleading the public into a mob rule mentality. Or another possibility is what you do to seniors, the disabled, and probably Latinos do. You get as much funding for the different groups of people mentioned, then you proclaim services that are available to them, yet when they ask for the services you proclaim, they are told to go away. Legal aid is a perfect example. The housing authority says to go to them for reasonable accommodation, yet I have still to receive it. Twice once, I had to move up because of it and the second time I was told to get a private lawyer to get reasonable accommodation. Thank you.
Thank you. And was that only on item 2B or do we have any callers on consent? No, that was on consent. Well, according to the caller, it was on item 2B, but do we have any callers other than Ms. Barton on consent?
No, we do not. No, we have no more callers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Warren, do we have any council members who wish to pull any items from the consent calendar? Seeing none, may I hear a motion?
Moved by. Moved by. Made by Mr. Cardona.
Second.
So, moved by McEwen, seconded by Davis. May we please have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Para?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember McHale?
Yes.
Mayor Protim McCallen?
Yes.
Councilmember Brock?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Torre?
Yes.
And Mayor Helmerich?
Yes. So, the consent calendar passes unanimously and we move on to the centerpiece of our evening.
Yes.
Will you please call the item four?
So, it's a financial status update, fiscal year 2021 through 2023, proposed budget and fiscal year 2021 through 2022, exception-based CIP budget. And I'm going to ask Councilmember De La Torre if he has to make, then he make a statement about disclosure.
What was the question?
Do you have a disclosure? Do you have a statement to make?
I'm not sure. About the Brown Act.
Why don't I ask this councilmember De La Torre a question, which I think will clarify, but, Councilmember De La Torre, my understanding is that this morning you received from a Santa Monica resident an email in support of the playground access, creps parts, and crossing guard programs. You responded to the email with the following quote, "Thank you," with the resident's name for your email. I agree and I will advocate for these essential services for our youth and families. My understanding is that when you sent this response, you mistakenly sent it reply all, which meant that it went to all the other council members. It also went to the council meeting items mailbox, meaning that it was, had, has been attached to the agenda with respect to this item and I believe you are disclosing this now so that your email communication that mistakenly went to all the other council members can be part of the open and public discussion of this agenda item.
Yes, that's correct. I mistakenly said reply all. I'm sorry.
As we've explained previously, mistakenly sending an email to reply all can potentially violate the Brown Act. However, I believe the disclosure of both the contents of the email and the ability of both the public and other council members to discuss and consider it as part of the open session public comment and discussion on this item will cure any Brown Act violation. And so, on that basis, we can proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Cardona and thank you, Mr. De La Torre. I think we're ready for our staff report on item 4A.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protim, and members of the City Council. This evening, we gather to receive your feedback in a study session on the proposed fiscal year 21 through 23 biennial budget. This study session, as you know, is an ordinary practice in our city, but we are in yet another unusual year. Council, as a community and as one who knows this particularly well right now, we are so incredibly fortunate. Our endless summers, our location on the Pacific, and our strong community ties make this city among the most desirable places to live in the country, if not the world. This in turn draws our excellent healthcare providers, our local chefs, artists, small business owners, community advocates, and educators. small business owners, community advocates and educators who enrich our lives every day. And it draws visitors from around the globe who shop on the promenade, play on the pier, stay in our hotels and invent life-changing technologies in our commercial areas. These factors and more have long facilitated strong revenues that have allowed us with relative ease to fund the first-class city services that have become foundational to who we are as a Santa Monica community. But we all know well that in a budget process, it is generally true that revenues fund expenditures. In ordinary times, the primary question before us has been one of calibration. How can we sustain an inclusive local economy that supports our first-class city services without overdeveloping the beach town that we all love? COVID has presented Santa Monica with an entirely different challenge. How do we maintain our services in the face of dramatic and immediate budget shortfalls? As I discussed in a previous meeting, city budgets have been impacted in different ways by COVID. Cities that derive strong revenues from tourism-based activity, as we do, have been among the hardest hit. In Santa Monica, we anticipate that COVID will have resulted in the loss of approximately $226 million in city revenues over three fiscal years. I want to pause there for one moment to say that we previously estimated at $224 million, we are now estimating at $226 million in lost city revenues. So let me pause there to pay tribute to our city finance team and how accurate their projections have been throughout this period. Going backwards, I want to be clear with the community. We anticipate that the COVID-19 pandemic will have resulted in approximately $226 million less coming in in city revenues over three fiscal years.
Lane, I hate that, Lane, I don't want to interrupt you, but you're sort of going in and out for me. Is that true for everyone? I'm just missing a few words, but okay, then it's just me.
I can speak louder. No problem. In the face of those revenue losses, federal aid to cities has been largely delivered in two packages. The first, the CARES Act, had a population cutoff that left us and other cities with relatively small residential populations with only minimal aid. The second, the American Rescue Plan, also provide us a comparatively low allocation due to a CBVG-based allocation formula that meant we got less than many other cities due to our relatively low population, low housing density and low poverty rates. In total, in the face of $226 million in city revenues loss, we received only some $29.6 million in stabilization aid from these two packages, leaving us with almost $200 million in revenues loss for which we received no federal stabilization assistance. As I mentioned previously, it's important for Santa Monicans to understand when they read regional newspapers and the like, that every city's experience has not been the same. Cities with lower tourism impact saw less revenue decrease than we did. Cities with larger populations received far more federal aid. As just one example, San Diego has estimated COVID-based revenue loss of $368.7 million over three fiscal years, but will receive $554.5 million in federal stabilization aid, meaning that their city budget will have gained some $200 million more than it lost to COVID. Ours on the flip side will have lost some $200 million more than we gained. So where does that leave us as Santa Monica? It simply means that just as our community's needs during COVID have been immense, so have our budget challenges. It's hard to put in words exactly how much this has tested our community and our staff. As residents, each of us has faced untold and unspoken challenges. From struggling to maintain beloved small businesses, to trying to perform or create in a virtual world, to helping children learn virtually, to living with the fear of COVID in congregate settings, to providing healthcare day in and day out in a pandemic. City staff similarly have shown unprecedented dedication in the hardest of circumstances, working through personal tragedy, fear and loss with reduced budget and personnel counts to meet new community needs while taking on new disaster-based roles and duties. Through it all, each in our own ways, we have risen to these challenges and we hope now are finally seeing the other side. And through it all, we have aspired to be present for one another as a community. I've said many times over the course of the pandemic that we must remember that our today is not our yesterday and it's not our tomorrow. As recently as January, we were in the bleakest days perhaps that modern LA County has ever seen. Today, less than 120 days later, the state's full reopening is set for June 15th. Dodgers games, live music and dinner with friends are already with us and our full economic recovery is now visible on the horizon. Similarly, we've moved past the most painful part of our budgeting process. In June of 2020, we had no choice but to cut programs, services and staff that we all love to ensure continuation of community services in the pandemic and to secure for the city a stable future. One year later, following extensive efforts across the city organization to reorganize, streamline and improve operations, we are in a stable position with a proposed budget reduced by 20% from pre-pandemic times. But the pressures on staff and the work for the community are still creating immense challenges throughout the organization. Nonetheless, we retain our AAA bond rating and our economic outlook is positive. With good governance, continued dedication and community partnerships, our economy is on track to recover completely, but not immediately and not a missed two-year budget cycle. So council, the proposed budget before you is not the budget of pre-pandemic years. We've already sustained deep cuts and our revenues have not yet been replenished to allow us to do everything we would like to do. This means that certain programs and services we love remain suspended during these two years. In the proposed budget, what you will see, however, are the foundational services that our community relies on for a clean and safe Santa Monica and key but limited strategic increases or adjustments in areas identified by council as priorities, addressing homelessness and generating an equitable and inclusive economic recovery for all. I want to repeat for the community that there's plenty to look forward to. Revenues could exceed projections in the future. If so, new spending would be available at mid-year or at this time next year. Additional state or federal funding could become available and we are diligently seeking such funding right now as regulations are about to be issued for American Rescue Plan Act funding for tourism-based communities and the governor's budget is before the state legislature. But even if these immediate opportunities do not come to fruition, your stable foundation is in place for a strong and sustainable recovery. So tonight, as you hear the budget presentation, I want to ask everyone to remember that this is a harder time than most. But again, your today is not your past and your today is not your future. The outlook is very good for Santa Monica and while we are in a stable place that is not exactly where we would like to be, we will grow together as a community from here. Thank you, and let me now turn to our chief financial officer, Gigi Decavales Hughes.
Thank you, Wayne.
And I'd like to introduce our budget manager, Oscar Santiago, who will start our presentation.
Thank you, G. Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Oscar Santiago and I am your budget manager. At tonight's study session, we are presenting and asking you to provide comment on the proposed operating biennial budget for fiscal year 21, 23, through 23, the fiscal year 21, 22 exception-based capital improvement program budget, as well as receive an update of the city's five-year financial forecast. Jennifer, can you start the slide? Okay, next slide, please, Jennifer. Okay, so this slide provides an overview of tonight's agenda. I will give you, I will give you a brief overview of the city's budget, which is really line item one, followed by our chief financial officer, Gigi Decavales Hughes, who will provide an economic update on the national, state and local economy. She will then present an updated forecast for the next five years, informed by the most current information and assumptions related to recovery from the impacts of COVID, our local economy and the larger worlds that our economy relies on. Next, you will hear from our department heads as they present their key areas of focus for the next two years and any proposed budget and position changes which serve to maintain or expand services from their current levels. These changes are for the most part addressing the community priorities adopted by council on March 13th, 2021, and a small number of additional changes that respond to internal audit recommendations and improve efficiency and internal controls. The department presentations will be followed by our interim public vice director, Rick Valti, who will present the fiscal year 21, 22 exception-based capital improvement program budget, our CIP budget. The final portion of the presentation will be covered again by Gigi, who will discuss the recent citywide fee study and any fees proposed for implementation. At the end of the presentation, we will be available to address any questions from council, followed by public comment. Next slide. So this slide you've seen before, and actually you've seen it a few times. It notes the steps of our budget process. You will notice that we are very close to completing the process that informs the development of the budget for the next two years. As you know, we gathered community and council input on community priorities in February and March. We built our proposed budget based on this input to the extent that we can identify sufficient funds to cover expenditures. The proposed budget document was released to council and to the public on May 10th. Tonight is the study session. The final phase, which will take place on June 22nd, is when we will ask you to consider and adopt the first year of the biennial operating budget, adopt the second year of the CIP budget and approve the second year of the biennial operating budget in a public hearing. And then our fiscal year begins on July 1st. That's when our budget year begins. Next slide, please. So tonight, we present you with a balanced budget reflecting a major recovery. A strategic and focused budget with a foundation based on the adopted community priorities and enabling in-person services as Santa Monica emerges from the COVID-19 pandemic. Next slide, please. So let's talk numbers. The total citywide proposed fiscal year 2021, 22 budget for all funds is 705.5 million. This includes capital and operating expenses. The citywide fiscal year 22, 23 budget is 597.7 million. The larger budget in the first year is due to the appropriation of bond-funded capital projects in the water fund in the first year. This is to complete proposed projects that advance the adopted sustainability water master plan and build and improve the infrastructure that delivers water service to Santa Monica's households and businesses. The graph on the slide provides a breakdown of the operating versus capital expenditure budget. The citywide budget is made up of 31 funds. The largest of these is the general fund and the general fund pays for services that are for the general good, most notably police, fire, libraries, parks and streets. Nearly three-quarters of the general fund is funded by tax revenues. Although in some cases where individual receives a specific benefit, like a class or a building permit, we do charge fees to recover our costs. On the general fund side, the general fund proposed budget for fiscal year 21, 22 is 349.5 million. For fiscal year 22, 23, it is 375, 375.3 million. The budget in the first year reflects the transfer in of rescue plan or ARPA funds due to accounting practices. So these funds show as a credit to our general fund expenditure budget rather than as a revenue and this has an effect of lowering our fiscal year 21, 22 budget slightly. In 22, 23, when the city stops receiving the ARPA funds, the general fund will no longer show a credit and expenditures therefore increase, reflect an increase. If we adjust for this anomaly, general fund expenditures increased by a moderate 3.2% from the first year to the second year. I will now hand over the presentation to Gigi, who will provide an economic update on the national, state and local economy.
Thank you, Oscar. Next slide, please. So after a year of closures and economic contraction, the country is starting to see economic recovery, as we've talked about tonight. Across the board, we expect that next year, economic growth will increase both at the federal and state levels with accompanying decreases in unemployment. The housing market will continue to stay strong. At the state level, it's expected that the lagging rebound of the tourism sector will be offset by professional, by the professional and technology sectors, which remain strong throughout the pandemic and will continue their growth. There is also very promising news regarding new state and federal funding that focuses on areas important to our community. For example, combating climate change, especially in the areas of transportation and water, addressing homelessness and affordable housing and equity, economic recovery and education at all levels. Next slide, please. At the local level, we're also seeing recovery, but as Lane noted earlier, our recovering is coming at a slower rate because of our significant reliance on tourism-based revenue streams that support our general fund. A large part of our strength in this area has been due to international and business travel, which have a longer recovery time. International travel growth, it still has to contend with continuing COVID surges in other countries, continuing restrictions and hesitant travelers, while business travel requires a longer lead time for planning that's often over a year. So bottom line, we anticipate tourism-based revenue, mostly from hotel taxes, to recover by fiscal year 2024, 25. Other significant general fund revenue streams, including sales tax and parking, will also continue to recover in 21, 22. But changes in consumer behavior that were accelerated by the pandemic and the way that some key online sales are attributed to city coffers are still going to temper growth for these areas. And while all other revenues will increase, including property taxes, our business license taxes currently accounting for more than 10% of our revenues will actually experience their first decrease in the post-pandemic year because they're calculated based on the prior year's economic activity. Next slide, please. The slow revenue recovery requires us to be careful in how we expand services in the short term. As you can see on the left-hand side of the slide, the revenue projections in our proposed budget in blue are still much lower than they were before the pandemic, which is shown in the orange bar. For that reason, as shown on the right side, we need to keep expenditures lower as well. In our budget restructuring last year, we eliminated over 400 positions, which you can see below the difference between the orange bar, which is pre-pandemic and where we are now. And we eliminated those positions both due to health restrictions that curtailed services and also lack of resources, with the general fund experiencing 80% of the cuts. The small targeted increases that are included in our proposed budget are within the range of what's fiscally sustainable, but we'll still be operating with almost 20% fewer positions performing a wide array of services than we, and these are 20% less than we had before the pandemic. Next slide, please. So this graphic shows a longer view of general fund revenues over the next five years. Once again, you can see in the first bar where we were pre-pandemic in fiscal year 18, 19. where we were pre-pandemic in fiscal year 1819, and how long it will take us to get back to just that old baseline. You can also see that hotel taxes and parking taxes, the blue and orange shaded areas at the top, increase at a slower rate at first and recover towards the end of the period. Over time, we'll continue to analyze how the post-pandemic economy recovers, what trends may shift consumer behaviors, and how those behaviors could change our projections in the future. Next slide. So I wanted to bring back this slide, which I presented to council last May, to report that our early projections for COVID-related revenue losses and the measures we took to balance our budget were accurate. We had anticipated that General Fund revenues would rebound next year in fiscal year 2122. The blue areas show the deficit we projected in the General Fund starting last year and continuing through fiscal year 2122 if we did nothing. At the time, we projected that with budget restructuring, shown in light blue, we would be able to lower ongoing operating costs by 20% and therefore minimize the deficit, and that the use of one-time funds, including a 50% decrease in annual capital funding, all of this shown in the darker blue, would cover the remaining deficit cap and allow us to maintain essential services in the worst part of the pandemic. Then, as we pulled out of the pandemic in fiscal year 2122 and revenues began their recovery, the cuts we'd made would be enough to keep our budget balanced, and we would no longer need to count on reserves. This past January, when we returned to council with the mid-year update, we actually reduced our projections for next year's revenue rebound by 11.6 million, and the revenue projections in the proposed budget are an additional 3 million lower than the January projections. It's important to understand that our city revenues are not rebounding at a level in excess of what had been projected. Next slide, please. This slide shows a different way to look at how we've used, and will continue to use, a combination of reserves, federal funding, and spending contractions to balance our budget. As you can see, beginning in fiscal year 1920, which is the second set of charts, and continuing into the current year, which is right in the middle, we relied on the 117 million in one-time funds set aside last June, most of them reserves, which are shown in light blue, to pay for expenditures, even when we reduced our expenditures through restructuring in fiscal year 2021. In the current year, again fiscal year 2021, we're also able to use federal stimulus funds, shown in peach, so that's the American Rescue Plan funds and a little bit of CARES, the little bit of CARES funds that we got earlier in the fiscal year. And we were able to use them to reinforce some key services and cover revenue losses. In the future, we can only count on American Rescue Plan stimulus funds for a few years to support any expansion of costs beyond our revenue growth for the year. Next slide, please. So this chart shows how we propose to use the 28.57 million in American Rescue Plan allocation that's coming from the federal government to the city. As we reported to you at our April 13th meeting, funds can be used to cover for lost revenues that would have been used to provide services and also to address the economic impacts of COVID on our community. Following council direction, staff has programmed 20% of the funding, shown in gray, towards initiatives assisting with economic recovery. This includes fee waivers and rent relief programs that staff will be presenting to council during the June meetings. Additionally, council directed staff to appropriate $6.3 million in Rescue Plan funds towards General Fund services in order to free up one-quarter of the transaction and use tax revenues that would be transferred to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund per Measure GSH, as well as to set aside $5 million in contingency funding to cover deficits resulting from revenue losses at the Beach and Pier Funds. These one-time allocations are shown in blue. And finally, council directed staff to use the remaining funds, shown in orange, to temporarily fund about $3 million in annual ongoing expanded services addressing council priorities until our General Fund revenues can support these new services in about three and a half years. Next slide, please. With the help of increasing revenues, short-term Rescue Plan support, and continued care in how we expand our services until we are more certain of the economic climate that lies ahead of us, we're finally seeing positive balances over most of our five-year General Fund forecast. This table shows the difference when you subtract annual expenditures from annual revenues. So a positive balance in a given year means that our annual revenues exceed our expenditures. The small $2 million surpluses we show starting in fiscal year 2223 provide us with some flexibility if our projections are overstated or if additional emergency expenditures are needed. So this forecast also builds in a plan to reclaim our financial resiliency after the hit that our reserve balances and capital infrastructure program have taken in the past two years. Last May, council approved a temporary decrease of the city's rainy day reserve contingency from 15% of annual General Fund costs to 12.5%. Forecast sets aside funds to begin rebuilding the city's rainy day funds by half a percent each year, starting in fiscal year 2324. And it also sets aside funds each year to address and mitigate the city's pending liabilities. Under this plan, we anticipate that we will reach the best practice level of 15% in rainy day levels by fiscal year 2627. These rainy day funds and the reserves that we have set aside are critical in our ability to withstand any additional emergencies that may come up. Also, the forecast shows a gradual rebuilding of our capital program that is allow, would allow us to maintain infrastructure and equipment at a level that saves costs in the long, in the long run. And it also allows us to take on projects that enhance the community's experience without requiring bond funding. The rebuilding plan attains the prior $21 million funding level for capital programs in the last year of the forecast. Finally, the forecast includes the assumption that, as revenues recover, the General Fund will make the deferred payment of the fiscal year 2021 Measure GSH payment to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund over three years, beginning in fiscal year 2324, and will also resume all pay-down schedules of unfunded retirement liabilities. Next slide. Staff has also analyzed the financial condition of other funds, mostly enterprise funds that operate with their own revenue streams coming from individuals' use of services they provide. The majority of our enterprise funds are anticipated to remain stable and self-sufficient through the next five years, assuming that our Resource Recovery Recycling Fund are, will return to council with the results of a rate study next summer. And as we've been reporting for some months, the Beach and Pier Funds will not be self-sustaining over the next few years and will require assistance either from the General Fund or from Rescue Plan Funds. These funds rely heavily on visitor-based revenues from parking and percent-of-sale leases, and both of those have been severely impacted by the closures and restrictions over the past year. We do anticipate that the need for subsidies will wane in a few years. In the Beach Fund in 2223, and in the Pier Fund, we expect the fund to be self-sufficient in 2324. So that concludes my first portion of the presentation. Before we move into the department presentations, I do want to take some time to thank the members of our city staff who have worked often round-the-clock with incredible commitment during some of the hardest days they'll see in their careers in order to keep the city on track financially and to develop the budget you're reviewing tonight. Special thanks to the Budget Division, Oscar Santiago, Jennifer Yang, Jonathan Tang, and Lori Ko for leading that effort, and to Assistant City Treasurer, Dave Carr, for your thoughtful and on-point revenue and economic analysis. And with that, we are going to start our presentation of the department budgets. Thank you.
Good evening, council. I hope everyone can hear me. Jennifer, can you move it to the next slide, please? Thank you. My name's Christopher Smith, and I am here to talk to you about the Council Office and City Manager Office budgets this evening. The City Council Office budget includes salary and benefits for council members and about $120,000 for council discretionary funds. It's also staffed by one full-time position who supports the mayor and the council, supports our work with our fellow cities in LA and state and federal, and manages our federal and state lobbyist contracts who are out there advocating for city policy positions and funding opportunities. Next slide, please. Oh, and I'll just add, we're not recommending any changes to the Council Office budget. In this, the City Manager's office has two divisions, the Administration Division and the Office of Emergency Management. The Administration Division is responsible for the overall management of the city, including ensuring staff presents our best work to council, and in turn, we effectively implement council direction that we remain focused on priorities and that we deliver the best services we can within our budget. The Administration Division also includes teams focused on communications, equity and inclusion, and 3-1-1 customer service. The Communications Team, reduced from 18 to 6 FTE in the 2020 restructuring, has been devoted to fostering civic engagement by distributing information to the community, broadcasting public meetings, and broadcasting public meetings. The team has used the very, city's various communication platforms and vague vital public health guidance to residents and businesses throughout the pandemic, as well as support the We Are Santa Monica Fund, emergency response, economic recovery, equity and inclusion initiatives, and public forums on key matters and recruitments across the city. I'll also add that Communications brings in about $22,000 in revenue for supporting the video coverage of school district and rent control meetings, and the city receives approximately $280,000 in public education and government or PEG funds for operating city TV. As you heard earlier tonight for the City Manager presentation, 2020 brought renewed attention to equity and inclusion across the nation and here in Santa Monica. Building on the work previously done with GARE, CMO staff are coordinating efforts with department equity and inclusion officers to continue our efforts to break down systemic barriers and create a more equitable community and workplace, including staffing the Public Safety Reform and Oversight Commission and liaising with the Police Department to promote collaboration and ensure effective policy. 3-1-1 launched on March 31st with two staff, ensuring a timely and accurate response to over 4,000 customer inquiries coming through our New City app, website, phone, and email. Our other division in the City Manager's office is the Office of Emergency Management, the 32 FTE. They have been the command center for the city's COVID emergency response, coordinating staff from all departments to ensure we are responsive to rapidly changing public health requirements and information, and that we kept our workplace safe. Emergency Management also runs our 911 Public Safety Communications and Resiliency Planning to help city departments and residents prepare in the event of a disaster. Next slide, Jennifer. To support council priorities and to position the city for an effective recovery, the City Manager's office is recommending a few changes to this department's budget, including adding $36,000 in one-time funding to support matching grants for city neighborhood groups, adding $100,000 to expand language access for city meetings and communications, as well as $50,000 to support racial justice work. We're also recommending transferring the Equity and Communications Coordinator position from Public Works to the Communications Team to ensure a citywide equity focus in our communications and engagement effort. We're also recommending supporting increasing as-needed hours in the Communication Team to port graphic design services related to public information and outreach on COVID response and economic recovery. And finally, we're restoring the city's federal lobbyist contract from $15,000 to $45,000 to increase our advocacy for new federal resources, grants, and legislation in line with city priorities. With that, I'll turn it over to the City Attorney's Office to give their update.
Good evening, Jennifer. Can we go to the next slide? So I've been allotted four minutes to go through. That is woefully inadequate to describe everything we do. Indeed, as Councilmember Brock knows, I spent more than two hours with him last week going through what we do, how we do it, and answering his questions. But here's our primary priorities. We protect public safety. We prosecute misdemeanor criminal offenses committed in Santa Monica. That extends not just to prosecution, but also to providing assistance to victims. And as part of our efforts, as part of the city's efforts to address homelessness, we coordinate our misdemeanor criminal prosecutions with the Police Department and with the Community Services Division to try and leverage the criminal system to encourage people to get services and to try and move people out of homelessness. In addition, we, we function and provide services through the Homeless Court and other local diversion programs, programs that have become increasingly important as court resources have shrunk and courts have become more reluctant to use the criminal process to impose meaningful sentences in misdemeanor cases. We also protect Santa Monica tenants and consumers. Our Public Rights Division does affirmative litigation to enforce a range of local and state laws that protect tenants and consumers. For examples, we've brought actions to enforce the eviction moratorium, to enforce the city's tenant harassment ordinance, to enforce fair housing laws, to enforce the residential leasing and home sharing regulations, and to enforce consumer and worker protection laws. We also do community education and outreach on a regular basis to help tenants and landlords and business workers all understand their mutual rights and responsibilities in an effort to avoid conflicts and resolve conflicts before they have to go to litigation. This section, our Public Rights Division, routinely obtains monies in forms of recoveries that in fact go to fund a portion of the staff in that division. We also protect city resources in that we defend the city in civil lawsuits seeking monetary damages. We are the defense lawyers when the city gets sued. We defend the city, council members, officials, police officers, when they get sued alleging that they have engaged in conduct that has, that should be paid monetary damages. Finally, we also provide legal advice to all of you, the city council, to all of our boards and commissions, to city departments and staff, and during the emergency, that expanded to the Emergency Operations Center. To understand what this involves, our office basically reviews, in many instances participates in negotiating and/or drafting every contract the city does, every lease, every staff report, every ordinance, every resolution, every legal document that the city generates or uses, we review and in many instances draft or participate in drafting. Can we go to the next slide? We are not seeking any proposed budget changes. We are not requesting any increases, and I think it's important to remind everybody what we did in 2020 in terms of the staffing reductions and savings. We eliminated three attorney and three staff positions. In addition, all the attorneys in my office took a voluntary 3.5% pay cut for two years, generated additional funds. Special Counsel Chief of Staff position remains unfilled. Even with, whether with or without these pay cuts, we provide all these services on a cost-efficient basis. Our most expensive attorney on an hourly rate is well less than we have to pay for outside councils. And so with that, I will end my presentation and turn it over to the next department.
Next slide, please. Mayor and council, the records and election services, City Clerk Department, we're using our same resources, and we are looking for ways to increase community engagement and transparency. In our administrative, we have three divisions. In our administrative, Administration Division, which also includes our records management, we provide city council meeting support. As we return to the in-public meetings, that means working with ISD to make adjustments, we, to make adjustments to public comment, to the public comment process. Depending on how the council decides to proceed, we anticipate an increase in staffing time as well as additional costs for the call-in studio software. We will provide the boards and commissions support, helping them with implementing the council-approved changes, training, and recruitment of members. We plan on partnering with Uh, we plan on partnering with, um, city attorney's office and H R for providing training. We are looking into pop, into the possible sharing of the Office of Communications Digital Wayfinding Board in order to provide twenty-four-hour access for agenda postings. We also provide passport services, but with the loss of a staff person, we will be opening to provide passport services on a limited basis with our current staff. Public records request over the past two years, uh, the number of records requests have steadily increased, and we don't anticipate to see a decline in that. For the elections, we'll, we will conduct the twenty-twenty-two municipal general election. Um, as you know, election laws and regulations are always changing. We will prepare to make any adjustments accordingly. There are some things that we learned from the twenty-twenty election that we plan to carry over to the twenty-twenty-two election. For example, um, interactive, the interactive workshop that we had, as well as providing the documents electronically. And then our last division is our support services. We plan to maintain, um, with our currents, with our current staff, we lost a, a person in the last year. Uh, we are launching the new web-to-print system in the next month. This will make it easier for the user. They will, it will include a reporting feature. Will allow more flexibility when changes are needed and for the template setup, and it will simplify the way staff can make changes. Um, we will address, we're also addressing some of the recommendations that Moss Adams recommended. And so, um, that's what I have. We have no other changes at this time, though. I'll now turn it over to the next department.
Next slide. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm David Martin with the Community Development Department. Our department has eighty-six employees with a proposed budget of twenty-five million, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand and revenue of thirty-three-point-five million in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. In fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, as the economy continues to recover, we are projecting an increase in revenues of approximately ten million dollars to around forty-three million, and also a small increase in expenditures of less than five-hundred thousand. The department includes city planning, uh, building, safety, code enforcement, and economic development. I want to take a second to thank every member of the department, uh, for all of their hard work over the last year, uh, particularly the folks who, uh, were coming in, uh, you know, day in and day out, um, throughout, throughout the pandemic. That includes the building inspectors, code enforcement officers, our farmers market employees, all the folks that were here every day and keeping the city running, um, very much appreciated. Uh, next slide. The department is focused on citywide efforts to ensure a clean and safe Santa Monica. Uh, these efforts include the administration of the beach and pier funds with a focus on safe reopening, the continued operation of the farmer's market while ensuring compliance with evolving health guidelines, uh, the development of policies and plans that shape the built environment and support economic recovery, and the streamlining of the permitting process while ensuring the safe construction and occupancy of buildings. Next slide. Some of the major work efforts include implementation of the recommendations contained in the Moss Adams Permit Efficiency Study, um, continued implementation of our seismic retrofit program, uh, participation, excuse, excuse me, completion of the, uh, twenty-twenty-one housing element, including implementation, which will involve amendments to the loose, the zoning ordinance, and area plans throughout the city, uh, and processing of development agreements and permits for both city-owned properties and private development. And finally, enforcement of codes and ordinances to ensure a clean and safe Santa Monica. Next slide. I want to go over a few of the, the budget changes that are proposed. Uh, I will start with positions and then finish up with the funds. So first, um, we are requesting that we restore three positions to address service delays in our permitting process. Um, those include a permit specialist, a senior plan check engineer, and an assistant planner. Uh, these positions are recommended in the Moss Adams study and are necessary to assist with the timely processing of permits, which of course, um, helps and leads to our economic recovery as a city. We are also proposing to, to restore two code enforcement positions. Um, these will help to ensure that the city can provide a clean and safe environment for our residents and our visitors. Next slide. And then finally, uh, we are proposing, um, that the budget include a park planner position in the city planning division. This position will assist with planning for improvements and additions to existing parks and play a lead role in planning for future parks. Now moving on to the funds, we are requesting a seventy-five-thousand-dollar fund to hire a consultant uh, to advise the city on leasing and property management efforts to make sure that we're maximizing uh, the benefits from our city-owned resources. Next slide. We are also requesting a twenty-five-thousand-dollar fund to help our business improvement district partners uh, with the cost of community events. And finally, we are requesting twenty-five-thousand-dollar funds to examine the governance of the Santa Monica Pier and to consider the formation of a business improvement district in the pier and oceanfront area. Uh, with that, I will turn it over to Andy in our Community Services Department. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Andy Agel. Let's go to the next slide first. Jennifer? There we go. So on behalf of the entire Community Services Department team, it's my privilege to provide a brief overview of the proposed Community Services Budget for fiscal years twenty-one through twenty-three. With the department restructuring that we went through early in the pandemic, even I sometimes get confused about who does what. So I wanted to start by framing that the Community Services Department is responsible for the city's provision of programs and services in community recreation, cultural affairs, affordable housing, and human services. And I'd like to briefly highlight our three key areas of focus for the coming two years. Next slide. So our first area of focus is safely supporting the health and wellness of the community through programs and services in aquatics, sports, and recreation classes and camps. Next slide. Our second area of focus is to harness the power of art to support community, health, and economic recovery, and to illuminate Santa Monica's diverse cultural history. Next slide. Our third area of focus is to support the local safety net and help address the basic needs of our most vulnerable community members, including seniors, residents with disabilities, youth and families, and residents experiencing homelessness through our direct service programs, support for our local network of human service nonprofits, portable housing programs, and special initiatives related to equitably, equitable economic recovery. Next slide. So the proposed changes to the Community Services Department's budget for fiscal years twenty-one through twenty-three align with the three priority areas that the council identified earlier. First, with respect to the council's priority of addressing homelessness, the proposed budget provides ongoing funding for the multidisciplinary street teams that during their pilot period have been shown to be effective tools in addressing homelessness for our highest users of services and in our downtown and beach areas. The budget also provides for enhanced internal capacity to focus on homelessness prevention and moving forward on the council priorities initiative, council prioritized initiatives related to behavioral health intervention and alternative conduit care. Next slide. With respect to the council's clean and safe priority, the proposed budget provides ongoing funding for the Reed Park ambassadors, which many in the community have embraced as providing a safer and cleaner experience in one of our most sensitive parks. The budget also restores, restores public access to several city facilities, which creates more activity in the parks and at the beach, increasing the sense of safety for all. The budget changes include, first, supporting the school district and community access to historic Belmar Park; second, allowing park buildings to reopen for classes, camps, and community meetings; and finally, reopening the pool and offering swim lessons at the Annenberg Community Beach House. Next slide. Finally, with respect to council's priority of an equitable and inclusive economic recovery, the proposed budget restores a portion of the previous grant funding levels to the nonprofit organizations that pro- that provide a safety net of services, vulnerable seniors, residents with disabilities, youth, and residents experiencing homelessness through the Human Services Grant Program. The budget also provides funding for emergency assistance for our most vulnerable residents in order to help fill gaps in need that are not covered by federal and state emergency assistance programs. And finally, the proposed budget restores deposits into the Housing Trust Fund to support affordable housing production and preservation, as well as continuation of the preserving our diversity program that provides basic needs cash support for some of Santa Monica's most vulnerable citizens. That concludes my overview of the Community Services Department budget, and I'd like to send things back to Gigi Decavolo Hughes.
Thank you, Andy. Jennifer, next slide. So the Finance Department will continue to play an integral role in the smooth operation of this city, and this work will be more intense as we emerge from COVID restrictions. We'll continue to develop and lead the various initiatives and ongoing work that ensure fiscal sustainability from analyzing economic trends that impact our revenues, monitoring spending and cost recovery, and strategically thinking about debt financing and investments, and also proactively running programs to mitigate our liabilities, programs that span from workers' compensation and general liability to paying down our unfunded retirement obligations on an accelerated schedule. We'll continue to focusing, to focus on administering federal funds and reporting on them. These funds include FEMA and rescue plan funds and any grants that we receive so that we can ensure compliance and make sure that we'll be able to receive and spend these funds. Our safety program will continue to advise on and monitor safe workplace conditions for city staff. And this also means safe facilities and spaces for our community members. Our procurement team will continue to support departments in purchasing essential supplies and services at the best value and in the most equitable manner. Our teams providing business license and billing administration will continue their efforts to support our business community and residents during what promises to be a difficult period for those who have seen economic hardship during the pandemic. And staff will continue to collect revenues, including parking meter revenues, and ensuring that all funds are accounted for and get back, get to the bank safely. Next slide, please. The Finance Team, uh, was able to repurpose funds within our budget to propose the addition of a clerical position in our procurement division. This position will free up higher-level staff to implement more streamlined processes, including an automated contract lifecycle system, and to increase our focus on enhancing equity and procurement through more targeted outreach efforts. With this change, the Finance Department is operating with a staff that's almost twenty percent smaller than before the pandemic, but our ability to operate at this level is due entirely to the dedicated and innovative finance staff bring to work daily to find ways to streamline our processes while also maintaining the highest levels of integrity. Thank you. On to the Fire Department and Chief Walker.
Good evening. Um, for the Fire Department, our key areas of focus, uh, this coming up year is, as always, to provide all-hazard emergency response, advanced medical emergency services, and fire prevention services. As you know, the Fire Department responds to any and all calls, and we recently saw with the twelve-inch gas, uh, main leak in the city, was another example of the ability of the Fire Department to respond to high-level incidents.
Everybody needs to mute. Every, there are ninety-seven presenters, and every presenter needs to mute because we're hearing background noise from someone. I muted. Everybody needs to mute, other than Chief Walker and of course, uh, Esther.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. Um, I'll continue. Um, the Fire Department provides all emergency hazard response. Um, as a, as a department that responds to any and all nine-one-one calls, um, we will continue to focus on the preparedness of our individuals to do that. We are an advanced life support department that provides advanced life support on every nine-one-one call that we go to. We also have a full-service fire prevention division that provides not only, uh, prevention, uh, inspections, but plan check and, and all the other aspects of community risk reduction that a modern fire department needs to provide. We also provide the required training and resources to our personnel. That is always the focus of the department to ensure that our, that our, our folks have the highest level of training and resources at their disposal so when we respond, we can provide the highest level of service. And, and, uh, as you think about being an all-hazard, uh, department, training is the most important thing we do to ensure not only the safety of our personnel, but also the quality and competency with which we respond. Uh, we will continue to execute our fleet, facilities, and equipment master plans. The department is, is invested a tremendous amount of time to develop a lot of critically thought-out and, uh, uh, few, future-leaning plans to ensure our fleet, our facilities, and our equipment uh, is well thought out and planned for the future. We'll also continue to provide emergency response planning for special events. As you well know, the city of Santa Monica has many special events. The Fire Department is a leading expert in developing plans, adhering to the incident command system, and being a strong partner in all of these areas. We will continue to have success in obtaining and managing state and federal grant funds. I'm extremely proud of the grant and, uh, uh, the team from Finance of the Fire Department. Uh, every year, we bring in hundreds of thousands of dollars. If you look over the last ten to twenty years, uh, really over ten million dollars in, uh, federal grant funds to support the department. Uh, in, in particular, our entire, uh, training and equipment for both our USAR Class One team and our Hazmat Class One team, uh, is used through these federal grant funds. We are also successful in provide, in, in leading to get funds to support our I S D brothers and sisters uh, with several hundred thousand dollars for a cybersecurity grant that they will be getting, uh, both in two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one. We'll also be focusing on beginning construction of our new fire training facility. Uh, I want to tip my hat to our, our partners at Public Works and Architectural Services, for the great partners they are in helping this, uh, come to, come to be. Additionally, we'll continue out to participate in statewide mutual aid. As I'm sure you're all aware, we had our, we've had a couple brush fires already this season, and we just had a small fire up in Temescal Canyon yesterday. Um, and with the, the, the climate change and the heat and the things that have gone on, um, our participation in that is needed. Uh, the commitment of our firefighters is exceptional, and that's something that's going to affect our operations, um, for the foreseeable future. Uh, next slide, please. Our proposed budget changes are increased funding to West Coast Care and a continued partnership. As you know, we recently took over the contract, uh, to manage that for West Coast Care. We've always been partners with West Coast Care. They are a direct provider of services to the homeless in this town. And they do an excellent job, and we look forward to continuing to, uh, help them be, be more effective and, and provide even better service as a partnership with us. Um, secondly, we, uh, we look to establish a community response unit based on the two thousand nineteen pilot. Um, in two thousand nineteen, we did a pilot program of a key community response unit, which was, uh, specifically focused on, uh, interacting with homelessness and also, uh, the vulnerable population in our city. We found this unit to be highly effective, and not only, uh, directly interacting with these folks, but also as a force multiplier for the other, uh, uh, folks that are doing the same work in the city, and also to be train the trainer types within our department to increase our overall knowledge ability, uh, and, and ability to, to be effective in actually helping folks out. We run about approximately twenty percent of our calls on, on homeless, uh, individuals, and so the opportunity to have this team to actually, uh, be focused and strategically and tactically placed uh, to make a difference is, is, is a, is a great thing for not only the department but the city. We will be hosting a Recruit Training Academy in the spring of twenty-twenty-two. As always, we, we have to hire some more, more folks. This is a, a different training academy, so our training division is, is rewriting this. Um, this will be a lateral recruit academy, and so, uh, a little different, a little shorter. This will be a lateral recruit academy, and so a little different, a little shorter academy and a different pool that we, we hire from, so it is requiring our, our training team to, to get out there and, and rewrite our, our plan. We had done a much longer training academy in the past, and they are rewriting that to ensure that it's extremely effective for those recruits we bring in. And then finally, we're temporarily restoring administrative staff, temporary staff assistant in the Train Division to help with the running of this academy and other miscellaneous activities that are required in training. And that's the end report for the Fire Department. Thank you.
Stephanie, can you go to the next slide, please? So good evening, everyone. I'm Lori Gentles. I'm the Chief People Officer and HR Director. HR continues to focus on the HR arc, which is to attract and retain the next generation of leaders, reinforce a civil and equitable workplace, and cultivate a culture of accountability, empowerment, and leadership. And this includes how we source our talent and how we onboard and support the employee throughout the entire employment lifecycle. Our goal is to align all HR activity with this mission statement and the Moss Adams recommendations that were part of the HR organizational review that was done last year. So over the next two years, 12 months in particular, we will be focusing on three areas: technology enhancements and workflow efficiencies, equity and inclusion, and a comprehensive classification analysis. Examples of work in these areas include implementation of a new onboarding and offboarding system in partnership with ISD that will enhance the overall new hire experience and eliminate manual tasks; the implementation of a new benefits administration platform, which will improve the user experience, and again, reduce transactional and manual work; engagement with various stakeholders about ways that we can modernize the civil service rules to further ensure that all persons have equal opportunity to obtain and hold employment, and seek to diversify applicant pools, both internally and externally. You may recall that in November 2020, the voters passed a ballot measure to modify the city's charter, and this engagement is the next step in the process. Additionally, we will begin a multi-year comprehensive classification study to identify ways to reduce the number of classifications and, and create clear career paths for our employees. Next slide. In consideration of the city's financial disposition, we exercised extreme discretion and narrowed our request to the bare minimum of what we need to carry out our mission and the Moss Adams recommendation. We will need to extend to limited term employees and upgrade a position that is critical to our ability to modernize HR functions, enhance our ability to conduct internal audits, complete the Moss Adams recommendations, and be responsive to legally mandated requests. We will also need to expand the use of our services with the Hartford Group, who provides FMLA administrative, administration for Public Works and VBB or SAMODAT. This was a pilot program that we initiated in 2019, 2020 as an efficiency measure, and to date, the pilot has been successful, and we'd like to expand it citywide to achieve and to realize further efficiencies. And that's all we have for the HR Department, and I will turn it over to the next presenter. Thank you.
Jennifer, could you advance to the next slide, please? Good evening, Mayor Himmrich and Council. This is Joseph Chavatello, your Chief Information Officer, and I'm proud to present the Information Services Department budget. You'll notice that our expenditures in '21, '22, and '22, '23 are essentially the same. We have revenue increases of a couple million dollars in '22, '23. This is primarily due to the excellent work of our Community Broadband Division. The key areas of focus for ISD in the coming year will be, obviously, to continue the support, maintenance, and securing of the city's information technology infrastructure, our digital services, and the 120 projects in the ISD project portfolio, which focus on modernization and digitization for the city. In the next six to 12 months, some of the key projects we'll be focusing on are the continued build-out and completion of the city's new web presence, as well as the City of Santa Monica app and the 3-1-1 program. As you may remember, ISD has been working on the city web presence since July of last year, and we're, we hope, and we will have it completed by December of this year. The next big project that we're focusing our energies on is going to be the replacement of the city's computer-assisted dispatch records management system. This is a system which supports public safety, is used by the Police Department, the Fire Department, and dispatch, or the Office of Emergency Management. Our current system is well beyond end-of-life, and we need to move to a much more modern, cloud-based, more redundant system. And then the third big project we're going to be focusing on is transforming the city's online permitting technologies to provide a better customer experience and a speedier response. Next slide, please. So our budget is generally flat from the previous year. The only change to the budget we're proposing this year is to restore $193,000 in the '21, '22 CIP for information security systems, which we feel are vital to safeguarding city data and systems. Thank you, and I'll turn it over to the library.
Thank you, Joseph. Jennifer, could you advance? Thank you. Patty Wong with the Library Department. Our mission is to provide resources, services, and a physical and virtual space to encourage the community to read, act, relax, and learn. And our priority areas through our strategic plan remain the same: to support literacy, lifelong learning, civic engagement, full awareness through our four main focus areas: vibrant learning center, wellbeing cultivator, dynamic third-place community and cultural connector. During COVID, while we were physically inaccessible to our public, the library liked to share that we were open for virtual and curbside services. We rebounded quickly beginning in March. Next slide, Jennifer? Thank you. Just wanted to share, in many ways, the library's story is a story about COVID and how we were able to recover. We have circulated or checked out and renewed more than half a million items since we suspended indoor services in March. Our e-materials saw big increases from 2019 to 2020. Overdrive had 68% of increase, while Hoopla Digital and e-magazines saw an increase from 25% to 35% in circulation. A good part of that service was curbside and digital services. Our staff checked out more than 175,000 items at our three curbside locations. We distributed over 1,450 activity kits, anything ranging from art, the STEM, Day of the Dead, even distribution of plants, and many of you have taken advantage of that. Some kits were in partnership with local organizations like Katon Children's Museum. And then, of course, we had heavy demand for our homework help services. Brainfuse homework help and online tutoring was accessed an average of more than 700 per month since December 2020. Next slide, please. So with staffing cuts 58%, it's imperative that we reimagine and redesign some of our services. During the pandemic, due to our severe staffing cuts, we were unable to provide even limited curbside service at two out of our five library locations. As we begin restoring indoor services, Main Library reopens with limited first-floor services. Like next week, we still operate large staffing deficit and continue to face challenges reopening all of our branch locations. But the library is committed to taking on these challenges, providing that we have the resources to expand and grow along with these changes. We will design and reimagine how the library provides resources, education, and information on specific city projects focusing on economic opportunity and recovery, a big part of city council's direction. This includes a reorganization of staff, an evaluation of spaces, and an emphasis on flexibility, adaptability, and responsiveness. We're going to track outcomes of programs and services that directly contribute attaining education or information knowledge that help with careers, businesses, and other economic development opportunities, and especially work with our schools. We will emphasize adaptability and responsiveness. Going to expand and emphasize usage of collection areas and electronic resources related to career, business, and job training. This includes marketing, instruction, and removing barriers to access self-service opportunities. And lastly, we're going to be present, understand, and connect with community as much as possible. Next slide. Many thanks to the 47 staff that actually comprise our, that remain. Jennifer, if you could advance? Thank you. And so I'd like to address some of the proposed budget changes. As you know, library pages are the fundamental backbone of our library service. Without them, our foundation is weak and compromised. They are responsible for returning every single item that is circulated back to the shelves. We are going to be restoring 3.85 FTE to reinforce that foundation, and they fulfill really our basic foundational needs. Without them, we were using other positions to fill that role because we had to maintain order within the system. So that's $145,000. Pages definitely are as needed. I just wanted to mention that. They are, they are part of our positions of 38.5 FTE that were eliminated with COVID. .8 FTE of pages were restored to us at mid-year 2021, and this proposal restores that additional, an additional 3.85 FTE, which is a total of about 8,000 hours of page death. The second item is a library program specialist position. Youth and family services is, it is a new classification to us. It would add 1.0 FTE to establish, reestablish our youth and family expertise. As you know, we lost eight FTE of youth services, library staff, only two FTE remain. And from an equity perspective, this does not require an MLS, so more people will be eligible for service here. The position provides family and youth expertise that no longer really exists in-house. Next slide. Thank you. The second focus of our budget changes is actually to address our neighborhood service needs where we need it the most. As you know, we weren't able to open all of our facilities. With a grant from the State Library, we were able to, we are able to open self-service at Ocean Park. It is grant-funded, however, and we need a little bit more funding to, to support our ongoing annual maintenance. It also includes maintenance for not only the system, but also maintenance for the cameras that are... And the last piece is expanded branch services, both at Ocean Park and Montana. We hope to expand the Ocean Park open plus hours from 12 hours to 15 hours a week. We want to extend the branch hours at Montana to include Saturdays, and it includes a slight restoration of material funds to restore about 5% of what was originally. That concludes my presentation. Hand it off to Chief Seabrook. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On behalf of the men and women of the Police Department, I'm honored to provide a brief overview of the Police Department's proposed budget for fiscal years 2021 through '22 and 2022 through 2023. During this two-year period, the Police Department is not requesting any budget enhancements or increases. Although we're currently operating at a reduced staffing level due to numerous vacancies and extensive injuries, the Police Department will focus on the following key areas. Next slide, please. We'll be focusing on reducing crime and the fear of crime, which will be accomplished through first response by the most appropriate personnel. We will supplement that with a robust investigative follow-up supported by rebounded planning and intelligence. We will commit to enhance mobility consistent with the core visions, I'm sorry, the core values of Vision Zero, and that involves using the data-driven approach to traffic enforcement and comprehensive traffic safety community education. We will continue with community engagement by expanding the reach of the existing juvenile diversion program, working with our community partners to establish a new adult diversion program, broadening the focus of our NRO engagement, our Neighborhood Resource Officers, their engagement on quality of life concerns, and we'll continue to collaborate with help the Department of Mental Health and our community-based organizations on issues associated with homelessness. And we will also focus on officer resiliency and wellbeing. Next slide, please. So the proposed budget changes occurred at mid-year and will continue as we reallocated funds from the Police Department's budget to provide programmatic support for code enforcement, homelessness engagement, the 3-1-1 service program, and tenant counseling. We're providing ongoing funding to support the Public Safety Reform and Oversight Commission's training and the costs associated with the seating of the Inspector General. We've deleted the Transit Details Pilot Program, which resulted in a reduction of approximately two FTEs. And we'll be providing ongoing funding support to downtown Santa Monica so as to enhance the ability of the ambassadors and others associated with the operation of downtown Santa Monica to assist us with addressing quality of life concerns. And, next slide, please. And as I conclude, I'd like to say thank you to our newest budget analyst, Mr. Jose Arroyo, and Captain Candace Coparubias, as they are the Police Department's leads on our budget preparation and, and overall management of the budget. And thank you to the men and women who, on a daily basis, do their best to keep this community safe. Thank you. And that concludes the Police Department's presentation.
May I have the next slide, please? Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Rick Balti, and I'm your Acting Director of Public Works. The mission of the Public Works Department is to protect and enrich the quality of life in the city through sustainable maintenance, management, and enhancement of resources and public infrastructure. True to this mission, our key areas of focus over the next two years include the maintenance and enhancement of city buildings, parks, beaches, streets, airports, cemetery, utilities, and other infrastructure. This represents the lion's share of the department's functions and supports the council-adopted community priority of clean and safe public spaces. Implementing the city's Sustainable Water Master Plan positions the city to achieve water self-sufficiency and drought resilience, and will significantly reduce our reliance on imported water. Another key focus area is the effort to comply with Senate Bill 1383, which dictates the need for organics recycling. This effort helps the city attain regulatory compliance in its continued march towards zero waste. Key capital improvements that are targeted for completion over the next two years include the city yard's modernization, the fire training facility upgrade, and the Sustainable Water Infrastructure Project. Finally, the message is loud and clear that we are facing a series of stable but low-budget years. To that extent, Public Works will be increasing efforts to identify outside funding sources to support defunded priority projects. The department will target funding sources that will support projects, as well as the staffing needed, to deliver the projects whenever feasible. In cases where staffing costs are not permissible by grants, we may have to return to the City Council for staffing needs in the future in order to be able to execute successfully funded projects. The next slide, please. The RRR Division evaluated its street sweeping program and, based on data and observations, has recommended returning to a weekly sweeping frequency. The budget changes include an increase from the RRR fund to support an additional full-time motor sweeper operator that enables the Division to increase the sweeping frequency motor sweeper operator that enables the division to increase the sweeping frequency to weekly, as well as budgets for as-needed personnel to support the sweeping program and refuse collection. Parks were some of the few recreational facilities available to the public during parts of the pandemic. After last year's COVID-19-induced restructuring, it was found that the department's remaining resources were insufficient to keep up the trash removal services over the weekends and during holidays. In response, the budget changes include ongoing funding to allow for adequate trash removal services at parks citywide during weekends and holidays. Both of these services support the council-adopted community priority of clean and safe public spaces. Next slide, please. About 13.7 miles of protected bikeways will be completed throughout the city by the end of fiscal year 2223. Maintenance of existing bikeways to date has been inconsistent at best. Ongoing regular maintenance is necessary to keep the bikeways clean and clear of obstructing debris and to ensure that the bicyclist's use of these facilities is enjoyable and safe. The budget changes include ongoing funds from the Stormwater Fund to support these maintenance services, which again, support the community priority of clean and safe public spaces. In the past year, the city experienced four out of 10 water production wells that were offline for extended periods of time due to repair and maintenance activities. As production wells are brought back online after rehabilitation, reductions in production are anticipated. This reduction is estimated to be about 7% of the annual water production, or about 742 acre-feet per year. This loss of production will have to be purchased from MWD until the Sustainable Water Master Plan is fully implemented. The budget increase from the Water Fund is included in the budget changes to account for these purchases. Next slide, please. And finally, the city's existing contract for tree maintenance expires in July of this year. As the service is bid out, budget adjustments are necessary to account for prevailing wage requirements. Tree maintenance services are especially pertinent along Ocean Avenue, Main Street, Montana, and other areas where outdoor dining areas have expanded as part of the city's efforts to support economic recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic. It is critical to keep streets free of natural debris, as well as reduce the risk of falling tree branches or palm fronds, especially along these sidewalks occupied by restaurant patrons that are dining outdoors. Tree maintenance services support the council-adopted community priorities of clean and safe public spaces, as well as equitable and inclusive economic recovery. And this concludes the Public Works section, and I'm turning it over to Ed King for the Department of Transportation.
Thank you, Rick. Next slide, please. Good evening, Mayor, members of the Council. Ed King. Tonight, I am honored on behalf of the 444 outstanding staff who provide transportation and mobility services to the city and to the West Side of Los Angeles. And for the Department of Transportation budget, the DOT provides accessible connections to economic opportunity and ensures that our community has safe streets. The department is a community resource for innovative, accessible, and sustainable mobility options, and advances the Big Blue Bus regional transit network. The merger of the Big Blue Bus Mobility and Parking Operations reflects the new budget and the new staffing. As a reminder, we're a combination of an enterprise fund and a general fund. And of the $100 million expenditures for fiscal year '21-'22, approximately $72 million of that is the enterprise fund for the Big Blue Bus. Next slide, please. The department supports the council community priorities for clean and safe open spaces and neighborhoods through the delivery of safe streets, protected bike lanes, safe and secure bus service for our customers and staff. We will continue to disinfect and clean our vehicles more frequently, and last year we provided operator barriers and invested in those for our staff and our customers to ensure that they are safe when they're riding our system. We solidified our partnership with Santa Monica Police Department to ensure security and safety in our system, and we will continue that effort, where a dedicated unit that is led by a sergeant and accompanied by two to three sworn officers on a weekly basis patrols our service here in the city for safety and security. In addition, our Seventh Street Innovative Project for improved off-stop amenities, a dog run, and open space for a food vendor will be a community benefit for those living and working near our facility. Next slide, please. We are supporting the city's efforts in economic recovery through the delivery of parklets, the February reopening of Blue, the Transit Store, and the March reopening of the Go Sambo Center for parking operations and administration, provision of new safe technology for our parking and BBB's customers to support staff efforts to provide and pilot cashless fare payments. BBB will begin a cashless fare collection pilot in July. Next slide, please. The budget will also support work on the council's Vision 2030 plan. It's our goal to convert the BBB fleet to zero emissions by 2030. Bus 2101 arrived here on our campus a couple of weeks ago, and we're happy to report it will be placed at revenue service next week. We now have two electric buses in service on our fleet. Seventeen more battery electric buses are scheduled for delivery before the end of the calendar year. We are also preparing our yard and facilities for this new technology, and we will begin to train all of our maintenance staff on the new technology. Next slide, please. The budget supports the department's mission to provide accessible, affordable, safe, and reliable bus service to the city and West Side. Over 75% of Big Blue Bus customers are low-income, and many of those customers work in the service and healthcare fields. Budget supports our efforts to restore weekday bus service on Routes 14, Bundy-Sentinel, 16, 20th Street, 44, SMC Expo Mid-City Station Bundy Campus Connector, and our new Express 7 on Pico beginning in August, as well as restore regular service on a number of corridors in December. Finally, in order to support the recommended changes, we are proposing one additional staff for parking operations pursuant to the recommendations in the Moss-Adams Parking Audit, and micro-reorganizations for the Big Blue Bus Maintenance and Operations Division to meet our goals to enhance customer experience and safety on our service. These changes will result in addition of one new staff member in maintenance that will be funded by the enterprise fund with some savings realized by the reorganization. With that, I'd like to thank every member of the Mobility Transportation team here in the new Department of Transportation, especially those who continued to provide critical service to our customers and the community during the last 15 months, which were very, very challenging. I want to especially acknowledge our motor coach operators, our operations supervisors, our mechanics, and our motor coach cleaners who made sure that our buses were ready and operated every day, and for the staff that was here to support them every day, and acknowledge those who worked remotely and supported city services remotely and did a really outstanding job doing that. I believe that concludes the department presentations, and Mayor, I guess I turn it back over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks to all the department heads, and thank you for the budget, for the reports you've given, and oh, except it's not my turn. I can tell, Gigi, it's okay, you go.
We have -- we actually have a little bit more to go. We're going to talk about our capital program.
That's CIP, right, yeah, exactly, but okay, go.
So Rick Balti is gonna --
Thank you.
Well, good evening again, Mayor and City Council. I'm pleased to present the proposed capital improvement program budget for fiscal year 2021-2022. The capital improvement program carries out a wide range of ongoing infrastructure maintenance activities, as well as one-time capital projects. The fiscal year 2021-22 CIP continues to prioritize available capital funds that maintain a clean and safe Santa Monica by protecting the city's existing capital investments and minimizing future maintenance and replacement costs. In addition, the city's Water Fund will use bond financing to advance capital improvement projects to provide long-term cost benefits for ratepayers by achieving water self-sufficiency and a more sustainable drought resilient water supply. Next slide, please. The CIP uses various resources, including general fund dollars, enterprise funds, grant funds, and capital financing to address the city's infrastructure needs. This chart in front of you illustrates some of the other major funding sources for the multifaceted capital improvement program. The total proposed CIP budget for fiscal year 2021-22 is $163.7 million. Now, the pie chart actually adds up to $171.5 million to account for 7.8 million in annual internal service contributions from various funds into the Vehicle Management and Computer Replacement Fund. As shown on the chart, the general fund portion represents $9.1 million of the budget, or about 5%. This reflects a $12 million decrease from fiscal year 2019-2020 levels due to the budget shortfall caused by COVID-19. The non-general fund portion represents $162.5 million of the budget, or 95%. Most significant pieces of the pie include the Water Fund with $107 million. This represents funding to support water projects identified in the Sustainable Water Master Plan, water and wastewater maintenance placement projects, and ongoing maintenance projects. Also, the Big Blue Bus Fund with $18.7 million, representing admin building upgrades, bus components, and bus replacements, subway communications, and other efforts. We also have $16.1 million, supported by grants, gas tax, local returns, and CDBG funds, about $7.2 million for vehicle replacements, and then the remainder of $13.4 million represents nine other funds. The next slide, please. The next few slides will list projects that are part of the CIP budget adjustments. And in the interest of time, I'm going to touch on a few of them. So the revised fiscal year 2021-22 CIP budget is $92.3 million higher than what was originally proposed to the City Council in June of 2020. While the goal is to minimize the number of new projects recommended in the second year of the biannual budget, there are several projects that should not be deferred and have been identified for funding. Of this $92.3 million proposed budget increase, only the Information and Security Measures project is supported by the general fund with about $200,000. The remaining proposed budget increase of $92.1 million is supported by non-general fund sources such as existing enterprise fund balance, grants, local returns, gas taxes, and the water bond. And so briefly touching on some of the projects on this slide, significant changes include $9.2 million from local returns, gas taxes, and grants for annual paving, sidewalk repair, streetlight modernization, and pier bridge replacements to help support the council-adopted community priority of clean and safe public spaces. Also, about half a million dollars in CBG funds would be leveraged to fund the Virginia Avenue Park Commercial Kitchen that would generate economic growth in local neighborhoods through small business incubation, entrepreneurial development, and job training. This would support the community priority of equitable and inclusive economic recovery. Next slide, please. The Airport Fund will support a feasibility study to consider a safe and dedicated pedestrian bicycle connection from Airport Avenue to Sunset Park Neighbors to the north. Mobility staff secured about $5.6 million in grants to support priority projects that design and construct safety improvements to the city infrastructure. This includes $4 million for Stewart and Pennsylvania safety enhancements, and almost a million dollars for Olympic Boulevard and 26th Street first and last mile improvements. In the Public Works Operating Budget presentation earlier, the increased pursuit of outside funding was mentioned as one of the key focus areas. These mobility projects are an example of successful funding where staffing gaps exist. Staff from Public Works and the Department of Transportation are actively collaborating on creative ways to deliver the projects with existing resources. And if necessary, we may have to return to the City Council at a later date for staffing requests to support these funded projects. In addition to supporting the community priority of clean and safe public spaces, these projects advance the Pedestrian Action Plan, Vision Zero Action Plan, Bike Action Plan, and the old framework priority of mobility and access. May I have the next slide, please? And then lastly, but certainly not the least, the proposed budget changes include a proposed $78 million increase in the Water Fund to advance future capital improvement projects to enhance resiliency and water use efficiency. Staff has identified issuance of a revenue bond for the water self-sufficiency projects as the financing package, and will bring this item to the City Council for approval in July of 2021. This will implement the Sustainable Water Master Plan and finance water self-sufficiency projects, including the Arcadia Water Treatment Plant expansion, advanced metering infrastructure, smart water meters, groundwater resiliency well improvements at Sharon Well Field, the Olympic Well Field restoration, the Olympic Wells equipping, and the Sustainable Water Infrastructure Project injection well. These projects will build or improve the infrastructure that delivers water service to the Santa Monica households and businesses, and will position the city to achieve water self-sufficiency and drought resilience. This ends my summary of the CIP budget adjustments. I'm happy answering questions at the conclusion of the staff presentation.
Next slide, please, Jennifer. The proposed budget also includes the results of a citywide fee study. The city charges a fee for services that benefit individual users rather than the broader community, and it's been the city's policy to achieve full cost recovery with its fees, with some exceptions, as approved by council. So those are, most notably, fees related to community recreation and social service benefits and the Community Services Department. The lower recovery level is based on a pricing policy adopted by council last June, along with the adopted budget revenues. Last June, armed with the knowledge that revenues were declining rapidly and that over the longer term, post-recovery, the city would continue to see an overall flattening of its revenue growth, the council directed staff to conduct the fee study with an eye towards optimizing cost recovery to the greatest extent possible, bearing in mind equity and inclusion of our most vulnerable residents. Our fiscal policy requires us to conduct this study every four or five years, and a fresh analysis means that we can incorporate new processes and services into our calculations and ensure that our taxpayers aren't paying for the cost of services that are benefiting individuals. It also allows us to gauge whether the fees that we charged in the past are still appropriate based on legislative or organizational changes that may have made the activity more or less expensive to administer. The fee study included a review of over 800 fees, most of them performed by general fund staff. 336 fees were increased due to a number of reasons, either changes in ordinances or processes that increased the work effort required to administer a service, a more comprehensive allocations of work effort, including supportive work conducted by internal service departments, and changes in workflows due to the restructuring, and in some cases, a shift away from large subsidies in order to increase cost recovery per council direction. 242 fees were decreased because the work effort required to perform the services is now less expensive due to process streamlining or more cost-efficient resources being used. Forty-nine fees were added, either because the city had not charged a fee for the service in the past, but that fee could help in incentivizing positive behaviors, or because of new laws or policies, or just for new services. And staff has provided a separate summary of the major changes that are noted in the fee study. It's a kind of an executive summary on top of the consultant-provided fee study, which is included in attachment fee. Next slide, please. And the final slide. Outside of the fee study process, staff has also conducted analysis on certain rates and fees that are not part of the city's master fee schedule. The staff is proposing to align the rate to ride the carousel with the market rate, but at the lower end of but at the lower end of the market rate range, $3 per ride. The current fee is now $1 for children 3 to 14 years old and $2 for adults. Children 3 years and under will be riding free with a paying adult. No changes, I'm sorry, new fees are added at the cemetery to allow for new types of spaces to be sold, and this is being done to help offset costs. And at the farmer's market, staff is proposing a very small 1% increase in fees to better align rates with the market and achieve a slightly higher level of cost recovery. The master fee and fine resolution and any separate resolutions related to the items on this particular slide will be presented to council for adoption along with the proposed budget on June 22nd. And one more slide. On June 22nd, as part of our next steps, staff will return to council for adoption of the budget. The staff report will include final changes, which are proposed changes to the budget document that was published on May 10th, either based on, the changes are either based on council discussion or to include some small technical adjustments such as salary equity changes that Human Resources has been analyzing. One of these changes will be the deletion of an equity adjustment for the director, the Department of Transportation Services, which that adjustment remains subject to a salary study. And also included in the staff report will be a series of budget, master, fee, and fine resolutions, as I just noted. And that concludes the city staff presentation, and we are here for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Gigi. Boy, what a lot of work I know this is for you. I really, I really appreciate, whoops, all of the work that everyone has done. And now, council, is our opportunity to ask questions, which I think in this case, we should be doing before we hear community input. Yes?
Mayor, this is Denise. I don't know if you got my text or not, but I was wondering if... Okay. So let me go ahead and make an announcement. The phone queues are getting ready to open now that we're questions, and the phone number is 310-312-8173. So we're now just opening the phone queue so people can go ahead and call. And for those people who are waiting on video calls, the video callers are in the meeting, please return because your opportunity will be coming up shortly. Thank you, Mayor. Go ahead.
Thank you. Let me repeat that phone number one time again. If you do wish to call in and, and comment on, on the budget, the number is 310-312-8173. That number is different than the number you used to use to call in. So let me repeat it again, 310-312-8173. That is the only way you will be speaking to us. But council, I'm open to suggestions, but I really believe that we should ask questions before community input unless somebody feels otherwise. So, yes, Councilmember McEwen.
Well, I think there's one question in particular that we really have to ask, and it's kind of a process question. The budget that was just presented to us did not yet respond to the barrage of emails that I think we've all gotten over the past week on issues like crests, playground access, crossing guards, aquatic fees, libraries, pickleball, a number of things like that, all of which would require an expansion of expenditures in certain areas that people rightly wrote to us about because they care about them. But there's something about this budget that's quite unusual. You may have noticed in a few years out, there's a couple of million dollars there to play with, but this year, it's a zero-sum game. We know how much revenue we've got, and it's just enough to cover what is in the budget now. So can staff help us understand the process whereby, as ideas are brought forward for things that the council and community think we should be doing, staff can counterbalance that with some idea of what we'd have to lose in other services? Possible? We can't do it.
So bottom line is, any, any additions to this, especially in the general fund to the budget, would require an equivalent amount to be taken away from something else. It would require a trade-off, a trade-off of the same amount because, as you said, we're at zero unbalance.
So, and by the way, I am so impressed that it only went from $224 to $226 million. A year ago this week, I was standing on Santa Monica Beach in front of the Sea Castle with a CNN news crew, trying to talk to the US Senate about sending money to Santa Monica, and I quoted that $224 million figure. For it to be $226 a year later, it's just phenomenal that we are so on the money about being out of money. And my follow-up question to you, Gigi, is, okay, so everything we decide to add means we have to take something away. Does staff have a list of quantified things we could take away? Suppose tonight council asks about something that would cost $6 million to do. Are you prepared to say, well, you could take $6 million from there? Because it seems to me we can't make informed decisions on what we want without also knowing what we'd have to give up to get it.
You know, unlike previous budget years before the pandemic, where we potentially had a little bit of space in our budget, we cut our budget, we cut our operating costs by 20%. We cut our budget so much last year that what remains are essential services. So we don't have, we've done everything that we could, whatever we could cut, we cut last year. And any kind of expansion that we are showing this year is very measured and very much focused on the priorities that you asked us to look at. We do not have a list of things to cut.
Okay, thank you.
So may I ask a follow-on to that? I assume staff is aware of the deluge of emails we receive, and there's a little bit of quantification about it, but basically, I would say over 1,000 emails concerning crest and playground access. Are any of those programs in this budget?
Mayor? I can think of that. With respect to the prior Crest Sports Program, it is not in the city's proposed budget. Last year, I made a commitment to the community that I would try very hard to find a solution. The school district has wanted to run sports in elementary schools, and that, that is something that they were actively interested in taking on. I did confirm with the superintendent yesterday that they do have a path forward to provide that sports for the age groups for which the city used to provide sports, working with a nonprofit provider. In the proposed budget, we have $100,000 each year as one-time funds. So those are not ongoing funds, they are seed funds, to try to make sure that we can support that program being available to all children in Santa Monica. So for Crest Sports, we do believe that it is not in the city budget. We do believe that the school district has a path forward, and the superintendent informed me yesterday that he does believe that sports will be up and running in the fall for parents and their children. So we're very pleased with that one. Playground access is much harder. It's, it's not in the current budget, and I'm happy to answer questions or to have Andy Egle from the Community Services Department and his team answer questions there, but effectively, that, that is not a program that we have anyone else who is offering or desiring to take over, and the school district is, is not asking to run that program themselves, nor are we aware of any other community substitute that is reaching out to, to engage there. Our attempts thus far to try to find a compromise program that, that might move forward and might fit the community need. So as we look at this budget, and as we look at the fact that Playground Access started, I believe, in 1989, what we're really interested in is what is, what is the need and the value that is so important to parents? And how can we try to provide that community value somehow across the Santa Monica community? At this point, we, I could turn to Andy, but it is not in our budget. I, I still believe that it is possible that, that people could come together, and there may be a solution at a minimum to allow children to play outside supervised, not by city staff and not by school district staff, but, but it would require some more work to get there.
And the other, so there was Crest Sports, but there are other Crest programs, other after... Pardon me? Lane, is that you? The other Crest program?
Let me see if I can help.
Oh, Andy!
Sure. So, so the budget includes Crest Club, Crest Camp, and Crest Richmond. So prior to the pandemic, as, as the city manager mentioned, we also had Crest Sports Program, and we have the Crest Playground Access. Those last two are not in the budget, but the other three programs do remain.
Thank you. Councilmember, okay, so, let me, Councilmember Davis, Councilmember Brock, Councilmember McCowen, do you still have a question? Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem McCowen, Councilmember DeLittori, Councilmember Para, and Kevin, I guess you and I will do cleanup on, right? So, yeah, let's start with Councilmember Davis.
Well, I, I really immediately just, I mean, I'm happy to ask all my questions now, but some of the emails we received suggested that if we were to increase the fees, or actually, right now Playground Access, or in the past it's been free, if we were to charge fees for Playground Access, could that help reinstate the program in a safe and manner? Has staff looked at all at the issue of whether or not we can increase fees to pay for that?
Andy, do you want to jump in on that?
Sure. So... But let me just, just frame it broadly, and then if we need details, we can go into that. So you're correct, in the, in the past, Playground Access was a free program, and we have seen some parents say they'd be willing to pay. I, I think the challenge that we're going to face in that regard is that the cost of the program, what was significant previously, and restoring it would be even more significant for a couple issues related to required ratios of students to staff, as well as the fact that we've lost a lot of the staff in total Crest Program, and so we'd need to restore some of those staff in order to provide the scheduling, supervision, support that the part-time staff who are sort of on, on the school grounds providing Playground Access support need. And so if, and I don't know if we've done the math, I'll, we can, we can check in, give us a few minutes, but those fees would likely be huge to pay for the city to provide that program.
Okay, thanks. So Mayor, would you like me to go ahead and ask all my other questions, or do we want to, I don't know if anyone else has questions about Playground Access?
Yeah, so it's 8 o'clock or so, 8:15. So the question is, council, it occurred to me that we should ask our questions first, but maybe that isn't the wisest course, and we should hear community comment, and then when we see where we are after that, we'll ask our questions, but we have retained the ability to continue this meeting to tomorrow night. I actually think that any discussion at 11 or midnight might be pretty difficult tonight. So does anyone want to talk about what their preference would be in terms of handling public comment? Councilmember Brock, and then Councilmember McCowen.
I hate to have the public stay online for hours and hours and hours. However, Mayor, since you brought up Playground Access, it might behoove us to ask one or two more questions and see if we can get to a, a middle point, and then go to the public and save all of our other questions, either for after public comment or for tomorrow night.
Yes, City Manager Dilg.
I simply want to note that it sometimes is helpful for you to ask your questions because it can clarify misconceptions that are out in the community as well. Sometimes the questions you have are the same questions that members of the public have.
So, Mayor Protem McCowen, your opinion?
Well, my preference would have been like Councilmember Brock to go to public comment now while it's still reasonably early. I, I hear what City Manager Dilg is saying now with regard to potentially the questions that we ask and clarify things for the public. I don't know, though, that that's actually going to make much of a difference. I, I think that, but, you know, I, I hear what you're saying. I just don't know that it'll have a huge impact on changing people's minds when they call in.
And I, I do feel that people who are on the line now are going to say what they're going to say regardless of what our questions are, although some might drop off as we're asking our questions. That said, when I look at my questions, some of them are really pretty granular, I think, having, you know, been through this before. Does anybody else have any questions that they think might answer questions of the public before we move to public comment? Councilmember McEwen, Councilmember Davis?
Yeah, I hate to just think that we're going to let people ask their pre-recorded questions without helping them to focus their input on helping us actually make better decisions for the community. I think it might be better to, we, we know there are four or five areas where we've gotten multiple emails about a particular issue. If we can clarify those a little bit before we go to the public comment, that might help people commenting on those issues redirect their thoughts a bit and actually help us solve the problem. That was why I asked about whether we have the ability, or staff has pre-thought what might be cut to make room for more expenditures, and they haven't. We don't have much room to move stuff around. But for instance, it might be good to find out from staff, why did staff not recommend complete reopening of our libraries? We've got a lot of emails about that, and if people hear the reasons, they might be able to respond to them instead of just say what they've already told us in emails. Likewise, with Crest and Playground Access, I think it's very useful that we just got out the information that we did. On pickleball courts, has staff thought about the one-time expenditure to convert the courts, and would that take away tennis courts that are being used by somebody else? If we can get some of that basic information on the issues we know have broad community concern out there before we take the public input, I think it'll make the public input more valuable, not only to us, but the people who've called in.
Well, so, so here's what I'm going to ask of you, council members, and Mayor Protem. I, I think that if we can keep these questions in this first round, and we will have other opportunity to, subject matters that we know were brought up in the correspondence we received and might answer some questions that are in that correspondence, or, or other issues relating to matters that appear to be of, of most public concern, and we will retain the ability to ask questions after we hear public comment. But if there's a particular issue of public concern that you think we should address here, then I encourage you to ask that question now. And Councilmember McEwen, I'm sorry, Councilmember McEwen, do you have such a question?
Okay, I'll give you a perfect example. I'll make it my question. Why aren't we just opening up all the libraries again?
Councilmember, I can answer that question. We obviously wish that we could open all of the libraries again. We do not have the funding. When you open the library, we both need to look at the, the library staff as well as the Public Works support to open the facilities. As a result, in our reopening plans, we have...
we have focused on trying to understand the library services that the community values and needs most with the limited funds that we have. And with that, let me turn to your library director, Patty Wong.
Thank you, Lane. So Councilmembers and Mayor, we went from 112 FTE to 47. We did put forth other proposals, but I think we had a negotiation with our city manager team and others that the library definitely is, it is reliant on not just Public Works, but ISD and a number of other departments fulfill all of the services that we have to offer. So Public Works is a big part of that. So when we think about reopening any facility, we actually think about the service that we're going to be able to provide and all of the backup services that enable us to provide that service. It does mean that with 47 full-time equivalent staff and a handful of library pages, we are only able to open in a smaller footprint right now. And we hope to restore services as we can when funding becomes available, but it has to, it may have to become available on a number of fronts, not just directly to libraries.
May I ask a follow-up to that? And that is this, when we chose which libraries to open again, can you talk about the process in making that decision?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. So the main library has the largest amount of collections. Also has the largest amount of resources of all of the branches. It's almost five or six to one. So partially, the main library is actually exactly where we should open first. PICO actually has the largest use of the branches, and it is in a community that is a particular great need to, and a priority for the city and for our community. So that was one of the other locations. I will tell you that Montana has also the, one of the largest readerships in the city. So as a result of, it's based on use, and it's based on activity, and it's based on the access to the collection. Now, we certainly hope with, if all goes well in this budget process, we will be able to open up Ocean Park with the Open Plus system for self-service. And that means that the grant enables community members to come in and keycard and come in as long as they take good care of the collection and the services they're in. Fairview is tough because we can't, we don't have enough staff to open everywhere.
And it's new, right? Fairview's new. I mean, it's, yes, I hear you.
Well, PICO is our newest location, but it is actually better suited for the kind of work that we're talking about. Fairview, although Fairview, we actually have a proposal or are thinking about it, if we could do it, if we could actually reimagine services there, looking at it from the perspective of Makerspace or Learning Lab. It doesn't have to be a traditional, every single site has the same services, and it could serve actually a lot of children in that area. But we have to find the funds to be able to do that. We were talking initially with the city manager's office, maybe a public-private partnership. We understand that the community wants all of its locations open. The goal for us, though, is to provide the services that the community needs right now, and that includes a lot of youth services with the staff that we've got. We would have to grow the staff. If we were to open up all of the locations, we would probably have to add another 27 positions.
And I just want to note, I say this every time we talk about it, but I was a library rat myself, and basically I had to travel 15 miles to get to the biggest library near me, that one maybe, you know, eight miles away. But to get to the main library, like our main library, you know, in where I grew up, the idea that we have five libraries in 8.3 square miles means that we do have a wealth of riches. And I do appreciate everything you do, Patty, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and now Kristin.
So staying on the library topic a little bit, and also I guess incorporate, so I'm just, I'm really concerned about sort of a persisting lack of options for our youth after school, especially in this next year when a lot of the parents are going to be, are going back to work at their workplaces by the fall, or they're not going to have as much flexibility as they did this COVID year. And so keeping that in mind, and staying on the library topic, I think that there will naturally be an influx of students looking for opportunities to go to libraries after school, especially if these other programs aren't being offered. And because of the exceptional youth programs we've previously provided at our libraries, I know, you know, the Montana Branch Library was my babysitter for a couple years at the end of high school and the first year of junior high. And that's not how it should be, but that's what was needed in my family dynamic. And so I'm just concerned that we aren't building up the library enough to meet one of its greatest support services, which is the Youth and Children Services. And so to the extent that we can, and this is sort of what Councilmember McCowen brought up, and we don't seem to have the ability to do that, but identify specifically what cuts we'd be willing to make to the proposed budget to transfer potentially to other areas. And City Manager Dilg, I completely hear you on the sort of downstream effects of adding more at the library, and then the fact that that increases ISD costs, increases Public Works costs, other things. But it would just be helpful to be able to see the numbers we're talking about, and maybe that's information that, you know, you guys will bring back to us after this study session. So I guess it's not really a question, but it kind of is a question. Like, what would we need to do to add additional youth services in the libraries beyond this one youth specialist that you're bringing back on?
Patty, do you want to answer that?
So one of the things that the staff kind of quickly, you know, worked up is that all of the staff that we would need to bring back would actually be focused on youth services. That's what the majority of the need happens to be right now. If we were, if we, if we were to add about 27 positions and some as-needed staff back to our ranks, we would be able to offer youth services at each of our locations with about an average of three to four days a week of service. Now, we would probably keep PICO and Main Library at five days, and know that one of the concerns that we have right now is safety for the public and actually, safety as we're coming in, as we're reopening. The 47 FTE that we have right now will only actually, unfortunately, have us open at this moment, Main Library, for five days a week, and to the, open to the public, but only the first floor because we don't have enough staff to cover the second floor. If we had a little bit of leverage of additional staffing, we would be able to offer that, and the focus would be on youth services. So we can certainly come back with a little bit more information. And Lane, I'll just, I'll stop right there.
Just really quick, was that 27 full-time or as-needed positions?
That was 27 full-time positions. And so that would, that would focus on youth services, but also reopening the branches.
And what would the price be? Patty, for youth services, is there a proposal you could give us that would be in between? That would lift up youth services somewhat without being 27 full-time? Is that something you have now?
We, I don't have it in my pocket, but I would be happy to get back to you.
Thank you. Phil.
Let's stick with libraries for a minute. So after reading all the proposals, I'm a little bit confused. What is, what are the hours for the Montana Library? Especially since the Montana Library acts so much as a community room in the evenings for Willmont Board, for Northeast Neighbors, for Noma. I mean, so many community groups use that as well. So let me ask, what are the hours scheduled right now for the Montana Branch that you're proposing? Because that's where I got confused between Fairview, Montana, et cetera.
Absolutely. Okay, absolutely. So for Montana, it's scheduled to open two days a week. And that would be initially curbside while we go into the reopening structure. So that would be, I believe it's Tuesday, 10:00 to 4:00, and a 2:00 to 8:00 Thursdays.
But that's nobody being able to enter the library, sit down, kids can't do their homework, and community groups can't meet.
For the next couple of months until we're able to, so the 47 FTE is actually kind of the bigger issue, is that we aren't able to share all of the staff equitably across the board.
And the Carnegie Library would be a new model, which would be self-service?
Correct.
Okay, and Fairview would stay closed?
At this moment, yes.
What's the Carnegie Library?
That's our Ocean Park branch.
Main Street, Ocean Park, the Carnegie. Patty, one more question on libraries. What would the staffing be to be able to reopen the Montana Branch?
Or?
For people to walk in for it to be open afternoons, evenings, weekends? Maybe it doesn't open till 1:00 PM so that kids, when they're getting out of school, and seniors can use that library?
That was the plan that I just shared a couple minutes ago that actually talked about the 27 FTE plus as-needed to open up. You just want to open up Montana.
I'm asking about Montana specifically because I'm trying to parse it a little bit more for you.
Generally, we have two, three, Erica, you can help me if you want to get on. I think it's six, five or six FTE?
So if we said you needed seven FTE, I'm going to paraphrase and give you some.
Phil, Phil, I'm sorry, I don't, you're getting pretty granular here, right?
I'm just trying to find out if we could get Montana open. So I think what I'm hearing is somewhere between five and seven FTE would help that library. Okay, I'll move on then. Thank you, Patty.
Okay, you're welcome.
May I combine a couple of your earlier questions? Councilmember McCowen asked earlier about trade-offs. And what I'm listening to from all of you is priorities. And I have heard childcare and youth after-school, safe places to be. I've heard the Montana Library, and I've heard youth, places in libraries for youth services and children to go. In terms of trade-offs and a list, we do not have a list because we cut everything we could find to try to create efficiencies within the city. There are increases that we are proposing, and I hate to do this, and I hate to do it early because I know I'll get in trouble with it and probably be run out of town. But you do have the Fire Department CRU, which is an addition that is half a million dollars over two years that is in the proposed budget. If you're asking me as your professional city manager in terms of trade-offs and what's there, that is something that is there that could be looked at because there, we do have other services addressing homelessness on the ground. But that's, it's priorities and trade-offs.
Right, and that is discussion, and the point, Councilmember Brock, that I'm trying to make here is that when we get into discussion, we will be able to have the sorts of conversation that you're trying to prompt here. But for right now, if we really want to move, excuse me, if we really want to move to community comment, right, to public comment, then you'll save "How about opening Montana?", which some of us might disagree with, right? And instead, ask the bigger questions that were posed in the correspondence.
So I'll go back to one more, one question in the Crest Playground Access, and I'll hold the rest of my questions till later. So Andy?
Hi, CM.
Hi, Andy. So my, so I was trying, because I know so many residents are concerned about this, my understanding that the restoration cost is approximately $585,380. Am I close on that?
That is if it were provided by the city. That's our estimate, yes.
Okay, so theoretically, a public-private partnership or a third party might be less expensive.
Likely, yes.
Okay. All right, I'll hold the rest till later. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brock. Councilmember Davis?
Yeah, I just want to ask a couple of questions that were raised in the correspondence. Many of the emails that addressed Crest and Playground Access also addressed crossing guards. Can staff explain what we did there with crossing guards and where we, how we landed where we did?
Good evening, Councilmember. Yes, it's my understanding that the crossing guard program was eliminated in its totality last year, and then it was, pre-pandemic. And then it was brought back with a far much reduced staff. We went from, I believe it was 42 crossing guards, all as needed, one lead crossing guard, and the supervisor. So the supervisor was retained. The lead and all of the crossing guards were eliminated. At a point, they were returned, but instead of the 42 guards, it was 20 guards and the supervisor. And that's what the current staffing is now.
And how did we land at the 20? Did we, I think I heard that we did some analysis about locations and where they were most needed, and that, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out how we landed where we did with the 20.
Yes, it's my understanding that there was an analysis done of the most heavily-used intersections adjacent to schools and the like, and that was what we utilized. It did not cover all of them, but it was the most highly utilized. I know that on that list that was submitted, or that a lot of the community submitted, there were some 445 pages, and some 80% covered that. Some of those intersections were not, do not intersect, the streets don't intersect. So we were able to eliminate some of those. Others that were referenced were referenced, but we hadn't, they weren't part of the program initially, i.e. the areas around the high school. So there are some additional areas that we could look at. There were four more that we proposed adding if there were to be any additions made.
Okay. And then the other thing that we got a fair number of emails about, this may be a Mr. Agel issue, I think, were swimming fees, fees for usage at the pool. And I think we had an increase in those. Can we just get a summary of what happened there and how we landed where we did, so people can hear that? Or maybe it's not Mr. Agel, maybe it's Ms. Echovale's views, I'm not sure, but swim fees.
Let me try, and then we can turn it over to Gigi, or I may ask Jeanette Gantz, who's our community recreation mayor. So as part of the fee study there, as Gigi mentioned, there are a variety of fees that are proposed to increase, and those include the fees at the swim center. And part of that is, more broadly, is an attempt to slightly increase our cost recovery for our various programs. So all of our, pretty much all of our recreational programs, we, the city subsidizes those programs. And we, part of the approach with the fees pursuant to council direction is to try to stay in line with neighboring jurisdictions and to not, you know, not push the fees so far that they become, make the programs inaccessible. So we've slightly increased the fees to improve the cost recovery. And part of what that does is it creates more room in the overall city budget to pursue your priorities. So if we were to say we don't want to increase the fees, that's like, like the new programs you're talking about. That means there's less revenue coming to the city, and we're going to have to cut a program elsewhere in order to not increase those fees.
Okay, let me just ask this follow-up question then. If we didn't are not what they were pre-COVID, because we've had cuts in the staffing there. If we didn't increase the fees, would that have an impact on the hours that the swim center would be available for use?
So, and I may ask Gigi to step in here, but the, although in each individual operating program, we identify revenues and expenditures, it's really the general fund that's subsidizing the difference there. And so it, you know, you could say, okay, don't increase the fees, and we're going to drop the hours that are available to the public, the swim center, but you could also say, we're going to take it from some other program.
Okay. So in any event, if we don't increase the fees, there will be some effect somewhere. Maybe we don't know where it is, but there'll be some negative impact somewhere where we'll have to reduce services that are being offered. Is that a fair statement?
That's correct.
Okay, great, thanks.
Councilmember Para?
Thank you. I actually have a follow-up to one of the questions that Glenn just asked. So I understand that staff is proposing a 10% increase for the swim center for this fiscal year, but they already increased 9% last fiscal year. So that's a total 19% increase. Is that correct?
So, so all the fees are a little bit different. So if you look at the fee schedule, most of the fee adjustments are made to make the fees sort of make sense. So, for example, the child swim fee goes from, I think it's $1.75 to $2, but there may be another fee that's at $5.45, and it goes to $6 in order to make it sort of clear that it's that place. So I think generally, putting all those together, generally, what that number is, is a broad representation of the adjustments in those fees.
Because the emails that we were getting, you know, when they likened it to, last year was a 9%, and then there was reduced usage at the pool, and so then the teams or what have you were, you know, rather than charging $15 an hour to be able to swim, they were getting charged $45 an hour to swim to make up for, you know, the closures and what have you. And so what we're hearing is that it's a hardship, you know, these continued increases. And so then that leads me to other questions in terms of, like, if you can help me understand SMC's responsibility to the pool, you know, do they maintain staff? Are they responsible for running any of this? Is there any, like, cost sharing or anything we can do with SMC so that we can, you know, keep the prices down and maybe potentially even increase hours to include a Sunday?
So SMC actually makes a payment to the city that supports the swim center's operation. It's part of the, part of the agreement that was created when the swim center was built on the SMC campus. And it provides them access, but they also pay the city for that access.
So is there any opportunity to negotiate something at this point, even though there's already an agreement in place? I mean, clearly, conditions are, you know, a lot different. So I'm just trying to think outside of the box and see how we can look at different ways, you know, to be able to open up these, these community resources, but also, you know, keep the fees down.
So we could, we could ask the question, I'm not sure what SMC's incentive would be to contribute more, unless we provided more access. Yeah, I mean, the challenge is potentially, it's if we provide more access, but then providing more access then means less access to the broader community. But we can, we can ask the question, certainly.
Okay, thank you. Did I go on, Mayor, or do you want me to wait?
Yes, but, but so what we're trying to do is touch on the issues. I heard that question without really getting into the next step of it, if that's clear. Okay, good. Thanks. So go.
No, so I just wanted just to ask a question about, you know, the Crest, because obviously, as a mother to three school-age kids, you know, that actively participates in after-school type of programs, because without them, I wouldn't have been able to, you know, work the hours that I need to work. And so, you know, I'm extremely concerned, like I'm sure you guys are. And so one of the things I just wanted to ask, would it be possible to put together a task group or a working group consisting of city staff, ETA, and the school district to kind of come together and maybe put together some type of a plan or proposal that, you know, might have contained some out-of-the-box thinking to make this a reality for next full year?
And are you asking that only about Crest? Are you asking about that, about Crest and Playground Access?
Both.
Yeah.
So, Councilmember, I think on Crest Sports, I think we do believe that the school district has a good path forward on Playground Access and the other Crest. Andy, you know, jump in if you're going to be upset with me for saying this. But, but I do think that, you know, we are definitely willing to sit down. We want to find solutions here. We know it's important to the community, and I think we're definitely willing to sit down and try to see if there's something that we can work out. And we know there's a lot of confusion over some of the information, and honestly, some of the obstacles to how the playgrounds work, and the adult staff ratio, and the salaries, and the supervision, and all of that. So, so I think we'd definitely be willing. But Andy, let me turn to you.
No, Elaine, I agree. I think that's a potential, a great opportunity to really focus on how do we address the need versus saying this is the exact program. And I think some of these things we're talking about, are there more efficient ways to provide that support? Could fees be part of it to at least cover some of those costs? And then, one thing that I think we should be honest about is there's likely still some, if we go forward, there may still need to be some city support. I'm not sure there's a way to come up with a program that completely relies on fees, without making it too difficult for access by our families.
So, but I do think this is a matter for discussion. I'm sorry, Elaine, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but I've had the same thought Christine did about this, that this should be collaborative, because we're talking about children, we're talking about the city, we're talking about the schools, right? And everybody has skin in the game, and we could build some collaboration, but I think we should save that for discussion.
Great. If I can just quickly, I do understand that's how the program was created in 1996, and we do appreciate, you know, the community activists who participated in creating that in the first place.
So, Chris, let me just say that I actually had them tabulate the emails, so that the subjects that were the biggest topics other than Crest and Playground Access were the Trades Intern Program. And I haven't heard a question about that. And frankly, I didn't know it had been cut. And maybe we can stave off some input about that. And the Pickleball Program, and what we'll be losing in Pickleball. And Councilmember Brock, I do see your hand.
So this is a somewhat general question for Andy. This is about the swim center and Sunday hours. My understanding, and I may be wrong, is that I was told that Sunday hours at the swim center might be revenue-neutral. And that, can I, an explanation of, because that's part of the swim center, people are talking about fees, and they're also talking about reduced hours. And on my count, the Sunday hours were a big deal. Anyone?
So based on our preliminary valuation, and we would obviously need our colleagues in the finance department to double-check and triple-check our numbers, it does look like we could provide some Sunday hours in a way that's cost-neutral to the, to the general fund. One caution I want to give you as you think about that is, it will, there'll be potentially some winners or losers. So right now, the swim center is not open to the general public. However, the nonprofit groups that run swim teams and swim organizations, they pay an extra fee to access the pool on Sundays. And so when we open it to the broader public, they will have less access.
So I guess, okay, that...
But I think from, to your point, from a budget perspective, our initial analysis says we could do it without an impact. And again, I'd want to make sure that our finance colleagues, they'll check our numbers.
So the public could swim, but they would have to join one of the swim groups in order to use the pool on Sundays?
Well, that's where we are today. So if we open it up to the public, so implemented what we hope is a cost-neutral approach, then our aquatics guidelines provide priority to city programs, which includes lap swimmers and swim teams, our city runs swim teams. So it's great space for that. It means less space for our nonprofit swim organizations.
One follow-up to provide a glimmer of hope, if possible, the brand-new Samo High Pool, when will that be completed? And will we have public swim hours in that?
So we are actively in discussions with the school district about having city hours at the new pool at Samo High. Likely, because the high school will use it during sort of the bulk of normal swim hours, likely what we'll be able to do is create time for the nonprofit swim groups to use it, you know, early in the morning, late at night. And that should remove a lot of the pressure that is on the swim center now, which I think you all know is, is real pressure further heightened by the fact that the health guidelines limit the number of swimmers.
Thank you. And I'll hold the rest of my questions then.
Thank you. And could I please get a response on the Trades Interns Program? Because we did get NICU Councilmember McCowen, as soon as, because I didn't see before I did this, the Trades Intern Program and the Pickleball Courts. And I don't know who answers those, but we did get a fair number of emails about it.
Mayor, on the Pickleball Courts, and somebody on my staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that would be a capital improvement project. That's the kind of thing right now that we would be looking for federal or state funding opportunities, which is not to say that, that I necessarily think we would be able to find one for exactly that project. But generally, we are looking to supplement our capital improvement projects. For example, the Memorial Park Plan is one that we would ultimately be looking for outside funding potentially in this environment for.
Thank you.
The Trades Interns, could I ask Rick or Susan to answer that question?
Yeah, I can try to help. So, through the Trades Interns, that there's no funding for it. The Public Works Department could absorb the positions, but we don't have the budget for it. And I know that there were discussions early on during the budget process on whether we could revive this. And I think Andy's PSD group was looking into obtaining funding for this, and then housing up to 10 Trades Interns in the Public Works Department, which we can. But we do need to identify funding for that.
And what's the cost? I'm just curious, what's the scale of it? Ballpark?
Give me a minute, I can find out from staff.
Okay, and I don't need to know that right now, but that's on my radar, that's all. Councilmember McCowen?
Yeah, so this is a perfect example of the challenge that we're going to face later in this conversation, is, you know, my understanding is that with the Trades Intern Program, at a minimum, it would be really great if we could keep at least 50% of that, the 10, going. It's also my understanding, and I'd like to confirm with staff, yeah, a good number, a good percentage of these folks go on to become employees with the City of Santa Monica.
So, Kristen, so, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem, the conversations like this are sort of follow-ons. I want to...
The question is, how many, what is the percentage of Trades Interns that go on to become city staff? And what would the cost for five Trades Interns be?
So, Mayor, if I may jump in here. So the approximate cost per Trades Intern is approximately $60,000 per FTE.
Thank you.
So in answer to Mayor Protem McCowen's question about five Trades Interns, you're talking about 300,000, 300,000, right?
300,000, yeah. Thank you. Are there any other sort of, yes, Councilmember DeLittore?
More of a broader question in terms of like equity. I was looking at the, in terms of the monies that's, that's being allocated by neighborhood. I don't know if we're breaking down, like, DDBG money to the Pico neighborhood, for example. I didn't see it that way. So I'm trying to figure out, when we talk about equity, how we, how we, how staff's sort of making those conclusions, you know? And so I, I just wanted to ask that question. But most specifically, for the neighborhood groups, the money that's being recommended for funding, is that match grant? I just want to clarify that that, the match is, it can be covered with, with, like, volunteer hours, like, it's in-kind, it could be in-kind match, is that correct? Or is that money, or is that money that has to be brought forward?
Councilmember DeLittore, this is Debbie. I can answer that question for you. A couple years ago, we did establish an hourly volunteer rate. And that is, I think, that with the matching grant program can be submitted as a reimbursable, as part of the matching grant program.
And how much is it per organization? Like, every neighborhood association would be allocated how much?
It's a $4,000 annual grant, and the receipts that are reconciled at the end of the year must match $4,000 in equivalent expenditures, or, as I mentioned earlier, hourly rates.
Okay, great. And then just lastly, I would just want staff to consider, when we come back, to consider equity in terms of the neighborhood groups. Like, for example, the Pico Neighborhood Association has greater needs, being that the demographic profile of the community is different than any other part of the city. So if we're talking about equity, it'd be important to consider that when we look at those allocations. Thank you.
Okay, so I am going to move us to Councilmember McKeown. You're muted. You're muted. Kevin, you're muted.
We've gotten down to a level of detail that may not be all that important.
I agree. I'm moving to public comment.
Right, but there's one more principle I want to touch on, that I think will be important for the public to understand. And that's the difference between ongoing expenditures and one-time expenditures. And we already heard that, for instance, the Pickleball issue is a one-time capital expenditure for which we may be able to pursue grant money. The other thing I heard about in the emails that would be a one-time expenditure was that apparently the transformer that serves the ice skating rink downtown in the winter blew out and hasn't been replaced. Now, that, that would be a one-time expenditure to allow the ice skating rink next winter. Is that on our radar in the budget?
We are aware of that request, and we agree with you, it would be a one-time expenditure.
Thank you.
And now, may we move to public comment, please? We will have loads of time to discuss all the granular detail. I have a lot of questions I want to ask, but may we move to public comment, and then we can go back to our questions. So how many speakers do we have?
We have 11, we have 11 video speakers, and then we have eight phone callers so far.
And I, I think, Madam Clerk, that in the interest of not having glitches in this, um, not having glitches in this, that we should leave the phone lines open more than five minutes past. The time we cut off our questions, like maybe 10 minutes past. And I'm going to announce the phone number again, how about that?
Okay.
Will that work? Uh, I, I just, we, we've had this before and I think that, I, I just don't want to get in that situation. We're so-and-so called and didn't get in, right? So, um, okay, wait, but, um, oh, um, look, oh, here it is. So if you want to call in and comment, the lines will be open for 10 more minutes after I stop speaking. 10 more minutes after I stop speaking, you can call into this meeting. And the number to call is different than the number we have used in previous meetings. The number to call for public comment is 310-312-8173. Excuse me, again, 310-312-8173. Thank you. So now, let's move, um, and I don't know if it's quicker, but whatever is quicker, uh, to alternate between phone and video or to do all the phone and all the video, but whichever is quicker is the one we should be doing.
So it looks like we'll be doing all the video first and then we'll be going into the phone callers. And, uh.
Thanks, Esther.
You're welcome.
Sabrina Fields, our first.
Welcome, Mrs. Basha, you're in the meeting, your time starts now.
Uh, good evening, Council, Mayor, again. Um, wanted to touch back on, uh, the original presentation. Hopefully you've had a chance. Uh, there was a budget piece to it, so I wanted to touch on that piece. Uh, wanted to state for the record that the current EIO model is simply not working. It's not representative of all of us. And I'm looking at the proposed budget, there's no direct budget or line item for equity, diversity, inclusion, programming or work other than $50,000 that's being funded to support EIOs. Uh, we are, we are asking and proposing that the city, uh, create an equity, diversity and inclusion office, that they do recruitments for talent that would advance the work, that they report directly to the city manager and city council, and that they work with a commission made up of community members and also advised by staff for the entire organization. We also recommend that you hire an expert in equity work to create the plan. We shouldn't have to wait another year or two to get that. It's a good time to assess where we are as an organization. This can be done for the support of a consultant. They'll start collecting the evidence, gather metrics, establish baselines, track progresses. How do you know that you're improving if we don't even have that basic information? How do you know you moved the needle on equity? Um, then they would be able to review, provide feedback on all the strategies, identify the additional goals from the working groups as appropriate. And then the program should also identi- identify any anticipated challenges, include a reporting and auditing component to make sure that we are on target. And then designate staff who will be principally charged administering that proposed plan, who has authority, who has the ability to, uh, get the program moving and not specifically just, um, say that, you know, we'll get back to it in a year or two. That is all I have, thank you, Council.
Thank you, Mrs. Barton.
Well, I, I have a question.
No, Mr., uh, Councilmember De La Torre, we are holding everything until the end. And any questions we have, we're following the same process we did before. I'm sorry.
No problem.
Thank you.
Welcome, Thomas Almaraz, you're in the meeting and your time starts now. Mr. Almaraz?
Hello?
Hello, you're in the meeting, your time starts now.
Oh, okay, thank you. Um, just give me a second. Sorry about that, I had my, my kid, I had to give her off to her grandma. Uh, anyways, so, uh, so I'm, uh, excuse me if I'm a little bit jittery. I'm not really like a public speaker or whatever, but, um, I'm, I'm a trade intern from the electrical shop. And I just kind of wanted to say that on behalf of the trade interns, I mean, it's a great program. Um, I was sad to hear it got cut. Um, before I got into this program, like just before I had found out my girlfriend was pregnant, um, I'm, you know, I was like 22, 20. Um, I was making like 12 bucks, I couldn't find a full-time job. And, um, the trade intern program like, like really helped us. And, uh, we got a full-time job. And, uh, they, you know, they put me to school, in school. And I was able to do that and now I'm getting like, the, I have the highest GPA I've ever had. Um, I have like 80%, 90% in my classes and like full-time class, full-time work, full-time dad. And it's just a great program, it's just, it's, it sucks that it's going. I mean, it's really changing people's lives, I feel like. Um, and I think that's more important than pickleball, no offense. Um, but I think that that is something that should be one of like the main priorities of Santa Monica, because it's really helping their citizens. I'm a Santa Monica native. Um, but yeah, so, um, I wrote a lot of notes here, but I'm not sure how much time I have, so.
And you're going to have to fill out your time.
Okay, yeah, no, I won't, I just, that was extremely long. Thank you, by the way, Sue, I saw that you were trying to really get us to speak and it kind of seems like we kept getting put on the back burner, but you, you kept fighting for us to speak. So thank you for that. Um, but, yeah, without cutting, without taking up too much time, I just want to say that, uh, I'm sorry?
Your time's over, thank you.
Thank you guys, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Welcome, Denise Martin, you're in the meeting and your time starts now.
Good evening, let me begin by asking, why are you misrepresenting the, staff report refers to there being, when city staff and the OR group, OIR group report for May 30th, that the number of residents is only that?
Ms. Barton, could you speak a little louder, please?
I said, the city wouldn't, you want me to start over?
Just speak louder.
City staff wouldn't be trying to overestimate the money coming in. Next, if you're up there to represent the will of the people, you're not doing that by count, continuing to give the people concerned over a million dollars in funding, not counting the homeless team. Then I have to ask if you add the 10 full-time and 20 full-time as needed, no employees at the cost of five sworn officers, leaving the city with only 215 sworn officers, what are you going to do when you have to hire more officers? You know crime has risen substantially in the city. I mean, it 840 residents for every police officer per two shifts a day, which is not counting the businesses, tourists or homeless people. Might make one question, your commitment to safety and security in the city. I also see your hiring practices are still out of whack. I mean, you really think it's coming, it's coming out of the, coming out of the pandemic? Is it really the right time to spend over two years upgrading the city's permit process? And of course, there are two new employees for the permit department, but I still don't see a qualified ADA person. So obviously you're planning on continuing making funds for the disabled while discriminating against them. And again, you're choosing to act like May 31st, 2020 didn't happen, which will be a financial detriment to the city. Due to the city's financial recovery is going to be further prolonged due to your allowing the rioting and looting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barton.
Welcome, Xena Joseph, you're in the meeting and your time starts now.
Thank you, um, I hope that you had a chance to read the Friends of Sunset Park board letter, which I sent on Sunday and resent this afternoon. Uh, we support the following staff recommendations. The senior park planner position to, uh, for ongoing planning to maintain current parks and envision and implement plans for parks of the future, which we hope will include the great park to replace the airport in 2029. Secondly, continue the fire department community response unit, which focuses on homelessness, mental health and substance and alcohol abuse. And third, fund services to address homelessness, including additional public safety officers to work downtown and in the parks, an additional help team plus two more Department of Mental Health coordinators and plus enhancing library services. Friends also requests the following. One, restore annual printing and mailing of membership appeal letters for the city's recognized neighborhood organizations, which cost about $41,000 a year ago for all neighborhoods and which some of us prefer to the matching grant. Second, make it possible to actually find the neighborhood organizations on the city's website. Third, restore funding to implement the Sunset Park Neighborhood Traffic Management Plan, especially since the council is adding Santa Monica Business Park and Ocean Park Boulevard to housing sites, as well as creating 100% affordable overlay zones with apartment buildings with a minimum of four stories in all residential districts. This will all generate more traffic. Uh, fourth, reopen the Fairview Branch Library sometime in my lifetime. Number five, restore more crossing guards. Number six, restore the playground access program or something similar. Number seven, increase code enforcement for 24-hour, 7 availability. And number eight, restore paper shredding and electronics recycling. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Joseph.
Welcome, Ben Neely, you're in the meeting and your time starts now.
Thank you. Hey, Councilmembers, my name is Ben Neely. I've been a Santa Monica resident for 10 years and I'm a member of the Board of Directors for Team Santa Monica. We are a nonprofit that has been teaching children to swim here in Santa Monica for over 65 years. And in the last year, we've been doing our best to continue our programming for families in the community, but the city's fee structure and policies around the Swim Center have made our mission increasingly unsustainable. In August of last year, our team swimmers were the only ones in the water at the Swim Center during off-hours, which provided job opportunities and additional income for city staff during the pandemic. In the entire West LA region, we were actually the only swim team in the water at all at that point. And we used the entire facility in the early morning and evening hours and represented the majority of incoming revenue for Swim Center operations. In December of last year, we had our lane space reduced by 37%. And that combined with the 9% fee increase at the time and other lane usage restrictions, which we understood, amounted to an effective cost increase of 900% for pool usage for our nonprofit. Now in June, we're facing the prospect of a further reduction in lane space, bringing us down to a 45% reduction from pre-COVID, as well as this new proposed 10% fee increase for youth aquatics permits. Uh, at Team Santa Monica, we have a strong social mission. We partnered with SMMUSD to provide swim lessons for hundreds of students during the school day. We award tens of thousands of scholarship and fee assistance to families in our communities every year. We've been the longest-running and the single-largest permit holder utilizing the Swim Center. And we're a vital source of revenue for facility operations. These proposed fee increases and space reduction gravely threatens our ability to continue to operate at the Swim Center. And I strongly urge the council to consider local families when they finalize these fees and reject proposal for increase in, uh, aquatics youth permits. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neely. And who, anybody who was, anybody who was on this call, anybody who's waiting to appear needs to mute.
I don't really care. I used to be.
Bill Walker. Now it looks like it's you. Let's see if I can mute you. It can't, good, thank you. Next caller?
Welcome, Karen Melick, you're in the meeting and your time starts now.
Good evening. I'm a longtime resident of Santa Monica and patron of the Swim Center. And my son participated in the CREST programs, which I support restoring. The proposed budget keeps the aquatics budget the same as it is now. That means that for the next two years, the Swim Center will only be open less than 50% of the previous hours, open five days a week and closed on Sundays. The aquatic fees are proposed to be increased by 10 to 26%, which is in addition to a 9% fee increase that was implemented last July 1st. So there was an increase last year and now they're asking for another increase. These increases for the local nonprofit permit groups who service youth, the disabled and seniors are extreme hardship for these small organizations that were significantly affected by the pandemic. Because of last year's increase and the additional staffing fee, the cost for youth groups has more than doubled. And there was no comparison data in the fee study for these permit groups. The fee also affects the ability of the Swim Center to be an equitable and inclusive service by making it available only to the wealthy. Please direct the city staff to eliminate the program fee increases, follow up on opening the Swim Center on Sundays where the revenue should more than offset the costs, and create a working group that includes community members to look at ways to reduce costs, be more efficient and find other funding sources such as grants and sponsorship to restore hours at the Swim Center without increasing costs to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Melick.
Welcome, Lori Brown, you're in the meeting, your time starts now.
Good evening, Councilmembers, thank you very much for the time. Um, and thank you all for listening to, um, some of our very active participants, um, in our community. Um, we had a meeting on May 20th and we unanimously recommended to approve the following items that are included in the proposed budget for the city council's strategic goals in addressing homelessness, clean and safe, and equitable and inclusive economic recovery. We agree with the restoration of one senior park planner, including evaluating improvements to Chess Park, which would address the homelessness, economic recovery, clean and safe. Ongoing funding for Reed Park ambassadors, um, restoration of the facility attendance for park-based meeting rooms, again, clean and safe. We'd also like to add, um, recommendations to include the following and to adopt in the budget to address, I'm not going to repeat it because I think you've heard it from the Swim Center. So, um, I think that, um, I'm going to leave that. And then, um, we need to address potentially funding to evaluate and plan a dog park at Reed Park. It would activate and provide a safe place and human companions for the north side of Santa Monica. Um, to ensure that there's an after-school sports program, I think you've got that covered, whatever that looks like, if it's a version of CREST. Um, we'd like you to start kickstarting Memorial Park expansion by demolishing the Colorado Yards and include with that to remove the temporary buildings at Clover Park to make more space for the available use and rental for the, um, uh, amphitheater. Uh, we're asking you to remove the employees in the temporary space so that we could rent out the amphitheater and bring in. We're also saying that please no more community recreation fees as they disproportionately impact our small businesses, the nonprofits and the low-income residents. And then we want to address pickleball because I know I'm running out of time. It's a fastest-growing sport in Santa Monica and around the world, including what's called pickleball tourism. I had the option.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
I just wanted to say one more thing, please, as we.
I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, everybody, we've been criticized for giving people special time.
I should be getting five minutes, but I won't be asking for that. Just want to say that they, we're looking to do a partnership with our residents to bring in and do GoFundMe so that we can get these things happening, that we don't want to rely on city staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, Gary Carter, you're in the meeting, your time starts now.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, Gary Carter, President of ASME Local 4819, representing Santa Monica's management staff. The pandemic that murdered Mr. Floyd still has no vaccine and has been viral for over 400 years. Uh, while the national discourse is focused on policing, I would like to direct due focus for Santa Monica on institutional racism, which thrives under the cloak of darkness and survives by protecting itself through institutional norms and rules. What's missing in the city's equity effort is the ability to hold ourselves accountable. Currently, what position has the experience, independence and authority to investigate equity issues raised by city staff or anyone in the community on behalf of the individual that raised the issue? That is vastly different from a defensive review on behalf of the city as an institution. As a labor leader and employee, I've found numerous personnel data points appalling, but time is limited, so here's two. Number one, managers and supervisors of color are allocated less staff and budget and paid less. And women of color in these positions receive the least resources in pay. There are zero, number two, there are zero black and Latino planners in the city since 2013 during a time where housing decisions will impact the next 50. 2013, during a time where housing decisions will impact the next 50 years. Tonight, we are asking council to consider three budget recommendations, two are free. One, join progressive cities by including city staff, race and ethnicity data by department and division in each department's budget. And in addition to department heads, include a photo of each division manager to highlight the city's diverse leadership to our community. Secondly, add one FTE, Inspector General of Equity, reporting directly to the city clerk, the bearer of all public records. Reporting to council through the clerk, DIG could diligently and independently move forward on all investigations and report out when the city falls short, whether knowingly or unknowingly, for the city to respond with action. Equity investigations could focus on all issues and concerns raised by the community or staff. We view this position as mitigating legal liabilities that would otherwise carry an unbudgeted cost to the city. Three, please direct city staff to invite local artists to install artwork displaying people of color positively in City Hall. Thank you, City Manager Dill, for the input. Let's build that momentum. Thank you.
Welcome, Alexandra Tower. You're in the meeting and your time starts now.
Hi, thank you. I'm a Santa Monica homeowner and currently serving as President of the Board of Directors for Team Santa Monica. We're a parent-owned and operated nonprofit organization with a mission to teach the children of our community water safety and competitive excellence in the sport of swimming and in life. TSM serves children from much of West LA, but more than 50% of our membership resides in Santa Monica, and we provide scholarships to families in need. For 65 years, we have partnered with the city to run our programs with a large presence at the Santa Monica Swim Center since it opened. I am deeply disappointed with the proposed 10% fee increase. The 9% fee increase on our program in January during the pandemic was both a surprise and a hardship, and this additional 10% increase would be crippling to TSM. Lane space is directly correlated to our ability to earn revenue, and since 2020, in August 2020, our lane allocation's been reduced by an astounding 45%, which you've already heard. This has had a negative impact on our financial stability. The current fee structure, coupled with the repeated lane allocation reductions, has made our ability to bring in crucial revenue exceedingly difficult. A further 10% increase would be an undue burden. We need to raise the number of swimmers per lane to match the safety guidelines from the LA County, and we hope to better collaborate with the city so that we can serve the children of our community for generations to come. Today's children are the future. On behalf of TSM Board of Directors and the member families, I request that we be allowed to recover so that we can continue to partner with you to serve our youth. I urge you to reject the fee increase for nonprofit youth programs and aquatics. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Tower.
Welcome, Patty Brown. You're in the meeting and your time starts now.
Thank you. Good evening, esteemed councilmembers and staff. My glasses on. And thank you so much to the department heads for such an interesting budget presentation tonight. I know that is so much work. Thank you to the city, oh, sorry, there you go, to the city of Santa Monica's commitment to our children and to our youth. As Vice President of Community Concerns and longtime resident, I'm writing again and again, and today I'm echoing our letters from PTA Council and indeed from the letters of a great many members of our community, asking you again to restore funding in the budget for the Supervised After-School Playground Access Program for students at the elementary school sites. Playground Access, which might best be called Extended Play, is a really low-cost, high-impact program previously offered at the Seven Schools for grades one through five that should be fully funded again by the city. I'm so sorry, my dog is barking. After-school, Monday through Friday. Children were provided on the weekdays with a safe and healthy place to study and to play, supervised by a caring adult or adults. The program truly fostered equity, which is a hot topic and an important Santa Monica value. Those 10 hours a week of Playground Access served a needed childcare function for working families and provided particularly important services to children who don't have their own backyards in which to run and exercise and to our at-risk children who would go home to an empty house. 1,860 children and their families participated in Playground Access in 2019 and 2020, and now that kids are back in school. We ask that you please restore funding for this essential program on a permanent basis as a community priority. The cost was not 500K, as was previously mentioned. In fact, the cost for staff at the school sites was only $144,000. And if you double that for best practice, that only comes to $288,000. I guess my time is up. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Welcome, Matt Lombard. You're in the meeting and your time starts now.
Thank you, councilmembers. My name is Matthew Lombard, and I am a Santa Monica resident since 2009. I have four children, three of them here in the Santa Monica Public School System and one's in high school at New Roads. And I want to let you know that all four of them, when I first moved here from the East Coast, I entered the, oldest one at the Growing Place here in Santa Monica, and I've served on the board in the Growing Place, and I've put each of my kids through the Growing Place. I want to thank you for the support the city gives to the Growing Place and let you know how critical the early childhood care is. You know, I didn't really understand the benefit and the value of it until I actually had children and I put them in the Growing Place and I saw the way they responded. And during the pandemic, you know, I've seen, I've had kids at the Growing Place, Smash, San Ohio, and New Roads, and I've seen how all the schools have dealt with the pandemic. And I have to say that the Growing Place did an incredible job. They've stayed open. Both my wife and I work jobs that are quite demanding, and having our five-year-old at the Growing Place and the work they provided for her and the foundation they gave to her during such difficult times was really valuable. So I want to thank the city for that, keep the funding coming for the Growing Place. They're a huge part of our city and our foundation for our youth, and I congratulate the city on partnering with them and with Santa Monica College as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lombard.
Welcome, Chris McLeod. You're in the meeting and your time starts now.
Thank you. Good evening, council and Mayor Hameritz and Pro Tem and city council and staff. My name is Chris McLeod. I am the Chair of the PICO Neighborhood Association, and we have written your letter supporting a number of staff recommendations and a combined neighborhood group recommendations. We would very much like the grant funding to be reestablished, and we definitely want the crossing guards to be restored. Everybody still remembers when the Four Horsemen of the Apocalypse, which was led by Glenn Davis, Terry O'Day, Ted Wintera, and Anahara, shut the entire program down. The kids should never have been challenged like that. So let's get that crossing guard program back on. Now, the finance program mentioned the Stewart Street Safety Enhancements. These are not enhancements. You're going to take away 60 parking spaces from Blue Collar workers. You're dismantling part of a neighborhood, and there's no equity in that. And you should stop what you're doing, and you should think before you act. The portion of Stewart Street you want to take, those two lanes away from, is too narrow to add more safety features that you're calling, because the Bike Action Plan had an amendment made to it in October of last year when everyone was in lockdown. I don't know how you can safely communicate with anybody. Also, nobody where I live has been contacted about these changes. You've held meetings at the other end, down at Colorado on Stewart Street, but you've not held meetings down this end of the Stewart Street. Anyway, that's it for me. Thank you for what you do. Good night.
Thanks, Mr. McLeod.
Welcome, Anthony Walla. You're in the meeting and your time starts now.
Hello, Mayor, city council members. Thank you for your time tonight, and I understand this budget is quite complex and you have a difficult job ahead of you. I have to ask the question, what kind of community do you value? I'm hearing our community's children are not being prioritized in this budget, and as you know, vitality of any community rests within its youth. We have less children in Santa Monica than we've had in the past, and it's declining. Our student enrollment in our public schools is on a rapid decline. You need to do something here, please, to make sure that more families don't exit our city. These are the kids that are going to run our city tomorrow. We hope that you're caring about them and prioritizing them over other things that clearly the staff hasn't found relevant to cut. Like, maybe some top staff needs to go. I know that's a hard thing for you to consider, but those paychecks are very, very hefty, and what one paycheck can do to 100 kids, lives matters. The fees, the increases in fees for these nonprofits that serve our kids, our libraries, it just sounds like everything that we have here that's public is shuttered or limited. And in such a progressive city, I really take issue with that. I think that you guys really have a tough job, and I do think that you have the ability to make some shifts in this budget where there was no room for you to play with, but you're going to have to do that. So I do hope that you extend your meeting into the next session and take a harder look at what you can do to make things work here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walla.
Welcome, Gabrielle Cohen. You're in the meeting and your time starts now. Ms. Cohen? You're in the meeting. Your time starts now. I'm going to move on to the next.
Thank you. Let me say this. Ms. Cohen, if you are waiting to speak, we just called upon you and you weren't here, so we'll call upon you a second time, but the next time we'll need you to be. Thank you.
Welcome, Liz Cruz. You're in the meeting and your time starts now. Ms. Cruz, you're in the meeting. Your time starts now.
Okay, great, thank you. Good evening, councilmembers. I am Liz Cruz, a native Santa Monicaan, a community advocate, mental health provider, and a member of FLU and formerly Virginia Avenue Park Advisory Board. I'm here today to strongly and sincerely urge you to support the Trades Intern Program at minimum by allowing five of the 10 positions to be kept, as this program is invaluable in our community, as you heard earlier from Thomas Amerez. This program has literally been a lifesaver and game changer for many of our Santa Monica youth, who have been found, who not only have found their career, but themselves and their well-being. The Trades Intern Program is not just about learning a trade, it is about allowing oneself to be challenged, disciplined, committed, tenacious, self-motivated, and above all, supported by the community and city staff to mentor our youth into long-lasting, successful careers. I have known many youth who have shared their journey in completing the program and share how extremely appreciative they are of having had the opportunity to transition into jobs within the city of Santa Monica, Culver City, UCLA, Southern California Edison, and many others. This pandemic has highlighted the racial health disparities across the country for communities of color. Santa Monica has always taken progressive strides towards supporting and promoting well-being. Here at this moment is an opportunity to promote the well-being of our youth, particularly our youth in the PICO neighborhood, who experience many stressors in their day-to-day living. By keeping the Trades Intern Program alive, we are letting our youth know that they are and will be, and there will be opportunities to obtain essential and quality training as an option post our high school experience. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Cruz.
Welcome, Anthony Fuller. You're in the meeting and your time starts now.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, sorry. Hi, Anthony Fuller, Principal of Olympic High School, here to talk in support of finding the funding for the Trades Internship Program. I think based on the conversations I've been listening to tonight, it answers a few questions. First, the Mayor Pro Tem asking if some of the people in the program get jobs after they are trained. That is actually true. You are correct. Also, many of the people in the Trades Internship Program are people who grew up in our town, in our city. And then speaking to Councilmember Dela Tores, discussion about the PICO neighborhood, in fact, many of the people in the program are from the PICO neighborhood. So there is always a discussion of equity, and yet this is a relatively small program, something that is actually doable, that shows a track record of success. Liz Cruz is absolutely correct. I've had many Olympic students that have gone through it, students that have gone into the military, come out unable to find meaningful employment, go into the Trades Internship Program and find that employment, most importantly, working for the community that they grew up in, which if Santa Monica wants to have people that are working in the community, that grew up in the community, this is one of the ways to get there. Not all people have access to elite education. It's important to remember that. Santa Monica is filled with people that have access to elite education. Probably all of you had access to elite education, and yet that's not the same for all the people who live in our community and many of the people that I serve. I highly encourage you to find somewhere the funding to keep the Trades Internship Program going. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller.
Welcome, Bob Adams. You're in the meeting and your time starts now.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor and City Council, my name is Bob Adams. I'm the business representative for the management employees of ASME Local 4819. And to Lane, best of luck to you. I bring to your attention a very important internal issue that came up during the previous contract negotiations, and we're still kind of talking about it now as we're talking about the budget, and that's the inequity in support staffing and the distribution of resources to managers of color and women here at City Hall. The data significantly popped out while we were preparing for negotiations, first, that the managers of color and women were, for the most part, significantly paid less than the white male counterparts in City Hall, and second, that there were less staff support and resources. Institutional racism does not have to be an intentional overt act, but it's incorporated on how we do business, how we are organized, and how we set our priorities. The racial equity statement that was provided just by the city in part says that it is committed to advancing racial equity and social diversity to improve the well-being of people who live, work, play, and do business in our city. We agree 100%, but we have to do this in our own house first, here in City Hall. Now, council sets the tone of governance of the city. We have to hold the standard. We are asking that city council mandate the city manager indirectly to view their policies, their budgets, their organizational structures, due to lens of diversity and racial equity. The managers of Local 4819 take pride in our work, and we want to make the city of Santa Monica better, not just in talk, but in deed. ASME is willing to work with you to achieve these goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Welcome, Kabir Chopra. You're in the meeting and your time starts now.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Kabir Chopra. I've been a Santa Monica resident since my junior year at UCLA in 2004. Over the past week, many residents, neighborhood groups, and members of the larger Santa Monica community have reached out to you all to discuss reopening the city's library branches. Before public comment, the council did request Director Wong and City Manager Dill to come back with a plan to bolster youth library services and reopen the Montana Branch Library. This is great news, and I hope the director can come back with a useful proposal with a useful proposal to bring back actual librarians to the city to serve our youth and community. Coming up with the plan to reopen the branches is forward-thinking. Councilmember McCowen pointed out, as schools fully open up and life gets back to normal, families are going to want the libraries back. My kids currently go to outdoor storytimes at the Kate Museum. It is hard to accept that my local library branch is closed when a private museum has an outdoor storytime for kids. It's clear life in Santa Monica won't go back to normal without the city government refunding, re-staffing, and reopening our beloved libraries. Giving us an experimental, state-funded, automated branch isn't going to cut it, and it is this city's own fault. Our community has done such a good job of establishing the library as a third place for so long, residents have come to expect high-quality library staff, resources, and services. Santa Monicans know their local branch is more than someone just to check out a book, and it's too late to put the genie back into the bottle. This is a testament to some of you and many of your predecessors recognizing the benefits of a gold-standard library system. Councilmember Brock Getze, he talked about the Montana Branch as a community meeting place and an academic sanctuary for kids. Just before public comment, a library is not an Amazon self-checkout aisle. It is a place for our community to come together, to teach our kids, to meet. These are important factors that aren't discussed in monetary policy, which is also important, I understand that. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Welcome, Wendy Dembel. You're in the meeting and your time starts now.
Hi, Mayor and council members. I just want to say that my daughter started swimming on TSM in November, and it was the most amazing outlet for my daughter. It was the only social interaction she had during this pandemic. And it was just an amazing thing for her. She started though, and she had the ability to swim, I think, four hours a week. And then, within the month, because of the COVID restrictions, it went down to an hour and a half a month. But I still was continuing to pay. And it was really a stretch. It was paying basically more than I would ever pay for myself to take any sort of exercise class for my daughter, but socially, it was just so important. And I really feel that Team Santa Monica and all the teams, the swim center, what they're doing and what the kids are doing at the open playgrounds is so important for the mental well-being of these children. And the pandemic has just been horrible, and it just seems so short-sighted to cancel Crest, to increase the fees of TSM. And it's not valuing, the kids need to be outside. They need to socialize with other kids. My daughter, who was just starting to walk with her friends to the Third Street Promenade, you know, just, I now have to call her friends' parents to make playdates. She's totally regressed because of this. She needs to be out with other kids, and she needs the structure. She's not there where she can do things on her own. So, thank you, really take into consideration these children's mental health. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
A lot of work.
Thank you, Ms. Dembo.
Okay, so I'm going back to Gabrielle Cohen.
Thank you.
Welcome, Gabrielle Cohen. You're in the meeting and your time starts now. Ms. Cohen? There, so let's move on to the next. Welcome, Tina Grossman. You're in the meeting and your time starts now.
Thank you. I'm calling in support of Zina Joseph's comments. And I would like to see all the libraries reopened, fully staffed, especially Fairview Library. Children will be going to the library soon and need that port. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grossman.
Welcome, Esther Hickman. You're in the meeting and your time starts now. Ms. Hickman, you're in the meeting, your time starts now.
Sorry about that. Thank you, good evening. This is Esther Hickman, and I'm a resident. Good evening, council members, Mayor. So I'm calling in today because I wanted to advocate on behalf of families. And I personally moved to Santa Monica for services such as the playground access that families rely on. And I use the swim services, and it would be a shame to see the Sunday hours cut. And I also want to advocate on behalf of reopening the libraries. I also wanted to speak on behalf of the money that's given to the district. The Nigara Report outlines a plan to address the achievement gap. Yet, the district has neglected recommendations and continues to widen the achievement gap. As a concerned parent, I ask that council requires accountability tied to the funds that will work to close the achievement gap as well as provide quality education for all of our students, rather than using public funds towards lawsuits against parents and wasting millions on buildings that they don't need. It would be good if there was an MOU or something that the district could tie to the city funds and perhaps be held accountable for city landmarks and sustainability. And the other point is that this year, students lost instruction for close to a year, and many of those students have suffered academically. So it would be really great if some money could be earmarked towards getting those students back on track. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hickman.
Okay, so it looks like we have one video caller that hasn't accepted the invite yet.
What's the name, Esther?
Michael Sud.
Michael Sud. If you are waiting to be a commenter in the City Council meeting, as a video commenter in the City Council meeting, you will see a raised hand next to your name. You have to accept. You have to raise your hand and accept the invitation to be in the meeting. So, Michael Sud, if you can hear me, you need to respond to our call receivers and accept the invitation to come into the meeting. Otherwise, you will not have an opportunity to speak. And so, let's move to the callers, and if he comes back, he does. And if he doesn't, he...
Welcome, Juan Matute. You're in the meeting and your time starts now.
Good evening, Council. My name is Juan Matute. I'm a resident and vice-chair of the Downtown Santa Monica Board of Directors, and I'm speaking on behalf of the organization. Downtown is the economic engine of the city, accounting for 14% of sales tax revenue and supporting citywide hotel taxes. ICE at Santa Monica brings over 50,000 skaters and 200,000 visitors to downtown each winter, and bringing shoppers downtown during the next holiday season is critical to the survival of our small-business retailers and restaurants that remain. As Councilmember McCowen mentioned, the electrical system to support ICE at Santa Monica exploded prior to the pandemic. We're requesting approximately $210,000 in one-time funds plus city permitting costs to cover the replacement equipment and installation. This is over 2.5% of our organization's budget, which is strained, like yours, on our efforts to support an equitable and inclusive economic recovery in the downtown and safety ambassadors to address homelessness and provide visitors and employees with a safe return to downtown Santa Monica. All priorities shared by this council. Our pilot deployment of safety ambassadors is showing great results, reducing the number of SMPD callouts. Safety ambassadors are licensed unarmed security guards who are trained in de-escalation and engagement from national best practices during the pandemic. This program can be adjusted to enhance the security of transit passengers in the downtown and on the Big Blue Bus system. Research has demonstrated that passenger safety is a critical factor for transit ridership, and this is best achieved without the use of armed personnel. These safety ambassadors are at an eligible expense for stimulus funds provided under the Federal Transit Administration's 5307 program, which has funded some of the $40 million in Big Blue Bus surplus that Director Ed King presented today. Please direct staff to consider some of these funds, or one-time funds for the safety ambassadors program that downtown and transit needs in a year of recovery. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and I've provided details to the city manager and finance director.
Thank you, Mr. Matute.
Welcome, David Watley. You're in the meeting and your time starts now.
Hi, thanks, Esther. So, listen, I just wanted to comment briefly on a couple things that I heard. I want to support the advocacy that was expressed for the Trades Program. I know we heard from the young man that was in the program, and we heard from Ms. Cruz, and we also heard from the principal of Olympic High School. And I have a cousin who actually graduated from Olympic, and, you know, he actually works in a trades profession currently. So I really think that's something, I think Councilmember McCowen had a great suggestion about finding a way to, you know, maybe have 50% of the program maintained and maybe look for ways to bring the rest back later down the line. Yeah, so I actually, though, the reason why I wanted to comment on this particular item has to do with, I'm very happy to hear that the Fire Department's Community Response Unit is being funded. I think the city manager mentioned that at today's meeting. And I think that, you know, it's great to try different things and see a different approach to how, you know, we're engaging folks that are having homeless, experiencing homelessness. I guess that's the way it's supposed to be worded. I think that that's a great idea, and I think that's a good direction to move in. And I wrote a letter about, to the executive directors of Salvation Army of Santa Monica and West Coast Care, and I copied the City Council on it. And I just want, I expressed that I think that their organizations, nonprofits that work in homelessness should work in collaboration with the city to sort of, you know, work towards the common goal of addressing homelessness. So that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watley.
Welcome, Maria Loyah. You're in the meeting and your time starts now.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm a longtime resident of Santa Monica. I'm also a PNA board member and the president of Latino Pima, a parent and student group at Samo High. I would like to ask you that you continue to fund our schools through SMMUSD with accountability measures to ensure that funds are used to provide quality education and to close the achievement gap. In particular, for English learners and special education students who have suffered during the shutdown of our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Loyah.
Hi, thank you.
Welcome, Gabrielle Cohen. Welcome, you're in the meeting.
Hi, thank you, this is Gabrielle. This is Gabrielle Cohen. I was unable to unmute on video, sorry about that. I am the Santa Monica Malibu Council of PTA's president. And in my position, I am able to speak with a lot of families and find out what their needs are, and lucky enough to be able to advocate for them. In the 30-plus years that I've lived in Santa Monica, Santa Monica has grown remarkably. And while there are many good things associated with that, some of the bad things that also go with that are more traffic, more crime, and parents feeling less secure about letting their children wander around and play. For these reasons, especially with more traffic, we would like to reinstate and add 14 more crossing guards to the 20 that we have allocated right now down from the 42. We have talked to parent leaders at all of the Santa Monica school sites, and these are the corners that they have deemed to be unsafe for their children. And of course, we want our children to have safe passage to and from school every day. We also want to advocate for our Playground Access Program. Playground Access has served over 1,800 kids in previous years. That number is approximately a quarter of all of the students in Santa Monica TK through 12. It serves a huge population, much more than many other programs that we have. In the past, it has been free. We have discussed possibly making it B-based for those who can afford it. But this is a program that allows children who would be wandering the streets or not having a place to play, a safe place to gather with their friends and get out their energy after school. This also allows parents who can't get to school right at 3 o'clock to know that their children are safe and being cared for while they make their way back from work, as well as allowing parents who volunteer at the schools to know that their children can stay and play while they are doing work for the schools.
Your time is up.
We really hope, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen.
Welcome, Michael Sud. You're in the meeting and your time starts now.
Great, and thank you so much. Sorry for the technical difficulties. My name is Mike Sud. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm the Trades Intern Program enrichment teacher, and I highly, firmly believe in this program. I've been doing it since, I don't know, 96. 26 years. The program's got this incredible capacity to better people's lives by giving them a second chance and sometimes a third chance, an opportunity to improve and stabilize, add structure, confidence, and pride to their skills development and their education. They all take classes while they're getting a full-time job. You've heard from students about that. But this is truly a life-changing opportunity. And it's, all the students are actually from Santa Monica. They either went to school, lived there both. They're all between 18 and 30 years old, and they all have some challenges, barriers to employment, you know, single parents, criminal records, alcohol-drug stuff, you know, going on. But they've all been trying to get their life together. And as far as I know, this is the only city-sponsored equivalent in the whole state. We've had students in 21 different job categories, you know, everything from, you know, the HVAC, the warehouse, the old warehouse, you know, the fleet, paint, graffiti, everything. And I do this Wednesday class, and we talk about everything from like, righty-tighty, lefty-loosey, to job safety, to tool identification, to, you know, how to measure things with a quarter, a sixteenth of an inch or something.
Your time is up.
And after the Wednesday class, I go out and, okay, well, I just urge you to support this program. It's a great program, and I hope you find a way to increase the budget for it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Sud.
Welcome, Ann Hoover. You're in the meeting and your time starts now.
Thank you, Council and city staff, for all you've done to see our community through the pandemic thus far. I speak tonight asking you, please, to restore Playground Access and Crest Sports, not a surprise, especially when written public comment indicates users would pay new or higher fees for these programs, assuming they can afford them. Restoration of those supports not just one, but two of your three community priorities. First, clean and safe open spaces. Kids have been in front of screens for over a year and are hungry for after-school play on our clean, safe school playgrounds, which are integral parts of our city's open space and park system. Second, equitable, inclusive economic recovery. City families across the economic spectrum are desperate for on-campus child rec... As one mother wrote to you, "Our children have lost so much already this past year. Please don't take away our Playground Access." You're adding or restoring at least 15 to 20 other staff positions, and starting salaries for those positions be reduced just slightly, maybe a quarter or a half a percent or so to help restore more at libraries, these key after-school programs, many of the other services the community is advocating so desperately for. And the school district does not have funding to replace the $900,043 person program, that's Crest Sports, and anything it might provide will be a diminished program and a major loss for our children. So, might you please at least find more than just the $100,000 per year in this budget for the next two years to ease the transition? The district should not be spending time and money on this and should be focused on bringing kids back to school. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, Ms. Hoover.
Welcome, Sabrina Fields. You're in the meeting, and your time starts now.
Awesome. Hi, everyone. I think you could see me. Yes, the floor, though. I'm here in support of the Trade Interns Program. My name is Sabrina Fields. I've earned many hats in the community, formerly the Youth Resource Team, YRT Program Manager, and now the Director of Housing at St. Joseph's Center. And I'm here to tell you why supporting the Trades Intern Program is so important. Earlier today, in the beginning of this meeting, there was a lot of conversation about equity, equity and inclusion. Supporting the Trades Interns Program is tangible equity and inclusion. And I want to tell you the story of Chris. Chris was a resident who lived in affordable housing, moved to the city of Santa Monica when I worked for Community Corp. Chris was the only person who showed up to my one program when Big Mike came, applied for the Trade Interns Program, got it. As a result of going to Trades Intern Program, he learned how to be an electrician, graduated the program, then found a job at UCLA. A year later, after graduating, his mom passed away. Because he was able to complete the Trades Intern Program, he was able to have a sustainable job to then keep his housing, which kept him here in the city of Santa Monica, which added to our city's diversity and further is part of what the inclusion looks like. None of that would be possible if he did not have that skill set that the Trade Intern Program provided him. And I can't tell you enough how important it is to just, what equity looks like in a tangible form. That's not just a one-off, but generational impact, which also allowed someone to stay in our community of people who it's been hard to keep here. So, I heard a question earlier that was, what are the racial equity impacts, just in general? And racial equity is not just the conversations that we have all the time. It also costs money. And this is what that tangible expense looks like. That is not just a one-off, but has long-term impact. So, I can't support that program enough or speak to it. And at minimum, just to echo what everyone's been saying, if we could at least have 50%, that at least allows the program to be able to build again versus cutting it completely and not having anything at all to build from. So, I'm here to support the Trades Intern Program, and if you support racial equity, you support the Trades Intern Program. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Fields.
Welcome, Mohammed. You're in the meeting, and your time starts now.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for taking the time to listen to us and value our opinion here. My name is Mohammed Kadambarshi. I'm the head coach and executive director of Team Santa Monica, a diverse Santa Monica-based nonprofit youth program with a mission to teach kids how to swim. We've also been able to put kids on national and Olympic teams over the years. As you've heard earlier, we've been around for the last 65 years, and we hope to be treated more as a partner than a program that rents space at the Santa Monica Swim Center. The city increased the fees by 9% for the 2020-2021 fiscal year to cover costs and close the budget shortfall. This increase occurred during COVID-19 pandemic, when the Santa Monica Swim Center was not even open. The Swim Center did not open for permit groups like TSM until late August, and when it opened, the number of swimmers in a lane were restricted. We were only allowed to rent space during non-operational hours, which means 6:00 a.m. or 7:00 p.m. in the evening, and we had to pay for staffing fees to be able to continue running a program. While the city may have implemented just a 9% increase in 2020, the effective increase to put the same number of swimmers in the water has cost TSM close to 900%. The existing fee structure, coupled with the continued reduction in lane space, has made our ability to bring in revenue for our small businesses to survive, has been extremely difficult. It is particularly difficult when the number of swimmers per lane still remains restricted, and the guidelines do not fall in line with that of CDC, LA County, and USA Swimming. The children of our community are the future. On behalf of my swimmers and my families, I urge you to reject the fee increase for permit groups and allow for more opportunities through partnership, which was visited last year around this time, to help grow the aquatic programs offered in Santa Monica. Thank you again for your time, and have a great evening.
Thank you.
Denise and Akima, do we have any more callers? I don't see any more in the queue. Looks like we're done.
She was our last caller.
Okay. So, we are closing public comment now, and Council, the matter is before us, and it is 10:06. So, I'm guessing everyone has more questions. I'm guessing that people have a lot of comments. So, would you like to go longer tonight and then continue tomorrow? Would you like to continue tomorrow with a fresh start? Does anybody have an idea? Everybody's going yes. Yes, Councilmember De La Torre.
I think we should do like at least one round of, you know, like, maybe like five minutes each for every council member to just lay out all the questions without too much debate or discussion, so that staff has the opportunity to reflect on those questions and then come back tomorrow, and then staff has more time to answer those questions, and we might have a more fruitful discussion then. That's one suggestion.
Well, I thought of that, too. If there's something that hasn't been raised in our prior questions, I have a couple of those, not a lot. I don't know if anybody else has any questions that weren't raised without getting into discussion about it. So, for instance, and I'll just give you an example, my question was about grants, because I think that there are grants available for some of these programs, and I wonder, and I'm not expecting an answer tonight, but what we can do to beef up our grant applications and do the kind of proactive grant funding and grant acquisition, such as the Big Blue Bus, because I think they do a great job in that. Yes. City Manager.
Mayor, I can quickly answer that question. The proposed budget proposes a small increase in our, the Ferguson Group federal lobbyist contract. The reason for that is precisely what you state. We think for a very small amount of one-time money, we may be able to find great grant opportunities. We also are trying to streamline that process, drawing on the experience of the Big Blue Bus and some of our more successful departments, between Stephanie Benegas, Christopher Smith, and Anuj Gupta. So, that's an answer on the process question.
Thank you, but I've seen that work successfully. It did in my own law firm. So, that's the kind of thing I'm talking about. Now, that was easy to answer. I didn't think it would be so easy. Anybody else have questions? Yes, Councilmember McCowen.
I had a question related to the Bergamot tenants that are part of the Worth Group tenant specifically. I just wanted to clarify that these amounts, these one-time funds for nonprofit tenants, peer tenants, and other for-profit tenants will include that they receive at least the six-month abatement. I know some of the nonprofits are getting nine. I wanted to double-check what exactly that ratio was and then also confirm the repayment schedule. Let me turn to Jennifer Taylor on that. Great, thanks.
Yes, good evening. So, we'll be coming back to you on July 22nd with all the details of the abatement program. But as we were directed by Council last month, we're pricing out nine months for the nonprofit city tenants, six months for the pier and ocean tenants, and then three versus six months for the Bergamot, the airport artists, and other for-profit tenants. So, we'll have the lump sum you have now includes kind of that full capacity of the nine, six, and six. In terms of the repayment period, the deferred rent repayment is June 30th of 2022. The only challenge we'll have with Bergamot is that they're not directly our city tenants. The Worth Group is our tenant, and then the Bergamot galleries are the worst tenants. And so, we just need to work with the Worth Group to exercise their final option, to extend their rent, the lease through December 31st of 2022, so that they can extend the repayment program for the galleries to abide by the, through the next fiscal year, basically.
Okay, so I guess my question for if we're coming back tomorrow, Jennifer, would just be, if we could find out what increase, if any, there would be to this, these one-time funds to allow for a six-month abatement of those particular tenants? Because I heard you say three, and I'm just wondering what a six-month would look like.
Sure. I have those numbers now, but I can wait till tomorrow night if you prefer.
You can share them now, sorry. I know we were focused on three months, so I didn't know that you had the six-month version, so.
Yeah, so, we priced out, so if we're doing an additional three months, so six months total for Bergamot, that would add an additional about $300,000. So, it's about $3,000 per three-month increments. Granted, that's based on that this would be, the abatements would be for tenants that can demonstrate financial hardship of at least 25% loss of revenue. So, potentially, not everyone will apply. They might not have the hardship demonstrations or might not want to open their books.
But the $300,000 is based on your best estimate of the tenants that have suffered a financial hardship?
Correct. And that, so that would cover a full six-month abatement for Bergamot.
Great, thank you.
So, I have a follow on Jennifer. Don't go, because I saw that the shuttered venue program apparently hasn't funded or they haven't handed out any grants yet. Is that right?
So, we are working closely with the Small Business Development Center, our LA regional partners, and the shuttered venues grant is part of the federal SBA funds. I understand that it was delayed and rolling out. They were having some glitches. I do believe they are accepting the applications. I'm not sure if they've awarded them yet. There's also the restaurant grants that are at federal level, and we're tracking some additional state grant programs as well, so.
So, yeah, the shuttered venue program was in the paper yesterday. Applications are in, but funding has been delayed, I think some kind of federal government glitch.
Yeah, so, that's my understanding, too. We're still waiting to hear which of our tenants have been. I know many have applied, and we're rooting for them all, and we're waiting to see who's been successful.
I'm rooting for them, too. Thank you. Yes, Councilmember McCowen, and then Councilmember Brock, and who else wants to go? Yeah, Councilmember Davis, then Councilmember Para, and then finally, Councilmember De La Torre.
One question about the Swim Center. Why is it that year after year in our budget hearings, the City Council is repeatedly asked to micromanage lane assignments and hours at the Swim Center? Have we let that become too much of a regional resource? Is there some way we can refocus that on Santa Monica College and Santa Monica residents and families, so there's not such intense competition for limited lane time?
Andy, are you still with us?
I am. So, the Swim Center operates pursuant to Council adopted guidelines. That said, in the last year, the Recreation and Parks Commission started a subcommittee specifically related to the Swim Center and dealing with the pool allocation guideline. So, we anticipate in the coming months that they will be potentially recommending changes to those pool allocation guidelines, and those would ultimately come before the Recreation and Parks Commission for recommendation and come to you for consideration. And maybe to your first question, I should also add that as part of the pandemic, we had to make some limitations on lane access. And one of the things we quickly discovered is that our lane reservation system, that we needed to give residents an extra day to make reservations before it was available to anyone else. And I'll ask Jeanette Gant to join me if I'm saying this wrong, but I think what we primarily found is that by adding that extra day, that residents are able to, well, let's say this, residents are completely filling up the, those reservations, and we're not seeing non-residents coming through.
Hello, here's the full screen.
So, Bill Walker, if you can hear me, please mute yourself. Can you see him? I mean, is it just me, maybe? Should I mute him, do you think? I think I can.
Yeah, seems like in the chief's office.
I think they're partying over there. So, okay, so, who was next? I'm sorry. I'm working on finding Bill Walker in the list. Councilmember Brock.
So, I have a number of questions. I wonder if it'd be good just to ask the questions and have staff respond to them later, because I have a number of questions.
Well, that was what I contemplated. I thought.
Okay, I'll just do the scope of questions that I have, and then I'm not going to ask for answers right now. We have a huge number of pickleball players in the city, and I was out there last Saturday. Four courts were overfull. We need to find, this came up the last year I was on the Recreation and Parks Commission. How do we find courts? Either two tennis courts, two batman courts, which I understand are unused at Ocean View Park, or four tennis courts in the city, that at a minimal place, we can do some quick restriping, not resurfacing, to make sure that the tennis courts are used? And how much would that actually cost the city? And would the city accept funds from the Pickleball Association if they could either cosponsor it or pay for the change if we could find the space? That's one question. The ice skating ring electrical fix, I think that's crucial, and I want to put bid in, I think it's $206,000. But whatever it is, if that comes from public works, I'd like to find out how much it is and how we fund it. The Trade Intern Program, what is the actual cost of that? Because I didn't really know about the program. I'm so impressed after hearing about it tonight. So, I'd really love to know what does it cost and how do we solve that? The carousel, it confused me earlier, because I heard the rate increase was to $3, so 33%. But then there was no youth rate. If you were under three, it sounded like you were free. But if you were three to 12 or three to 13, you still had to pay the $3. I may be mistaken there, but that's a question for me. Parking structure three, what is the annual revenue and what, and will it, do we believe it would be offset by addition? which I understand are unused at Ocean View Park, or four tennis courts in the city that at a minimal place, we can do some quick restriping, not resurfacing, to make sure that the tennis courts are used? And how much would that actually cost the city? And would the city accept funds from the Pickleball Association if they could either cosponsor it or pay for the change if we could find the space? That's one question. The ice skating ring electrical fix. I think that's crucial, and I want to put bid in, I think it's $206,000. But whatever it is, if that comes from Public Works, I'd like to find out how much it is and how we fund it. The trade intern program. What is the actual cost of that? Because I didn't really know about the program. I'm so impressed after hearing about it tonight. So I'd really love to know, what does it cost? And how do we solve that? The carousel. It confused me earlier, because I heard the rate increase was to $3, so 33%. But then there was no youth rate. If you were under three, it sounded like you were free. But if you were three to 12 or three to 13, you still had to pay the $3. I may be mistaken there, but that's a question for me. Parking structure three. What is the annual revenue? And what, and will it, do we believe it would be offset by additional revenue in other garages? In other words, would the loss of the garage end up being revenue-neutral? I already mentioned the Montana Library. It's, we have a backlog, and this is unfortunate. We have a backlog of graffiti in our city. We have two graffiti specialists in the city. I understand one of them is out temporarily. But what would the cost be? This is for Public Works. What would the cost be of hiring, or actually rehiring, a graffiti specialist? Because I know it is a big issue. This is a sad issue, and this would be for Public Works. Fourth Street, we've had a number of people try to jump or jump. It's the only bridge in our city that doesn't have a high fence to stop people who can't find a place to park in downtown. No, I'm kidding about that. The serious part is, how do we raise the fence there to make sure that we protect people from their own dark thoughts? Another question would be, I know we're offering to go back to monthly street, to weekly street cleaning, which I know everyone wants in the city. But my question is, LA just went to bi-weekly. If we did bi-weekly instead of monthly, how much savings would there be in that? And then I have three more questions, I think, and then I'm done. The after-school playground access program. We're concerned about trying to fund it, but we give the Santa Monica Malibu School District, or the Santa Monica portion, almost $11 million a year. Is there a way to specify that the playground, after-school playground access funds comes out of the joint use agreement that we have with the school district? And we specify that whatever those funds are be directed so that the playground access opens? Following up on that, my question would be, is the Crest educational program of tremendous value? If there was a choice of playground access or the extra Crest program, which would residents choose? Crossing guards, it seems like we need to restore some, but we may have had overkill in the past. So it looks like maybe option two is the best, but I'd like to hear from the police department and the school district, what would keep our children safe? And then I already asked the question about the swim center Sunday hours. And part of that would be, I'm concerned, as Councilmember McKeon said, because we've been going through this, I can remember going through this from 2013 on at Recreation and Parks Commission every year. How do we make sure that, and I know Team Santa Monica and the other teams are going to be upset that I say this, but I'm really concerned that residents who aren't part of a special program have access to our swimming pool? And, because I know so many people use that. And then my last question, which is for Santa Monica PD. I believe that we have to make sure, and the other council members may disagree when it comes time to that. But my question is, I believe that we said that public safety and the reduction of homelessness was our top two priorities for the year. But I don't see a lot in there to help. So I want to know, if we added one LA County Department of Mental Health person embedded in the city, would that be of value? And the cost, I think, is about $200,000. But I'd like to know that. I'd like to know if SMPD, we have no HLP team members in the city on the weekend, and in fact, no homeless services open in the city on the weekends or at night? Our homeless situation is 24/7. So my question is, even if we added either two or four SMPD HLP members, not a team, but two or four, would that be helpful in making sure that we had people out there on the weekends and nights to help reduce the homeless problem and make sure that the people in need got help? And lastly, the last thing, when I talk to police, this is my last question, honest. My last question is, even though they're unarmed and civilians, the public safety officers seem to be of benefit in helping in our parks and helping in downtown. We need to see more of them. So I'm going to request that we find out from the chief, if we added six PSOs, six public safety officers to the city, would there be a benefit for the residents and businesses of our city? Thank you.
Who was Councilmember McCowen? I know I did this once before, but I can't remember.
A follow-up to Phil's last, Councilmember Brock's last question. I just want to clarify. Councilmember Brock, are you asking the police department and staff to come back and let you know if it would be better for our public safety if we had six additional PSO FTEs? Or are you proposing that they get you the cost for what that would be, so that you can try to find another area where we might cut in that?
I have areas that I think we can try and adjust or amend, but my point is, yes to both of your questions.
Are you want an amount for that many new positions?
Right, I think I have an amount, but I want to make sure on top of that, that those extra positions would help our residents, and on top of that, help the people who are unhoused in our streets get services. I am just, I mean, I would go, we'll wait till discussion for me to go into that, but that's my question, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember, I think there are a number of these questions that we could answer for you now. Mayor, do you want us to tick through those? Or do you want to save the answers for tomorrow?
Well, I, so I think that they'll provoke more discussion despite the fact that we could get the answers now. So, and we still have three, four council members left to go. That's sort of my concern. So you tell me, I mean, but I think if we go through all the questions and all the answers, we could be here until midnight, which is okay with me, but everybody else is looking unenthusiastic. So I think let's keep the questions, and we'll roll back on all these issues, which are very overlapping from everyone tomorrow. So I forget who's next. Sorry.
Councilmember Davis.
Good, Councilmember Davis.
So my first question is going to be, all these things that we're all putting on our wish list, what's it going to cost? Because these are, anytime you talk about adding people or building things, it gets really expensive really fast. And, you know, my concern is that, as I think Councilmember McKeon said, we're playing a zero-sum game. So every person we add here means we lose a person there. So I just want staff to know that I want to know what the cost of all of this is, because I think in order to budget responsibly, we're going to have to figure out what we're going to cost. And I know people seem to have made some suggestions about where they think we ought to cut. And I have two responses to that, which is one, I think it's not as much money as they think. And two, we start to cut that, and other people get mad. But I just want to leave that with staff. And I'm going to make some suggestions, maybe, too. So I want to know what all of us together, what all of us together costs. But I do want to start out with something that I just feel compelled to respond to Councilmember Brock about, which is trying to earmark some of the money that we give to the school district. That money goes to education. And I think, and it pays for teachers, and it pays for supplies, and it pays for educational things. And I think taking some of that money away, and we can find out what it would cost, and that's going to be my next question, taking some of that money away from education to move to playground access, one, I think is a bad idea. And two, I think sets a dangerous precedent, that we have always, over the years, that we have given this money to the school district. We've done so with the understanding that we entrust the school district to spend it. Well, they are a separately-elected body. And if we're going to start doing earmarks about spend it here, I'm sure every council member has some favorite program they'd like to tell the district how to spend the money. And I think that's just dangerous to start doing. So I just want to immediately state my objection, earmarking any of the money that we give the district. And that's a discussion we can have later. I do want to have a couple of questions. First of all, I want to support Mr. Matute's suggestion that we look at the 5307 program to provide safety ambassadors. Even though those would be designated sort of transit safety ambassadors, that means, for example, they could patrol bus stops in the downtown area and provide other services other than just sort of patrolling bus stops. Maybe even they'll occasionally get on a bus. I know I've had concerns from residents about people riding the bus unmasked, for example, and maybe they could help encourage people to ride the bus. But if there's already money available in a program that's residing over at the Big Blue Bus, we wouldn't have to rob Peter to pay Paul for that. So I think I want to look at that for sure. I do want to mention on the Bergamot, I believe it was Mayor Portem McCowen who, you know, elicited the answer from Ms. Taylor that it would be $300,000 if we subsidized the rents for Bergamot. But I was a little concerned, and so the question I'm having, she says not all will qualify. And, you know, I get a little nervous about getting into the books of private enterprise, especially the way the galleries operate. So I just want to make sure that, you know, we're not putting unreasonable restrictions on who might be eligible for rent abatements, because there may be a couple out there, and I don't mean to insult anyone by calling to this, but there are well-funded galleries because there are rich people who like art, and they want to run a gallery. But the majority of the galleries who are left at Bergamot, this is their bread and butter. They're not, they're not, they don't have sugar daddies, for lack of a better term. But if you get into their books, you may show, for example, that they participated in some fundraising. And I don't want that to work against them. But I just want to be careful that we don't overly restrict, if we are going to fund six months of rent abatement for Bergamot, which I support, that we're overly restrictive in who can get that. The mayor and someone else, I guess, raised the issue about grant funding. I know we've been successful in getting Safe Roots to School money, and I'm wondering if there's money there that might help us for bridging crossing guards at a few more spots? I doubt we can get all 24, however many it is that people want, but maybe there's some money there that we can direct to crossing guards until we get into economic recovery two, three years down the road. In terms of the trade intern program, that's obviously a valuable program. Again, I'm wondering if that's one that might be something we could get some grants for. I do respect the notion that it's better to try and keep it, excuse me, even at a reduced size, rather than eliminating it completely? Because once things get eliminated, they have a tendency not to come back. So I think that's one that that makes sense to try and figure out, is there some way to fund that? I also, I think both Councilmember McKeon and Councilmember Brock mentioned the ice rink. I do think sometimes you have to spend money to make money, and it seems to me that not having the ice rink would be a detriment to downtown. I think people are anxious to come downtown for the holidays, and it might actually pay for itself, excuse me, in terms of real sales tax and other things. So again, I think we just need to think about some of these things like that. I guess two things. One of the speakers, I think Ms. Danawala, mentioned that we're not prioritizing kids. This city spends literally millions of dollars every year on programs for youth. The fact that playground access was deactivated when the schools were closed, and when you couldn't go out and play openly because of public health restrictions, doesn't show that we're not committed to our kids. There is no city in California that supports its kids and its schools the way this city does. We have put almost $300 million unrestricted money into our school district. And we also run a number of programs at Virginia Avenue Park, at our libraries, even during the pandemic, that serve our youth. So I really want to disabuse people of this notion that somehow our inability to figure out a way to fund playground access suggests that we are in any way abandoning our commitment to youth. I think it's, we haven't really mentioned it this evening, but yes, the program wasn't very expensive to run, but we've been put on notice that it was also a program that had a lot of inherent risks. And so the cost of running it and able to mitigate or eliminate those risks is what causes the cost of the program to go up substantially. It may be more than just doubling the amount of supervision in the program. There may be, we need to triple it. We may need to offer it in a different structure, so it starts to get expensive. I'm all for looking for a way to have some sort of after-school informal, allowing kids to run around on school district property. I think that's great. But we have to make sure that we do it in a manner that the children are protected. And we've been told that in its current form, we may not be able to provide the level of protection that we need to. So if we're going to do, I think someone mentioned a working group, which would be fine. I think one piece of that working group is they would need to hear from the Presidient Group about what an appropriate after-school program would look like, so we know that what we create out of that working group would in fact be safe. We're going to talk about Bergamot later, so I don't want to belabor that. Libraries. When, the year I was mayor, I had the Read with the Mayor program in order to promote our library. So I think it's no secret that I support them. I think the question's going to be, how do we open up our libraries in a way that's fiscally responsible? It would be great to add 27 people to our library staff and get back to, that wouldn't even get us back to normal operations, but would substantially increase the hours available at some libraries. But I just have no idea what that's going to cost. And so as staff comes back tomorrow, I think, you know, it sounds like we're going to get some pressure to add some library staffing, and I think maybe we're going to have to get some incremental readouts. What does it cost to add five members, 10 members? Because if our choices are zero or 27, I don't see any way that we can afford to add 27. The swimming pool, you know, every year, we get confronted with this. I can't remember a year we didn't have a budget hearing where the fees at the swim center were an issue. I think unfortunately, you know, and this is the paradigm shift people have to face, raise some fees and then find opportunities where those fees present an obstacle to people participating. We can provide scholarships, but that people who can afford to pay a higher fee, pay a higher fee. And so I think that's the thing we need to look at, and we can have that discussion maybe tomorrow as we talk about fees. So those are my thoughts. I do want to just, again, just overwhelmingly say that staff did a really good job in a really difficult year. And I think we need to understand that our ability to nibble around the edges is limited. It doesn't mean we can't shift priorities. And I'm assuming, if not tomorrow night, at some point, staff will notify us of where we would need to make cuts in order to meet some of the community's demands. But I think everyone needs to understand that there will be cuts. And not only do we have to agree on where we want to spend more money, but we're going to have to agree on where we make those cuts. And we just can't add, add, add without making the cuts. So I think it'll be an interesting discussion tomorrow. Thanks.
Okay, Christine.
Thank you. So I know that we're going to continue the Bergamot Center discussion on a later date, but I did have a question of staff regarding the disparity between how we came about a rent abatement for nine months for these people, six months for these people, and three months for these people? And why isn't it across the board, you know, six months for everybody? So that it's equal? That was one of my questions. And then I noted that Jennifer said three months for rent abatement for Bergamot, but the council meeting where we discussed this further, I had asked for six months. And I believe we agreed on six months abatement to come back with that figure. And so. And so I was a little confused that she said that was for three months. So that was one of the other issues that I had some concerns about. And I literally put together a spreadsheet of all the things that people have brought up that I also felt that were important. Clearly, we've touched on the majority of them, but there's a few that I think are kind of like low-hanging fruits that we may be able to accomplish, and I just want to throw those out there. So one of the ones was to be able to have a webpage that indicates all the neighborhood associations on our city website. I think that's a no-brainer so that when people move into Santa Monica and want to get involved, they have a place to go to find out who their neighborhood association group is and how to get in touch with them. Another question was, you know, they wanted to restore the statistically valid surveys of residents. The last one was in 2018, you know, especially, that's what was said. The other one was restoring quarterly or semi-annual shredding and electronic recycling events. That was actually brought up quite a few times. Moving forward, regarding the preservation program, wanting to reinstate the landmark and structure of the merit designation fee for waivers. And so that actually was brought up quite a few times as well. Let's see here, almost done. And then the other thing that I'm very curious about is what would it cost the city to hire an ADA coordinator? Because for the city that I work for, you know, the entire city went through an ADA assessment, and you know, and there were key findings that were found for every single department or division that we had to work on and update and include in our plans. And so an ADA coordinator would be essential to be able to help facilitate those types of things. So I'm very curious to find out how much it would cost to hire one FTE ADA coordinator. Thank you.
Councilmember McEwen, wait, are we commenting on other, we're discussing tomorrow, is there something else we should be talking about? Councilmember McEwen?
I'm going to accept the responsibility of offering a sober reality check. And I also want to express my respect, admiration, and gratitude to Delane and Gigi. I was the mayor a year ago when the COVID hit the fan, and we had to make some really tough decisions. And for them to be able to come to us tonight with a budget that's not only balanced, if on a knife edge for this year, but that shows a path forward over the next few years where this city remains solvent despite a $226 million hit, is a pretty remarkable piece of work. And I hear a lot of aspirations and wishes and things we'd like to do. I'm afraid we just don't have the resources to do them all. And I hate for us to be giving people high hopes, and then on June 22nd, when it comes time to balance the books, it turns out we can't do it. So let's just try as hard as it is, because I know the pressure from members of the public to do things that they want. Let's just remember, we're still in tough times. And as Gleam mentioned, and as I said at the beginning, it's a zero-sum game. So if we do want to do some of these things, staff's already told us there's no place else to cut. It's going to be somebody else's program, some other constituency, that didn't happen to grab us by the lapels this week and demand we do something, who will lose their service. So let's just be cautious about the expectations we're putting out there tonight.
So Kevin, I hate to say this, that wasn't a question. Is yours a question, Christine, because it's Oscar's turn?
Oh, sorry. No, Councilmember Delatorre can go first. I didn't realize, I thought we were in sort of second round of questions.
No, no, we're just asking questions now, and tomorrow we're going to go back and discuss.
Okay. I have a couple more questions after Councilmember Delatorre, though.
Okay. So Councilmember Delatorre.
Okay. Thank you. I'll try to be quick. So we started today's meeting with the city manager's report on the EIOs, the Equity and Inclusion Officers' Work. One of the questions I have is, do we have the right investment there to succeed? Do we have the right staffing patterns? Do we need an Equity and Enforcement, Equity and Inclusion Office? And do we need a designated staff person that's 100% FTE in that position to lead that The other, the other question-
Oscar, I'm sorry, you were here, Delana is that person. And you were here when we, well, I mean, or you were in town, right? But she's that person, and she's been leading this for months and months and months in every meeting.
Okay. I'm going off of the public comments and just, but in any case, the question is, are we budgeted appropriately to succeed with the work, you know, that's being done?
Right. Probably clarify that a little bit right now. I think she's trying to.
There is a longer answer there. I just wanted to point out, we have both Lisa Parson, whose work includes being a special assistant on equity and community recovery, and Delana Benikama, who we are proposing to move into the city manager's office from Public Works, entirely focused on racial equity, but we can discuss her structural question tomorrow. Delatorre.
Okay. Great. On the matching grants to the neighborhood groups, I just want to make sure that we are following our principles around equity. And, you know, some neighborhood groups are working in communities that have different demographic profiles, more need, and maybe we need to make an adjustment and have a little bit more funding in those areas, maybe 6,000 instead of 4,000, just a suggestion there. The other, the other, the other issue is on homelessness. You know, that's definitely, we need more people in the streets, less people in offices. So ensuring that we have the right support, the community resource units, for example, with the fire department. I know that, you know, someone will say, well, if you fund that, you got to take it from somewhere else. But my question is, is it the most effective and efficient use of our resources? You know, I want an answer to like, yes, it's more expensive, but it's like when you go shopping, you know, you have to spend more sometimes to get a better quality product. And I'm thinking that that might be better suited. On any, any area where we're saying this program or that program needs to increase, like the juvenile delinquency diversion, diversion program that the police department is advocating, that we put more money into, I want to hear a program evaluation. I want to know, why are we making these program investments, you know, and how effective are they? Councilwoman McCowen asked a good question today regarding the trades interns program, which I support wholeheartedly. I've always supported the trade interns program. The question is, is how many, what's the percentage of people that get jobs in the city? Because I heard that maybe it's 30%. Maybe we need to do better than that. Maybe there's a nonprofit that can do better than that than the city running it. Those are questions that we should be asking. Maybe we can leverage by having a nonprofit run it, other funding sources. I'm sure there's a lot of vocational education funding out there that we should be able to tap into. But in general, the human services grantees were spending $8 million. We have not had, we have not opened up that process in years, and I still haven't seen a program evaluation of those services. I want to make sure that we have a robust program evaluation on all those outputs and outcomes that those grantees promise to deliver for us as we purchase those services. You know, there's a, there's a big question that we, in terms of the Pico neighborhood, we talk about equity, that CDVG money, how much of it is going to the Pico neighborhood for things like, I'll give you one example, climate change. We have residents right now in community corporation buildings where they don't have air conditioning. And, you know, the climate is changing. We experienced the same thing at Edison Elementary School where we said, we want to be sustainable, so we did, we put no air conditioning, and then we had a heat wave, and people could not survive. We had to come back and spend more money. Do we create, do we, what is the possibility of creating like an environmental justice fund for people living in close proximity to the freeway? Where we might be able to tap into other resources to provide air conditioning so that people can keep their windows closed, for example, so they don't have to breathe the toxic fumes that are so close to their homes right next to the freeway? The, you know, the fee structures that we're talking about, our residents deserve a break. On the carousel, like, I think it should be, if you show, if you're a resident, if you can show an ID that shows that you live in the city of Santa Monica, everybody should pay a dollar. If you're coming from the outside, you know what, $3 is not excessive, you know, but I think residents deserve a break. Anywhere that we can reduce the fees, whether it's the swim center, that's another one. If these are residents, if these are students at Santa Monica Malibu High School District, they deserve a break. They should get a discounted rate, you know?
Oscar, I don't want to interrupt you, but you're really in discussion now, which we're going to be doing tomorrow.
I'm sorry. Well, the question was-
Okay. I really want to, I'm just trying to keep everybody on the same track. And I'm trying to cut everybody a little slack, but you're way out of line.
Okay. Well, if the question I have-
What's your next question?
Okay. So anyway, let me, let's say this, that, you know, along the lines of vocational education, we don't have an economic development plan for our residents. And I think one of the things that I'd like to know is, is, has anybody thought about sort of like the trade interns program, but what about other areas of the operation? What about finance? What about social services? You know, are we just trying to get, you know, people of color into certain areas of the organization, or can we expand that? Like, does staff have an economic development plan for our residents that expands beyond entry-level positions, you know, in Public Works? And that's the question. And can we expand on that? Can we grow on that? The question of a sliding scale for fees, I think, I think it is about equity. So the question I have is, is staff considering having parents pay for some of the fees, and can, and are they considering a sliding scale which is more equitable so that we can provide those services to everyone, especially to those who can't afford to pay it? The other thing that I want to say is, I said, oh, intergovernmental partnerships. So looking at the role that Santa Monica College can play, can we call a meeting of Santa Monica College, the city, and the school district so that we can discuss a lot of the things we're talking about now, where we're sharing resources, we're finding a way to piece things together? This, you know, the pandemic has really made us, you know, take a step back and reflect on some of these services. And so it's an opportunity for us to come together on an intergovernmental basis so that we can have these discussions and dialogue. So making the space, you know, can staff make that happen and facilitate that type of dialogue between the governing boards, the respective governing boards, and talking about, you know, economic development and so forth. And the last thing I want to say here is that Councilmember Brock brought up the question of the joint use agreement. As someone, as someone who has served 18 years on the school board, I can tell you that there is mismanagement, and I can tell you that we need accountability. And there isn't, there's nothing more important than hope, than the education of our children. There's an achievement gap. We haven't made a lot of progress. They'll get our report pointed to the fact that we have made very little progress. I think it's time for the city government to work with the school district to ensure that there's accountability, benchmarks, outputs, outcomes, the things that, you know, most organizations expect when we're handing over millions of dollars. I think our residents and our students, especially low-income students of color, deserve accountability from those that are promising to help them. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. So Councilmember McCowen, is it questions?
It's questions, but Mayor Himorich, I just realized you haven't asked yours. Do you want to go first? Because I have additional-
Yeah, I mean, no, I mean, look, I want to ask a couple of sort of overriding questions that I've asked before. And one of the things I want to ask about is our funding of, let me, our placement of employees in organizations where we don't control the organization. I'm specifically thinking about things like PAL and the peer, and places where we actually supply employees, but they have their own boards. And this has been devastating to us in the last year, and I would like to see the city moving away from supplying employees without having control, for want of a better description. And I've been talking about it for a while, so that's a question I'm going to want to talk about tomorrow. With the trades intern program, I know it's in Public Works, but I wonder if we can expand it to transportation? And I wonder, when I say that, I think that there are different funds located in different of these enterprise funds. And I just wonder if any of those funds can be utilized for this particular program, which obviously has some value to the city. And, and a lot of the things that are being talked about, and I want to be honest, are things that should be brought up through our normal process of introducing new ideas, of creating new programs. And, and so we bring them forward, and there actually is some workup of them. So I believe that there are things we should be looking at, but in, in this budget, we're trying to interject expenses and programs that we haven't even looked at, I believe, but that we are trying to implement. And I think that the way to implement them, sorry. Yes, Lane? Go ahead. I just don't think that this is the point in time to have, to start saying, we should start this program, we should start that program, right? We should, I think that the way to introduce new programs is, is through a different way of approaching it, and that is to say, we should have a program to do this or that and bring it forward through our regular, either through the city manager's office or through a 13 item. So maybe you can tell me why that's wrong.
Yeah. No, Mayor, it's not that it's wrong. I just was going to say, the reason you didn't see me on camera at first is that I was taking careful notes on all of your questions. And I know we still have some more questions to go. What I'd like to do, if it's okay with members of council, I would like to answer these by department tomorrow. And I think some of them are specific costs. Councilmember Parra, you had a few questions about smaller things. I think some of those will be cost questions. So if you don't mind if I interpret them that way, that might be helpful, I think. And then I agree with the mayor, there were a few things that came up that may be outside of Brown Act for budget, but we can go as far as we can within the budget discussion and then suggest to council members that they might bring that forward in some other way. So I can work with all of this tonight and try to create as workable a meeting as, for all of you as possible tomorrow.
Which is why I'm going to stop here. I have actually, whether here or in the Audit Committee, brought forward a few of the things I want to talk about, but I'm trying to work with what we have and not my wish list. So, so Councilmember McCowen, why don't you ask your questions? Because I just want to say, if our city manager needs to work tonight, and it's now whatever it is, right, then we should conclude as soon as possible.
Okay. So I don't worry every night, so don't worry.
I do worry.
I'm going to make it super quick, just because I think it would be helpful for staff to have the extra time on a couple of these, because I don't know that there are ones you have answers to right, right away. With regard to the crossing guards, I'm curious if we, if where we add additional crossing guards, what exactly the numbers are compared to where we've had accidents or lethal accidents in the last year or so? So if there's any way you can provide some data for us tomorrow on that decision-making, that would be helpful. With regard to the trades interns in Public Works, I'm curious if, like Councilmember Brock mentioned, potentially the bi-weekly street sweeping, I know that's in RRR. I don't know if that money can be transferred to another part of- I don't know if that money can be transferred to another part of Public Works, but I'm curious if we were to scale that back a little bit, um, and go to bi-weekly, if that would free up some of the funds to do Trades Interns within Public Works? I, I don't know if it can be used for that, but I'm, I'm just curious. And then, um, do we know the average fee per student for Crest Sports, not for Playground Access? Um, that, that's another question. And then, um, I know that in the CAO's, uh, budget report, they mentioned that they're continuing the 3% plus reduction in staff salaries. And I was just curious, because a caller sort of alluded to this top-heavy pay, if the reductions that staff had, um, taken in the last fiscal year, if those have continued into this, uh, this new budget? I couldn't really find the exact place where that was, um, so I just wanted clarification on that.
So are there any more questions before we adjourn? And before we adjourn, I have a very sad adjournment, so, um, I'm sitting on-
Before you do your very sad adjournment, I did make a joke about, uh, how much I work earlier, which is a pair to my staff. I do want to thank all of the department heads who have been with you this evening and will be with you again tomorrow night to answer questions and, and are with you for many, many. Um, we, we have a number of city staff, uh, on this call with you, and will be here tomorrow night, so I want to thank all of them. Um, before you turn-
But Mayor, Mayor, before you adjourn-
I'm not, I didn't mean to call it an adjournment. I mean to call it a continuation, right?
You need to formally, you need to formally continue the meeting to tomorrow.
And, and when I do that, do I need to take a vote of the council?
Yes, Mayor, um, I'm sorry, excuse me, everybody. Mayor, can you look at your, at your agenda that I sent you?
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's under all these other papers.
Okay, on agenda management, since, since it sounds like we're going to continue this, I have raised the question if we can hear the public input tonight.
All, I, so we decided, I believe, I think that all of the public input that we have, tonight was the night of public input. We're continuing only item 4A on which we've heard public input.
Then you need to have the, then you have, you need to do agenda management to move up the 14 item. In other words, we have to have general public comment under the 14 item, and you'll need to do agenda management to move that to today, unless, or, or you have to do it tomorrow.
Or you'll do it tomorrow.
Uh, Councilmember Brock?
Quick procedure items, so the public knows, what time do we reconvene tomorrow?
Well, we're, if I, we, I, I go, yes, well, could we convene at 5:30 tomorrow? But, uh, before, uh, before, before we even get to that, so, um-
Mayor, I'd like to move we hear the 14 item, public input tonight, because there may be people who've sat through this whole meeting waiting to give public input.
Good point, Councilmember Davis. Um, I will second that. Uh, may we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Delatorre?
Yes.
Councilmember Brock?
Yes.
Mayor Potem McCowen?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeon?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Para?
Yes.
And Mayor Hemmerich?
Yes. And, um, I, I guess now, do we have to move on the adjournment too, or we simply do it?
We can go, well, let's go ahead and do the public input first.
Okay, good. So, um, will you call that item, please, Denise?
Yeah, so it's the 14 item, it's public input. Public comment is permitted only on items not on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. State law prohibits the city council from taking any action on items not listed on the agenda, including issues raised under this agenda item. And we do have at least one video caller and one phone caller.
Thank you.
Welcome, Denise Barton. You're in the meeting. Your time starts now.
Good evening. Despite the way you gash phrase onto the code compliance department, I have to question both the work ethic and professionalism for that department.
Ms. Barton, we really need you to speak up. We can't hear you.
Good evening. Despite the way you gash phrase into, onto the code compliance department, I have to question both the work, at work ethic and professionalism for that department, both before and after the pandemic. Let me give you my most recent experience with them. The building to the north of my building, the NRDC building, now has a wall of wood on the south side of their building, on the roof, blocking the air and sunlight to our units. I spoke with Ariel Sikaris, who told me nothing could be put within 20 feet, five feet of the residential building. But then, at the beginning of this month, they put up a wood wall six, six feet and above. I tried to contact Ariel Sikaris regarding it, but he stopped returning my calls. After he was the one pushing for the two new people in the permitting department at a previous city council meeting this year. So I went to 311, where the situation, even with the picture, was misrepresented, so it wasn't even looked at. After that, I went to code compliance, where I was dealing with Mr. Kochee, who, who needed me to pull out my computer, turn it on, and find the address of NRDC. Then unless I had a code number, they were violating, I could not get no assistance from them. Then I had to spend time looking up California State had in the city's code, code applicable to the situation. Here, let me concentrate on the city's building codes under Walls and Fences, section 9.1, point, um, sorry, 9.21.050 Part B, which states Santa Monica Downtown Community Plant Area, behind building front edge, five-foot walls and fences above 42 inches. There'll be a minimum of 50% transparent, which is how it was in the beginning. So if they do not have a permit for the wood wall, why are they going to be allowed to keep it there for another two to three months? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barton.
Welcome, David Watley. You're in the meeting. Your time starts now.
Hi, counsel. I just wanted to provide, um, a, a quick update with regard to the last, the last time that I spoke on this agenda item, um, uh, which was earlier this year. So, um, you know, I, I, I just wanted to just bring an update to where I am with regard to the matter. I, I've, I've paid attention to, uh, some of the past council meetings that were in between the last time I spoke during this agenda item and now. And I've seen, you know, uh, the efforts that have been made to improve, you know, the policies that sort of are involved in the city, that got us into this situation, that I discussed at the last time, at the last council meeting where I spoke on, um, this particular agenda item. So, um, I think that, you know, uh, at this point, I think that where we are, uh, and from my perspective is, I think that we should just, uh, sort of work to improve the policy, uh, I guess deficiencies that sort of got, that led to that situation. And, um, I think that that's the best, from my perspective, I think that that's the best way to move forward. And, you know, I appreciate that, you know, with regards to the financial aspect of this matter, I think that, you know, it's been expressed from the city that it's been forgiven on the city's end. And I have expressed previously in writing that it's forgiven on my end. So I think that that, uh, from that, with, with those two facts, and now me stating this publicly, I, 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 um, agree that it's forgiven, that, that part of it. So I would just ask that we work together, um, to, you know, as you know, I do a lot of advocacy work, so it's kind of like what I do. We work to work, we work to seek to improve the policy, to continue to work to improve the policy issues. Thank you. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Watley. So, counsel, um, we will continue item there. Yes.
Before we continue, uh, I have a brief announcement. And this is something I wanted to say at the same time, both, uh, to the council and to the community. I have decided to retire. Uh, you've all been very kind about my, not looking my age, but I am well into my 70s. I am profoundly grateful for the many years that I had the privilege and honor of being able to be of service to this city, which I, I deeply love. But I have decided to retire effective two weeks from Friday. So again, I am retiring as of June 11th. I thank you. Good night and goodbye.
Well, none of us, really.
Mayor, putting that aside, before you, you, you will need a motion to continue the meeting and a second and a vote.
Um, yes, and, and, uh, but then I'm only worried about this adjournment, right? So do I-
I'll move to adjourn, so that we can second it.
No, no, we're continuing. No, we need a motion to continue the-
I think it's called adjournment for tomorrow night.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Adjourned for tomorrow.
Oh, holding adjournment for tomorrow night. Okay, fine. I need a motion to continue item 4A until 5:30 PM tomorrow. Is that the motion?
You're adjourning to a continued meeting tomorrow.
Okay, I'm adjourning to a continued meeting at 5:30 PM tomorrow. So I'm going to make that motion. May I hear a second?
I'll second.
Everybody seconded. I'm seconded by the whole council. Yeah, fine, whatever. Uh, yes, and, um, uh, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Para?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Council, I'm sorry, Mayor Potem McCowen?
Yes.
Councilmember Brock?
Yes.
Councilmember Delatorre?
Yes.
And Mayor Hemmerich?
Yes, so that passes 6 to 0.
Yes.
Um, and I will see everybody at, uh, 5:30 tomorrow. Uh, thank you all very much. And I particularly want to thank staff, who's been phenomenal. And, uh, City Manager Dil, uh, thank you so much. I'm sorry you have to work longer. I'll be working longer. I'll be working longer too, as you know. So there you go.
We'll see you tomorrow night, and thank you to all the staff on the call.
Yes, and thank you to all the staff, and thank you, City Attorney. Uh, see everybody at 5:30 tomorrow.
Thank, thank you, Kevin McKeon. Thank you, Kevin McKeon.
Yes, and thank you, Kevin.
Yes, Kevin.
I just wanted to second, because I don't thank the staff enough. So I want to thank our leadership for the, the amazing job they've done in a very tough situation. Lane, thank you so much. I appreciate it. We all do.
Thanks, folks.
And on that note, I'm going to stop the broadcast.
Thank you, Denise. End of our pain, right?
Good night, everybody.